Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, February 21st. It's good to see you all here this morning. We're going to go into the study with prayer and pledge. If you would please stand this morning. Our Father, we thank you today for your hand on our lives. Fathers, we gather here today in this meeting room, in this annex, pray that you be with our deliberations, our discussions, ultimately, our decisions today. Father, we thank you for everything you've given us. Help us to do our best to adhere, Lord, to what we have, to look to our future. We thank you for everything you're doing in us, to us, and through us. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Mr. Rowan, before we proceed, we did have several different things that come up from last night that need to be added to the agenda today.
Yes, sir.
From several different departments. So, one of them is from Ms. Griffith, seeking board action to approve and authorize the signing of forms. Basically, our legislative stuff we're sending legislators to ask for help with projects this year.
Yes, so Dobby, Dobby, during her report, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Then there was one by Turner Shiller, an amendment to something he had already added to the report.
Correct.
So, that's some discussion that's come up that he thinks needs to be brought up. Mr. Fonda Davis is want to discuss the potentiality of the Seahawks boys winning the regional tonight and advancing to the final four, and the possibility of the board giving them a $5,000 grant to the school to help pay for expenses.
The only disagreement I have with you, Mr. Chairman, you said the potential, the potential of them winning, not, I say when they win tonight.
Well, see me, see me tonight at seven, and I have a completely different demeanor, I assure you.
Yeah, and I realize you're a coach, and I'm not.
And the third is, talking last week with our representatives from, or the fourth, our representatives from DOT, they seem to think that there's some things that we've expressed as a board that we're not happy with.
Yes.
On the Appalachian Bridge and Causeway.
The Causeway, correct.
That we might could ask for changes, so I want to be able to bring that up today as well.
Yes, sir. You said you would bring that up at the end of my report, correct.
So, I think that covers them. Is the commission okay with those agenda amendments? And if so, we will do so with motion and vote.
I'll motion to accept these items onto the agenda.
Second.
And we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we're going to approve the minutes from the last meeting and make a motion to pay the county bills.
Let me.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners?
Yeah, what this bill is Worldwide Technology?
What's the name of it, Commissioner?
It's the Worldwide Technology.
Well, right, technology. Let me go ask Erin to call across the street, and I will find out for you. And then we could approve that as a separate motion, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I amend my.
So, we'll just amend the motions to not include approving that one for now?
Yes.
What we're doing, Turner Shiller?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, now we're up to public comments. I will remind everyone in attendance today, we're thankful for you to be here. We hope to do our best to have decent deliberations today. I know that there are some emotional items on the agenda. First, we'll get to the public hearings. Please adhere to address the board when it is time to do so. And, you know, during, and if you are wanting to speak in a public hearing, you do not have to fill out a speaker card. That's a completely different deal. So, don't think if you didn't fill one out, or you should fill one out, you won't be able to speak in a public hearing. That is not true. Public hearing, anybody that's public will be able to speak. But at this time, we will do regular public comments that filled out a card. Mr. Rigglemeyer, you're on the top of the list.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gail Rigglemeyer, St. George Island. I'm here to ask for a quest, for a request for clarification and consistency related to how the county publishes its notice, their notices, like for public hearings and other things. Historically, they've always been done in this format, very large and prominent. One week, when this one was posted, this was on the public hearing today for the PUD, the septic system public notice was in the tiny fine print in the back of the paper. The following week, though, because it has to be noticed two weeks, was large again. And I do know that the state has now passed a law, House Bill 7049, that is now allowing counties to not have to use papers to publish. They can use their websites. And so, I just need some reassurance, or asking for reassurance, that the county will continue to post their notices in the paper in a prominent way. And if there is any changes, that we will be given notice and directed to the website. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Rigglemeyer, it might be that that was something to do with the publisher and nothing to do with the county, with what they're putting. They're the ones that know what space they have in the paper.
Oh, I see.
It could have been that. But we will follow through and find out. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I can address that.
Okay, go ahead.
Because that, that was a notice for the publican, for Ms. Gail. The ad that I sent to the newspaper was supposed to be published twice as a display ad. That's the big ad that you're referring to. Due to a publication error, the person that usually handled the ads, Ms. Gail Brandon, was apparently out sick, and some other person handled the first publication. Believe me, they heard from me about putting it in the classified. But state law only requires one publication at least 10 days before the public hearing. So, the public hearing on the septic setback issues, we've been due a notice and given the 10-day proper notice as a display ad. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also in addition to that, under, if, on the county's website, franklincountyflorida.com, you'd be quick, I'm sorry, click on the link Resources, there you'll find a link for all public hearings. So, public hearings are also on the county's website, in addition to being in the newspaper. As with bids and everything else, job, job announcements, et cetera, they're all there. So, just, that's, just want to let you know that they're there also, okay? Not to say we're going to replace one with the other. The more the mayor is what I basically say, the more information we have dispersed to the public, the better it is, Commissioner.
The next one is Ms. Lynn Wilder, an update on Keep Franklin County Beautiful. Please come forward, state your name for the record, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lynn Wilder, Appalachia Cola. Thank you for letting me speak. Good morning, Commissioners, and happy Mardi Gras. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up or a notice. On January 11th, we hosted a meeting with the Representatives or Associate Director from Keep Florida Beautiful and Keep Waukali County Beautiful, executive directors here. And they came and talked to the community about how we could set up a Keep Franklin County Beautiful program and become an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful. There was quite an attendance, I think, for this area. Sixty people, more than 60 people showed up. And a lot of people signed up as being interested in recycling or litter. The next steps are to form a nonprofit and then apply for, apply to become an affiliate of Keep Franklin County Beautiful, or Keep America Beautiful. And there's a lot of benefits associated with that, not just their experience in doing these things elsewhere, but opportunities for funding and support. So, I'm just letting you guys know that that's kind of underway. And basically, it is in the infancy stage, so we're not going to be out next week cleaning up. But we will be asking for your support, not, not money, but support as a community to promote recycling and anti-litter campaigns and things like that. So, I should be here at future board meetings to give you guys update as, updates as we go. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Rowan, is someone here from ECCC this morning?
Yes, to go next. But before we, before we go there, Commissioner Lockley, I had them check Worldwide Technology is the vendor for the state attorney to buy their IT equipment, their switches, network equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So.
So, we need to make a motion and vote to accept that.
Please.
On the bill playlist, okay? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Mr. Rowan, thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Any discussion before we vote to include this in our bill list?
I didn't know who they were, and I, I'd like to know what I've been doing.
Yes, I know, that's.
Nothing wrong with that, sir. That's what you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next, we'll have a presentation or, request from Ms. Valentine Mulweb, Ms. Betsy Knopf singer, for Elder Care Community Council. Ladies, please come forward.
And as they approach the podium commissioners, if the board remembers, you know, we've been having those issues with the senior services, especially over in Carabelle. And we were informed by Lisa Brett from Area Agency in Aging that ECCC has, they're basically trying to find a way to get them to cover the entire county and get them certified, so they will be certified. So, with all that said, I just thought it was time for them to come before you and explain to you their, what their plan, what they're doing, and the help that they need, because they do need help to, from going just to one side of the county to the entire county. That's a big leap, Commissioner. So, that's why the ladies are here this morning. Good morning, ladies, and thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Good morning, all Commissioners.
Good morning.
Welcome back, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Welcome, Otis.
Thank you.
And all Commissioners. Well, we're standing before you today. Elder Care Community Council of Franklin County has been in existence since 2016. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. So, we've been around, we've been doing the work here in the county, whether it was serving meals, which we served over 26,000 meals last year, just in 2022. I do believe that we want to take on the entire county. We want to do it right. Ninety percent of ECCC funds have been from, from fundraising, has not come from our county funds. We have received $10,000 from Liberty County, County Senior Services since 2019, and currently up to date. We spend over 2,000, anywhere from $2,000 to $2,400 every time we place a food order. We feed hot lunches out of the senior center five days a week, delivering to over 68 homes. This is totally a volunteer base. As you know, for every volunteer that donates one hour of their time during the day, that's pretty much $20 an hour. They're, they're giving back to the county, giving back to our most vulnerable population. We stand before you today because we have been tasked by Liberty County Senior Services to serve a portion of the clients that's over in the Carabelle area. And what I ran up against when I went to Landark, and this was a veteran out in Landark, Landark that I spoke with, he needed to go into town for grocery shopping. Well, that's a liability if I was to put him in my vehicle. So, we need more financial support to be able to serve the county, countywide. We need a vehicle to be able to take them grocery shopping. So, that's basically our appeal to you guys today, to see how, what you need from us, and how you all can assist us.
Can I add a question?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I got a lot of questions.
You're good.
I got some, too.
We go jolnay on what you're saying. But Val, do we have a, do we have a vehicle? You all do not have a vehicle?
We do not have a vehicle.
Tell me this, Val, how many, how many Carabelle folks is coming to your congregation?
None of the Carabelle folks are coming to our congregation meals, because we don't have a vehicle to transport them over there. So, we.
That's what I'm saying. And you know how important it is for, and that's the reason why we've been up here discussing it for many meetings. And that's the whole idea of it, because these folks, they need that interaction with each other. We know.
Totally agree.
And so, I'm going to lead off and let, but my thing is, whatever we can do to make it better, we need to do it. And to make it better, because everybody needs to be served. You know, everybody needs to be able to be served. And it's just like I told Mr. Noah, or Commissioner Lockley at the last meeting, I'm so, I'm just playing, y'all. There's nothing big about me. But anyway, you know, these are older people. We are older people.
Yes.
And I would like to know that whoever taking care of the program is going to respect me enough, or respect Mr. Noah enough, or any of our elderly that comes in here. Because, you know, they need that interaction. But Val, I appreciate what you're doing. We've gone a long way back, and y'all have really built up the CCC, as I call it. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I was actually going to ask the same thing. I know a lot of issues that we've had with this congregate center over in Carabelle. And I was to the point, a couple, a meeting or two, I personally would like to pull their funding. We don't, they don't, you know, we were going to get a meeting with them to discuss why they wouldn't allow certain things, and they flat out told Mr. Rowan and I that they don't want to meet. So, I have a problem with that. You guys have shown that y'all are willing and able. You just need more funding. So, I don't know what we need to do to allow that to happen. I know that we give 15,000 to, it's actually Area for Agency on Aging.
For them.
Yeah.
And if they're not going to serve our citizens, then we need to funnel that money to someone that will.
So, yes, so we gave, we, actually, we gave more than that to Area Agency and Aging, and they, in turn, combined that with other federal and maybe some state funding to, for all our seniors in the county. You guys feel free to stop me if I go astray.
You're right.
And so, the problem, what we discussed at the last meeting, we felt since the Senior Citizens Center, which is run by a board, the Franklin County Senior Citizens, something incorporated, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Changed it from what it was.
Yes. And we felt that with that building and what that building was originally built for, that that would be the perfect congregate site, and we would work with them, give them extra funding to try and, you know, house the seniors there that were displaced from the garden club. Well, as you say, Commissioner, they're not interested. So, with ECCC here today, explaining to you what they're doing, what their future plans are, and with the issues we've had in the past, on my report, I'll go straight to it, item nine, you'll have to turn it if you don't want to. What I'm asking the board to do is basically, I'm going to summarize, allow, to the very back, I apologize that pages are not numbered today. Allow myself, Erin Griffith, and Ms. Lisa Brett to meet and to find a way to direct, even if we're redirecting money from other, what I consider non-essential activities at the moment, to redirect as much money as we can to ECCC, because I see them as providing essential senior services in the county at the moment. That's me in a nutshell.
And Mr. Chairman, if you guys get a van, you guys would be willing to commute to the, the east end of the county to provide them trips to the grocery store, meals. Basically, what the Carabelle Center, Congregate Center was doing, it just, you won't have a center, which we're working on that, too.
Yes.
But you guys will basically provide that same service that they were.
Yes, we will be able to provide those services at no cost to that senior, because that is just one of our mottos, that we don't charge the seniors for anything that they receive from us.
Y'all just need a little help.
It will, it will require an employee, so it would be a little bit more than what you reappropriate from what you currently appropriating to the senior center over there, because we would have to pay someone to do this.
To drive. Give her to pay her driving.
Yes. And someone that understands temperature control, someone that, that has to be vetted legally, with a background check, because they will, if that person doesn't want to go shopping, then they take that person's funds, and they go do the shopping for them. So, it's a lot, it's a lot that goes in with choosing the person that we would entertain, hiring.
Additionally, one of the things I think that the seniors are really missing in Carabelle is they liked having the small building. I'm not sure what y'all are terming it.
They called it the garden club, ma'am.
Okay, the garden club. They liked having a place to go, a place to be together. I think they got a lot of social interaction that way. They got a lot of information filtered into them. We want to provide that, too, not just a meal, not someone just to drive over there or go pick up their prescriptions for them. We want a place where the seniors can be together. Therefore, it will need to be open, in our minds, at least four hours a day, so that there's a place for them to come and have community. So, when we're saying we need an employee, it's not just to drive, it's to be there and facilitate interactions for the seniors, to provide a place for them to come. And we'd certainly like to build the program as much as we can. Our goal is, well, we're ECCC of Franklin County Incorporated. And initially in 16, we were doing a lot all over the county. And during COVID, we've kind of focused in on Appalachia Cola, because we found so many people we needed to feed here. And we are ready and willing to go to Carabelle and other areas in the county. We just need help to do so.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up.
And Commissioners, I wasn't, in this initial meeting, I wasn't trying to exclude ECCC, but I need to sit with Lisa, see what's there, and then bring back that amount of money to meet ECCC again, and say, okay, this is what we have. Tell me, do you need more, and we bring that back to the board.
And I would also add, you know, you had the people, when you find out, get with Val and let Val know. And then let kind of work out a plan, get this started, because, and they hit the nail on the head when they said they just needed to be in their own little space.
Yes.
Their own little bathroom, dude. And I'm going to tell you something. You ever go by there at lunchtime, they got some pretty good meals coming out of there now. I'm telling you, Ms. Gail was a good cook. So, you know we lost, Val, you know we lost two people there that had worked there.
Yes.
So, so take that in consideration also. So, so take that in consideration also.
We will.
When, when you do that because, uh, they were so good with those people over there. But I like the idea.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking for a motion from the board to authorize that meeting.
I wanna say something before you do.
Yes, sir.
You know, in my serving, there's old saying that children are the future. But in that saying, it don't mean you put the old folks out the past.
That's right.
That's right.
They need help. They Franklin County people. And we need help. We need to do everything we can to make sure, cause they done done, they work to a certain age and, and they retire. Hey, I know. But if I, if I wanna go to the senior, wanna be able to walk in there or they push me in there or be, or whatever, and go. And you know, they deserve that. So let's, uh, try to work out something and do what we can do.
Thank you. So Mr. Chairman, this motion, Michael, that you need is the board to, uh, have direct all senior ser, senior services funding to ECCC and to assist them with their plan to provide essential services to the county's elder community. Or you wanting to just plan it first?
Yes, I just want to au, au, authorize to have that meeting with that purpose, and then I will bring it back to the board. Cause like, like Commissioner Sanders said, after I have this meeting, then I, we'll need to have a meeting with, with ECCC and say, okay, this is what we have, show me a budget, how can we meet in the middle to get, you know, the services, the essential services that we need. And I have to, we'll bring that back to the board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion?
Yeah, it kinda got away from us when we didn't have nobody to take over. That block tile stuff being. But the, the CCC or E or whatever, excuse me, if I ain't say it right. They willing to hit to do it, so let's bring it home and bring it back to the county.
Bring it back to the county, yes.
And I may add that, um, Liberty County has trained us in the congregate meal site, the activities, what else? The shopping, um, so they, we are doing a portion of that paperwork now. Um, so it's just a subcontract up under them. And, um, what we're hoping for eventually is to take the entire contract.
Yes, and, and Lisa said she's willing to work with you guys and get that done as quickly as possible.
I will say, I've looked forward to this day. So I was already on the board when you guys were just forming, and we actually gave this to Liberty County because there wasn't anybody to do it. And knowing that you guys weren't prepared for it yet. But knowing that you can, I would much, I personally would much rather have our people taking care of our people. So I'm, I'm very glad that this day is getting closer to us because I believe it's a step in the right direction. I will thank you all for everything you've done.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I think the next step would be about the building, the garden club building, to see if we can keep that back open.
Did everybody vote?
We have a vote. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, so to two other steps, Commissioner Ward is talking, talking about when we meet with Lisa, well, so gonna talk about the status of the transfer of the garden building, she's working on that. In addition, Lisa also wants to have a workshop over in Carabel. I'm gonna reach out to the city, Car, Carabel City, use their city hall, their meeting room, to have a workshop just to keep the Carabel, uh, seniors informed of what's going on, and I'm sure she's gonna want you guys there. But as soon as I get to coordinate this meeting, all that, and I'll reach back out to you guys. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Up next is Summit Professional Services, Ms. Marie Dingman. We're talking about the CDPG update.
Second here, I got to get their screen here while they introduce themselves to you.
Good morning. Dennis Dingman, Summit Professional Services with me, with my wonderful wife, Marie. Uh, Mr. Schuler, would you like a copy of the presentation? Commissioners, in front of you is a copy of the presentation that, uh, I'll be making this morning.
Either up and down arrow, back and forth.
Okay, great.
Good. Let me get airbrushed.
Okay. Well, it's been a long time since we've seen each other. We put the application in, in July. Uh, the agency told us that we should expect something in a month. And, uh, we finally got notification that, uh, the county can move forward last Friday. You all got notifications, so, um, it hasn't been wasted time, we've actually been doing a lot. Uh, and specifically, we've been looking at your, um, existing policies, uh, Housing Assistance Plan, and the agency's new plans because they're always putting new stipulations on the, on the CDPG program. Uh, and so this part. It's not good, okay.
Thank you.
Well, you may not like my voice.
No, we still gotta hear it though.
Okay, I apologize. So this presentation is a compilation of what we're actually gonna be presenting tonight to homeowners. We've advertised, uh, to homeowners in Franklin County for a homeowner workshop, an application workshop. And, um, we'll be meeting with them at five o'clock here. And you're all invited to come if you want. But this is kind of a summary of what we're going to be telling them. And, um, there's a lot of bullets, but, uh, please be free to ask questions, we have a half an hour. First, we're going to talk about owner eligibility, what it takes for the owner to be eligible for the program, what income we're going to consider, uh, what the home eligibility is. In other words, what does residents have to be like before it's considered? What kind of assistance we're going to give them, what, what's the form of that assistance? What's the scope of that assistance, what can we do? And then a little bit about the process. And, and again, this is a summary, so it's not going to be, uh, in detail. But the homeowners will have a detailed copy of, uh, everything that they have to do as far as the program. We will meet with them multiple times, especially once they're in the program. Uh, and they're always, uh, invited to call us up and ask us questions and, as you all are. So owner eligibility, uh, first of all, the applicant must be a US citizen, um, I'm sorry, they must be income eligible. And what do I mean by that? Uh, every year HUD puts out what's called a HUD income limit. It's not in your package, but it is in the package that we'll give them. It basically, uh, says what the low, very low and moderate income, uh, limits are for that year. There'll be a new one coming out in May, and, uh, we are constantly looking at the applicant and looking at the income limits. I can tell you, based on the inflation rate, the income limits are probably gonna go up. Okay, so sad to say, it means that more people are gonna qualify because more people are gonna be put into the low to moderate income, low income, very low income categories, sadly. But that will come out in May, for now, we're gonna use the 2022 income limits. Flip the one page. Uh, when we consider income, we consider income of all people living in the home, eighteen years older. The home must be in unincorporated Franklin County, so, um, an incorporated city can't be a part of this. Incorporated cities have their own, uh, ability to access this program. Franklin County's, uh, money is only for Franklin County residents, okay? The homeowner must possess a deed or title to the home, of course, if it's a manufactured home, it'll be a title. With no owners other, except the occupants of the home, um, and the home must be the applicant's primary residence. So the way we verify that is with the homestead exemption. And that's according to your Housing Assistance Plan. So if we have a homeowner who applies and they don't have a homeowner ex, exemption, their application is not gonna be complete until we see a homeowner, um, homestead exemption because there's no other way to verify that. Now, the applicant is, is typically the homeowner or it could be the homeowner and their spouse. But there are sometimes other, um, owners of the house that live in the home, that, you, you may allow that. Uh, but if there are other homeowners that, um, don't live in the house, you still may allow that person who lives in the house, the owner that lives in the house, to, um, live in that house and the homeowner sign, the one that doesn't live there sign the DPL as being a non-occupying resident. So in other words, in a life estate, for example, you may have multiple owners of a home. Well, real, typically only one of the life estate owners, uh, lives there. Those are eligible, but the people who occupy, who own the home still have to sign the deferred payment lien, it's called a DPL, uh, and, and certify that they are not gonna live in the home as well. Uh, and I just talked about the life estate. The applicant must disclose if there is a relationship with any of you Commissioners. We don't want an undisclosed conflict of interest to occur when the state doesn't. So, uh, we will publicly ask when the applicants are brought before you, uh, first of all, in the application, we ask the applicant, uh, is there a relationship between any of you Commissioners? And then when we bring the applicant list before you, we'll ask each of you Commissioners to look at the list of applicants and ask you if, uh, there's a relationship, a familial relationship with you. If there is, we just ask that you announce that and, um, not vote on that particular applicant. When we consider income, uh, anyone who's eighteen years older, um, has to report their income. And it's gross income, so we don't look at after-tax income, we look at gross income. And that's how we, uh, measure that to the HUD income limits that I spoke about earlier. That's how we determine what, uh, whether the person, the applicant is eligible for the program and whether they're, uh, low to moderate income. I might mention, and I shouldn't mention this at first, this is a seven hundred thousand dollar, uh, grant from the state. And there's a requirement that we, uh, help at least two very low-income households and three, at a minimum, three low-income households. So we determine that by their income that they report to us, and then we look at that income, uh, household, HUD income limit sheet. If a person has a live-in caregiver, we don't consider that income as part of the household. The income that we look at is all income that is received, including interest from checking accounts, dividends. If the homeowner has a rental property and they receive rent off that rental property, that's considered income. If the homeowner has a person living in their home that's paying rent, say they're renting out a room, that's considered, uh, gross income, so we consider that income. Uh, we also look at, um, their assets. Not so much that we're looking at the assets to say, there's a limit on how many assets you can have, but if the assets are generating income, then we wanna look that, to put that into that gross income, uh, calculation. Uh, any questions so far?
I do have some, actually.
Sure.
Uh, there, there's a further stipulation with this, these monies that we have to do at least five rehabs, unless I'm remembering correctly, that's why I wanna ask, and five replacements potentially with this money, is that?
I did not see that in your HAP plan. We will look again, but I, I did not.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I did not see that in your HAP plan.
Okay.
And in fact, and we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-six, in some communities, they're all home replacements. In some communities, we have one rehabilitation. It really depends on the character of the community and, and the applicants that apply. So, um, the, the, the agency does have a, um, category in the application that says, you know, we're, we're gonna do ten homes. They don't hold up, hold, um, the communities up to that anymore. And the reason they don't is, number one, the cost of materials, as you know, has just skyrocketed. So the ability to, um, do the number of homes we could five years ago is just impossible, so they don't hold us to that. And secondly, because all the money that has been allocated for this year, and actually it's two years of allocation, has been, um, uh, spoken for by, there are a number of communities that applied. And so all that money has been used, so, um, that, that requirement of meeting the ten homes is.
I think that was actually in the state's press release, if I'm remembering right. Uh, another question, on the, on the sheet we have, under the section on home eligibility.
Yes.
Uh, number three, not saying we don't wanna do it, I think it'd be, uh, will eat up a lot of money very quick. Says the county, under number three, it says the county has the option of approving a site-built replacement home in lieu of a mobile or manufactured home. Not trying to take anything away from anybody, but I know the last time we did this CDPG program before the wildfire, when it was just a standard like we're doing now, there were people that were helped and we replaced mobile homes for mobile homes. And those aren't as cheap as they used to be either. So just, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that, bring up that fact because I, because of what's in the packet.
Okay, let, let me jump to that, uh, number three right now, I can address that. In a case where someone is living in a, has a manufactured home in a mobile home park, obviously, we have to replace it with a manufactured home because we're not gonna put a permanent footing, uh, you know, down, a permanent structure down on a rented lot. Uh, and if someone has, is renting a parcel of land from someone, we're certainly not gonna build a home on that lot. But some communities want the option of saying, well, this person owns the lot and we'd like to just kind of upgrade that, um, mobile home to a manufact, uh, to, uh, that manufactured home to a site-built home. What we, we would obviously come to you and say, this is, this is an option, uh, what would you like to do? I can tell you as far as the cost of manufactured homes, we looked at, um, a manufactured home that Debbie, um, put in for you back in seventeen, uh, for, um, a modular home, a double-wide home. And it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars, I think. And we looked at, uh, the cost of what we were putting in a single-wide home for in Callaway, we were doing Callaway at the time, and it was fifty-five thousand dollars. Well, we just put a single-wide home in Callaway, uh, cost a hundred and twenty thousand. So the cost is just double, I don't, I can't even imagine what a double-wide home would cost. The issue is we have a grant for seven hundred thousand dollars. So that ability to do a site-built home is going to be pretty limited because of the limited funds. Does that answer your question?
Oh, it does, I just wanted to bring that, wanna make sure it got covered.
Okay, great. Uh, we, we ensure that the title is clear. And, uh, Mr. Schuler will have to ask you about clear title, whether clear title to you means a title from the property appraisers office or do you want us to do a title search?
Because of what you want for, to mean by clear title, if you mean legally free and clear and marketable, there'll need to be a title search in the public records.
Okay, could, because that's a little bit more money and, and that, so that eats away at the funds, okay. And it has to be a satisfactory record of paying all debt. So we wanna make sure that the person who's applying for assistance, and that the county is spending money on to repair or to provide a new home, uh, is not going to have a record of having liens put on their property, anything that could take away their property. The, the goal of this program, really simple, provide a healthy, safe place to live for the residents of Franklin County. Uh, they, the, the, there has to be no non-structural code violations, no trash, no weeds, no junk cars in the lot. We'll be speaking to your code officer about that to do inspections on the homes that you all select. Uh, and before we can do anything, uh, they have to be up to code. Uh, the cost has to be, the cost, uh, for the new home or the repairs have to be reasonable. The way we look at that is we look at the property appraisers website, look at the building value, and we look at the cost of, of the repairs. And, um, if the cost of repairs are more than what the value of the home is, uh, then we will talk to you about, um, do we want to, um, do a replacement home instead of repair the home? Anything that's in a flood plain is gonna need flood insurance, uh, and, um, and, uh, if it's a repair, we, uh, then we have to have the flood insurance in place. And if it's a repair, we, then we have to have the flood insurance in place before we begin the repairs. If it's a demolition or rebuild, then once the house is built, then that insurance, along with homeowner insurance, has to be applied for the length of the deferred payment lien. Okay, so for whatever, that period of deferred payment lien is, has to be insured. And Franklin County has to be on the, listed on the insurance. And the reason we do that is to ensure that that insurance is kept up to date. It is a requirement of the deferred payment lien. So, when the homeowner signs the deferred payment lien, they understand that they're going to be required to keep insurance. And there's a reason for that. It's not so that the county can claim money if there's a incident or some hazard occurs, but because the county wants the homeowner to be, have the ability to repair the home if there is something that happens to it.
So, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Knowing the predicament that a lot of people face in our county, they have a mobile home that's been paid for for a long time. Nobody will insure that. So, how are they going to add, the county is additionally insured if they don't have homeowner's insurance?
Okay, typically, insurance companies look for a four-point inspection, how roofing, electric, plumbing, heating, there are four points. This program upgrades those items. So, that when we're done, an insurance company should insure them. If they don't, we ask them to go to another insurance company. But those are, those are the things that the state requires and most insurance companies require to be up to date before they can insure them. So, in the case, and I'll be honest with you, in the case of manufactured homes, there are, manufactured homes depreciate so quickly that when we look at the cost of repairs versus the cost of the manufactured home, many times before, many, many times we find a home that's a lot younger than 1993 will be valued less than the cost of the repairs. So, then we're faced with a situation of saying, well, it might be better to do a new home because there's, there's no way that we can repair the repairs. You put a new roof on, you put a new air conditioning system in a home, doors, things like that. So, that's kind of how we evaluate it after we do the inspection.
Right, so if you're looking at doing a replacement anyway, that's going to fix the insurance issue because you had, yeah, that's all good, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep. That, that situation honestly comes up more with site-built homes. We, and again, what we, what we do is we ask the homeowner to call the insurance company or give us the number, we'll call the insurance company. We'll tell them exactly what we're going to do to the home that are going to address that four-point inspection. The homeowner will still have to call for the four-point inspection, unless the county wants to pay for that as well. But that, those items that we fix are going to adjust those four-point, those four-point inspection requirements.
Thank you.
In the case of, in the situation where a homeowner dies, if there is a person living in the home or spouse who's not an owner but was a spouse and, or dependent children that are living in the home, the county may allow that DPL to continue as long as the spouse and the children agree to sign the DPL and, and agree to live there and continue on to the terms of the deferred payment lien until the end of it. And finally, this is a secondary mortgage. The deferred payment lien is a secondary mortgage, basically. So, if the owner has a first mortgage on their home, we provide them a form and we say, it's your responsibility to tell your mortgage company that you're having these things done and there will be a second mortgage or sometimes a third mortgage put on your home. And just to make sure that they're okay with that. I've not found a mortgage company that has had a problem with a homeowner fixing up their homes. And in the case of replacement, they, mortgage companies love it because they basically have a mortgage on a new home, a first mortgage on a new home, so.
Mr. DeWitt, if I may, I want to ask, sorry.
Yeah.
Commissioner, is there anything from what he sent us, has presented to us, that brings up questions in your mind that you definitely want answered? Because, and I'm not, please don't take this, I'm not trying to be rude.
Oh, no, I encourage that.
But we have the presentation, you don't have to walk us through the, you know what I mean? You don't have to walk us through the whole thing.
Okay.
We have two public hearings scheduled today, we're going to be here all day long. And I'm not trying to be rude, I'm really not.
Okay.
Commissioner Locklear, you have a question?
Yeah. Did I understand him to say, if they have a mortgage on an old home?
Yes.
And you take, the old home is not fixed up. So, they tear it now and y'all build them a new home. Whether it's stick-built or mobile, or modular, or whatever. So, they still going to have a mortgage on, I mean, that mortgage company, it's still going to be over that? Well, how do they determine how much they owe?
It's the same, they would, that, that, and that's why we asked them to contact the mortgage company. It's going to be the amount that they owe on the own home, the old home will still carry over to the new home. They still own that first mort, the mortgage company still has the first mortgage on that building, okay?
So, if they owe five more years on it, they're going to get a new home with five-year mortgage.
They're going to have, the homeowner will have a new home with a five-year, whatever remains on their existing mortgage, right? And the mortgage company, on the other hand, if the homeowner were to default, would have, would be able to take back basically a brand-new home. So, we just want to make sure that the mortgage company understands what we're doing before we do it. Again, we've never had a mortgage company say no. But we did have one person in Lynn Haven who thought that, well, I'm getting a new home, I don't have to pay off my existing mortgage. Oh, no, by law, the first mortgage company's mortgage is still intact. So, you have to pay off your first mortgage.
They're going to get the grant. The house going to be a grant, so they ain't got no payments there.
No.
But they still, if they don't pay that old mortgage, mortgage company can come get that. That's messed up.
That's the law, you know. The, as long as, as long as there's a lien on the property, and that's one of the reasons why we make sure that people are up to date on their liens and their taxes. Again, we don't want anything to prevent the homeowner from living there. And if they don't pay their taxes, by law, if you have a lien on your property, they can come after it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question. As you know, a lot of our residents that probably will be seeking assistance from this program live on a fixed income and they may can't afford property insurance. I mean, I myself, we all know, our, our property insurance values have skyrocketed, our homeowner's insurance and flood insurance premiums. What, what, how does that work? I mean, they, if they can't, if it's not proven that they can afford it, that just eliminates them out of the program altogether?
Well, again, this is, that was taken right out of the county's housing assistance plan, that they had to be able to afford it. We were discussing this, my wife and I were discussing, Marie and I were discussing it as well, saying, well, how do we upfront be able to tell whether a person can afford to continue to pay property insurance? Number one, we can't tell the future. So, that might be something you all might want to consider in a change in your housing assistance plan if that's something that you don't want to enforce. Because there's really no, there's no way for us to be able to tell whether somebody in the future is going to be able to pay their property insurance. And also in the housing assistance plan, your housing assistance plan, it says they need to buy insurance. It doesn't say how long they need to buy it for. In other housing assistance plans that we've looked at in other communities, it's for the length of the term of the deferred payment lien. But your housing assistance plan doesn't say that. So, it's, it's unclear.
Mr. Chairman, a couple more questions. We have a lot of people in our community that live in recreational vehicles, travel trailers. Does this program, I asked your wife earlier, does this program replace those with, I know you wouldn't replace it with an RV, but you would replace it with potentially a mobile manufactured home?
A lot of, there are a lot of grandfathered, people living in RVs that are kind of grandfathered in. But most communities, and I believe Franklin County is one, that doesn't, don't allow for people to actually live in a, in RV home permanent, full-time. In that case, the person would obviously have to show us the title of the home, showing that they own them, own the RV. And they would qualify under all the other stipulations. And in that case, then we would provide a manufactured home, probably a smaller manufactured home. Delivered in RV, probably means it's one person or two people, not a whole family. But we would size the replacement with a manufactured home. And again, if it's in a mobile home park, then we would cite it in the mobile home park. If it's on property, then again, the question comes, does the county want to provide a manufactured home or a site-built home? I might mention, the reason I bring up site-built homes is for two reasons. The cost of manufacturing home, manufactured homes has just gone up astronomically. And typically, $10,000 to $15,000 difference between a site-built home and a manufactured home is what we're seeing. Because after the 2018 Hurricane Michael, the government bought up all the capacity of the manufactured home dealers and there was a consolidation in the manufactured home dealers bought up by bigger conglomerates. And so, the fewer, the fewer competitors you have in the business, the faster that they can raise prices. So, what we found is that there's, there tends to be a smaller gap between a manufactured home and a site-built home. But we consider that at the time afterward, you know, down the road as we're getting closer to doing, after we've done the estimate on the work that's to be done, that's when we start looking at that. Well, what's it going to cost us for a site-built home versus a manufactured home? And we'll talk to you about that before you all approve these applications, by the way.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that the county will have to be on their insurance when they apply for homeowner's or flood insurance?
Listed as an additional insured. The, the, the reason for the additional insured is only to notify you if a person is keeping up their insurance. Now, whether you care if they keep up their insurance or not, that's up to you. But certainly, flood insurance is going to be required, okay? That has to be kept up.
But the county's not going to be responsible if they default on their, their premium payment?
Absolutely not, no. Again, as an additional insured, just like a mortgage, a bank is listed on their insurance, the reason they do that is to, just to notify the lien holder.
Thank you.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Let's go back to what I was referring to. Say, you be to put a new house in there and you set up occupant, people who occupy them, they got the, they'll pay for their old, okay. I think they have four, three or four years left, something happened to them, they die or something. Why y'all couldn't go in there and pay that off and give it to another eligible person that again, back to the mortgage people?
Well, first of all, the money in the program will be spent on, on homes. So, if, this program will end once, excuse me, once the, the money is allocated by cycles, okay? So, this is the 2021, 2022 funding cycle. All the money that's been allocated for this grant will be spent. So, once this money's spent, there won't be money to come back and do that, number one. But number two, this program doesn't allow to pay, this program is not for paying up, paying mortgages. It's not in the program rule that this, that that's an allowable expense. That is not allowable expense. So, the state determines that and HUD determines that, not, not us.
It's a common sense, it's a common sense.
Yeah, I, I-
What I'm saying is-
I don't disagree with you, but-
If a person owed $5,000 on a house, they die, you're going to give it back to the mortgage company and you done replaced and gave them one, they, they done got a new home. Why we couldn't, you get, have something cold story to pay that $5,000 off and give it to another person who need a home?
I'd be, I'd be happy to provide you with the name of someone at the agency. But understand what our job is. Our, our, this is, this is your money. This is not our money. This is your money. And what, which, well, actually, it's been allocated to the county. And so, we're, what we're trying to do is implement a program based on HUD and the state's and your, and the county's rules to make sure that the county stays in compliance with those rules. And this program does not allow for paying off of existing liens. It's, that, that contract that we all sign when we, when we buy a house, that's a personal contract between ourselves and the bank. And so, the state doesn't step in to take up that obligation. You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
On the, this thing working?
Yes.
On the eligibility, just, just for clarification, like say someone went into city limits, doesn't qualify for this, what's the justification for that? Just, I mean, are y'all setting those guidelines or is this a state guideline?
No, that's, that's state rule. The City of Appalachia Cola can have a program just like this as well.
Because, I mean, you know, they do pay county taxes also.
Oh, I understand that, I understand. But, but the, the state puts out a list of eligible communities and the City of Appalachia Cola is one of those eligible communities. However, it's only the jurisdiction, specific jurisdiction, money goes to the specific jurisdiction that the applicant is. So, you look at the taxing district. And if the taxing, taxing district says Franklin County, then they are in unincorporated Franklin County. If the taxing district is City of Appalachia Cola, then they are within the City of Appalachia Cola. I understand that Appalachia Cola geographically is, is within Franklin County. But the state makes the distinction between eligible communities. And, and so, Franklin County's money is only eligible for Franklin County residents.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah.
24th Street coming line, I mean-
Yeah, Commissioner, they would actually have to do their own housing grant application. You know, so that's something. And they would also have to, a lot, the two cities also own, you know, water and sewer utilities. So, a lot of times, their CDVG projects are actually more geared towards expansion of water and sewer, which would eliminate them from being able to apply for a housing grant at the same time. But if they don't have anything active, then they definitely could have done so.
Any more questions?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Sam, here before, I was just thinking back about what the chairman was saying earlier about the program that we had before around 2016, something like that. And it got kind of out of hand because what we would thought, thought the maximum was going to be, the $70,000, it was topping out at 130, 140. Well, you're talking about two, two applicants there, but it's only one. So, what we need to do is make sure that we're very vigilant in what we're agreeing to because we want to make sure that we can service as many people that needs this service. And I mean to tell you, it, it can get out of hand real quick.
It does, especially because this program requires that any violation, any code violation that occurs or Section 8 substandard item or any energy conservation measure that needs to be done, has to be done. It's not like the ship program- It's not like the ship program where the ship program says, okay, you have, and I'm not sure what the ship plan is for Franklin County, but say you have twenty thousand dollars that can go to a homeowner to do repairs, that twenty thousand dollars can be used for maybe a house and/or a roof or something else. In this program, we have to do everything that's at issue. In Franklin County, we're going to have to deal with, in mobile homes, probably, we're going to have to upgrade the electric to two-hundred amp service, because most of these mobile homes, all the ones especially, seventy-five, hundred amps. Sewer systems, septic systems, I mean, are going to be expensive. So, there are a lot of additional costs that go into this that will eat up that money real quick, not just the cost of the structure itself. So, you're, you're correct. And there are requirements, as I mentioned, we have to help at least two very low-income and three low-income households before we can do anything else. So, we just have to wait and see what the condition of the homes are of those applicants that apply.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more note. Sorry. Mr. Dingman, I see here that the scope of assistance, it states that it's not necessarily a replacement. You guys will also, if the applicant is in need of a stove or cabinetry or a new roof, this program will allow for that as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
And you guys are coming this afternoon to a workshop at five?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Do you have something, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah, ma'am. If, right now with them two, you're saying two and three, but if they come to a replacement with that wind coat on a trailer, they got to withstand so much wind, that, that's a new coat, I think.
You're referring to exposure D-type manufacturer home?
Zone three is just, the exposure D is within seventy feet of the water.
Water, yeah, right. And it's on three, and they're going to cost more.
They're going to cost more.
Yes, sir.
And new homes have to meet the, the current wind zone ratings. We'll be looking at lead-based paint. The agency has tightened up on asbestos now. So, there are a lot, there has been a lot added to this program since your last one, which was in 2016, I think, or 15, whatever it is. So, we'll be looking at all of that. And especially energy conservation. Homes with single-pane windows, you have to replace those with wind zone-rated Energy Star windows. So, there, there's a lot to look at, you know? And that's the way it should be. Mr. Roll, we, we might want to reach out to Ms. Angela Webster, our ship administrator, you know, through Capillary Action Agency. I know that in the interim of, so, we, we applied for this, wasn't it back in July of last year?
Yes.
We were usually applied.
Mm-hmm.
The discussion, the governor did the announcement, I did something with the, the news media about it, because we're thankful to be able to receive these funds. So, since that time, since there was a, everybody knew about it, it wasn't, you know, everybody knew it was coming. Anybody that's come to me asking about it, I direct them to Ms. Angela, because they do our ship stuff. So, they might want to reach out to those people that have come to them about this program and make sure they know about today at five.
Okay.
You know what I mean? If that's possible.
And to be clear, today at five is you're hosting the workshop. It is not a county commission hosting workshops.
Right, no.
I needed to clarify that. But they did advertise that one or more county commissioner may attend, so it'll be fine for you guys to attend.
Okay.
So, I got, I got one more question.
All right, what's that, sir?
Your office, if, if a person will put an application, where they go?
We ask the applications to be sent to the county or sent to us directly, which is Panama City Beach. So, we do need the original application, because it has signatures and certifications and, "I promise to do this" and those kinds of things on it. So, it has to be the original application. We can't take a fax of it. And, so, so that's how, how that works. And again, we will, once we start receiving applications in, they typically aren't complete. And the applications, even though it's sent in, it's, it's not considered an application until it's absolutely complete. So, once we get complete applications, then I begin my process of inspections. So, when I come before you, or Marie and I come before you to present the list of applicants, we'll kind of have an idea of how much it's going to cost and where we think the program needs to, whether it needs to be a home or whether it needs to be, can be rehab, something like that.
Can I recommend, maybe we work out with Aaron that you have days where you come down to receive and see some of the clients as they file out their applications?
Sure.
I, I would hate for them to have to mail it to you, it's wrong, you mail it back, and it goes a back-and-forth.
Sure.
If you have a day, you know, every couple of weeks a day where you can come and they can sit with you and go through the application. That'd probably work out better, Commissioner.
Yes, probably would. All right, any other questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Dean.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay, Mr. Chairman. So, we're kind of here at a, at a pass here.
Let's, let's hear from Mr. Davis, because we did add him to the agenda.
Yes, he'll take a couple of minutes.
And then let's take a short recess and then go to our public hearings.
We go to the public hearings. I'll let Quentin know that he'll be delayed until after the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, because that's where we're heading.
Yep, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Fong, Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Real quick, Chairman Jones reminded me yesterday about the basketball team on my report. Franklin County Seahawk Board Regional Game for Board's Action, the Franklin County Seahawk Board's basketball team is playing in the regional game tonight, which is host here in Franklin County. By winning the region, they will be able to travel to Lakeland to compete in the state finals. With that in mind, with the board, consider waiving the national championship requirements in your youth support, youth sports team or individual funding policy and award the Franklin County Seahawk Board's basketball team a full five thousand from the Parks and Recreation Budget to assist with team expense.
So moved.
We have much to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. I would like to say in the discussion that we also need to add to this motion, if we're going to approve it, the opportunity for the Clerk's office to be able to write a manual check for this expense, you know, after they win tonight, kind of thing.
There we go. There we go.
But I will say this, under discussion, I was looking last night, just to satisfy my curiosity, among other things I was researching, in the last, this now is the eighth time in the last nine years that our boys' basketball team has advanced to the regionals out of districts to regionals. And it'll be the second time in those nine years that we've made a Final Four appearance. So, we're doing things right at the school of basketball.
Man, we're growing in Lakeland.
Yes, sir, we are. All right, any more discussion before we vote? And we did, just to remind that some, we have new commissioners, and Ms. Sanders was on the board then. We've done this in the past. The last time we went to a Final Four, we did the same action.
Twenty-eighteen?
I think twenty-nineteen.
Eighteen.
Twenty-nineteen.
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 Nineteen.
Well, Mr. Sanders, then, Commissioner Lockley was here before we did it, sir.
Two passed before.
There you go. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
All right, let's take about a five-minute recess. We'll come back to the public hearing.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Looking at the agenda, Mr. Esfer, we have to come back to you, sorry, we do have public hearings. We are going to move our public hearing that we're doing about the improvement schedule to last and go ahead and do the critical shoreline hearing now.
Mr. Chairman, is the board ready to proceed?
I think so, yes, sir.
All right. The ordinance for this public hearing is entitled an Ordinance Submitting Ordinance 89-8, which is an ordinance regulating the critical shoreline of Franklin County, Florida, for the purpose of repealing the local setback of on-site sewage disposal systems and aerobic treatment systems from the waters and wetlands of Franklin County, Florida, revoking all ordinances in conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. The essential purpose of this ordinance, if it is adopted, would be to eliminate local setbacks and to adopt the state regulations for setbacks for aerobic systems and septic tanks throughout the county. I also want to get on the record that this ordinance would not be intended to allow septic tanks in areas where they are presently banned. They are presently banned on St. George Island and Alligator Point. With that, Mr. Chairman, unless y'all have any questions for me, we have Ms. Sarah Quanto from the Department of Health and Mr. Brad, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name. They are here to give the board and the public a presentation on what those state setbacks provide in the event the board decides to adopt the ordinance.
While they're coming up, I do want to say something.
Yes, sir.
So, I appreciate the fact they're here this morning. I appreciate the fact that everyone else is here, looking past the emotional issue that this is and has been for some. I will tell you that I completely, but when we first started down this road, I completely misunderstood what was being presented. So, at the time, we were looking at the difference of 75 feet to 50 between the state and the county. After researching, there is no 75 to 50, it's 75 to zero. I can find nowhere in the current DEP manual, after DEP let the state take it over, there's nowhere in this current manual where there's any setbacks to wetlands with the state. So, I assure you, I'll be voting no today to keep it the way it is and asking my board members to make the motion second to do so. But please proceed, Ms. Sarah.
That's correct, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Quoranta, and I serve as the Health Officer for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin and in Gulf. And the ask today was to provide state rule guidance on the regulations of surface water setbacks. So, here to provide that overview, we created a cheat sheet. Do you have it in front of you? Okay. We have our Environmental Health Manager, Zach Hodges. He's over both Franklin and Gulf. And we have our Environmental Health Lead Specialist, Brad Addison, who will come up here and provide an overview.
Thank you for the opportunity to come talk with you about
Yes, sir.
... on-site sewage treatment systems. We refer to that as OSTDS for short. Thank you. So, you have the table in front of you, correct? Okay. So, I'm just going to talk off the table to make it a little easier. So, the top column there, we have different type of treatment units, like septic tank, aerobic unit, secondary treatment, advanced secondary, and advanced wastewater. So, as you go from left to right, the treatment process gets more, a better treatment to the wastewater. Okay? From ATU, secondary treatment, advanced secondary, and advanced wastewater, those type of units require a maintenance entity. They also require to be inspected at least twice a year or maybe quarterly per year by the maintenance entity, and then the state inspects them once a year. So, those systems are routinely inspected and monitored. Okay? So, below that number, you'll see some setbacks. So, these are the state setbacks as they are currently available. One note, at the very bottom, it is correct that there is no mandated setback to wetlands for an OSTDS in the state regulations. That is very correct. So, lots that were platted before January 1, 1972, these particular units are able to be installed within 50 feet of the surface water. Okay? For all the units, except for the advanced wastewater systems, which we don't really have any approved systems or tanks right now. They're approved by Florida. But if they were, there's 25-foot setback there, but the tanks have to be installed 50 feet from the surface water. So, that should have been added onto the chart. All right. For lots platted after January 1, 1972, that's when the 75-foot setback kicked in. And then, if you go to a more advanced treatment system, say, secondary treatment, advanced secondary, advanced wastewater treatment, there are allowances to go a little closer to the surface water. These particular systems, the secondary treatment and above, are required to be designed by a larger Florida professional engineer, and also, they would have to request the setback. It's just not a given. It would be requested in the design document. All right? And then, below this, the next section is for repair. So, eventually, these systems will have to be repaired. Okay? And so, these are the setbacks in the table there that are allowed for repairs. And one note is that the greatest of the following in each column there, so if you can meet the current setback, then you have to meet the current setback. You can't go, automatically go to, say, 25 feet or 50 feet listed in the chart. So, the most restrictive is what you'd be required to do, down to the minimum. And if you can't meet those minimum requirements, then under hardship cases, you can request a variance through DEP. Okay? All right. Let me go down here. So, right now, if what's required, if we implement, of course, the Franklin County ordinances, so let's say we have a septic tank that's within 150 feet of the surface water. If the tank fails, then they're required to install an aerobic treatment unit. All right? If you go, let's say that we're in a county that doesn't have an ordinance, they just do the state requirements, then this table here, the new stuff, would be what we would allow. So, you could put a septic tank within 50 feet of the water that were platted before 1972 and 75 feet afterwards. All right? So, this also, if you do the state requirements, let's say if you have an aerobic unit that's already installed and needs to be repaired, or they decide they want to get rid of it, and they can meet the septic tank requirements, then potentially, they could replace the ATU with a septic tank. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, you know, there's two sides to this thing. So, we would have to approve it one way or the other, you know. Let's see, there's anything else here? If you go to the more advanced systems, say, secondary treatment, advanced secondary, or advanced wastewater, which we don't have any, depending on what exclusions, exemptions that they accept in the design documents, say, like for an ATU, you get 25% deduction in drain field. For the advanced secondary and advanced wastewater, you can get a 40%. Or an increase in lot flow for sewage, the amount of sewage can be disposed of on the lot, then there are certain monitoring requirements that are required for those type of permits. Are there any questions or any comments?
Any questions, Commissioner? I would like to ask
Yes, sir.
... a question. In what you've said so far, you've said that the state conducts annual checks on all the systems that are currently in place around the county?
The aerobic or performance-based systems, we do annual inspections. And then, the maintenance entity, so the person that maintains this system for the owner, has to be certified in that particular treatment system. They either do twice-a-year inspections, or depending on what was approved, it may be quarterly inspections or sampling.
Is there anywhere that someone might could access on the state website and see the last time somebody had their annual inspection done in Franklin County?
That is a very good question. And I had to follow up on that one. Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
And with the switch over, a question added to that one. With the switch over from what it was for Department of Health now to DEP, is there a dedicated person in Franklin County that's doing these kind of things? Or are we kind of still sharing with Gulf County? How does that work?
Well, we're a combined health department, and we have the environmental specialists have to be certified for the septic systems. And so, we sort of help each other out, Gulf and Franklin. But we have two inspectors in Franklin County that are Franklin County assigned, and sometimes, because of the volume and us helping cover each other, some of the Gulf County folks come over and help us finish up inspections if we're running behind at the end of the year.
Okay, sir. Well, I'm not trying to hijack what you're doing, but
Yes, sir.
... we have a particular issue, and maybe we can talk about it another time, have you guys back
Yes, sir.
Where we have many, especially on St. George Island, we have many houses and residents that are advertising there for over 20 people.
Yes, sir.
And that I know of, at least with the one company I spoke of, there's only one unit on the island that they've installed that would accommodate more than 20 people.
We're aware of that, and we're trying to work on those as we come aware of them. And through, a lot of times, they come for repairs, so we're starting to ask, well, how many extra occupants so the system can be sized for those type of situations?
Yes, sir. And I'm not trying to hijack what we're discussing today, but I do want to say, what we need to do is not have us and them mentality. The state and the county need to work together maybe a little more to help tackle that issue. So, when it comes forward, if there's anything we can do or must do or need to do, because for policies and procedures that would help in that, we need to do it. So, that's the only reason I mentioned why you're here.
Thank you, sir. Is that all?
That's it for me.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, if the board has no questions, traditionally, you would take public comment.
All right. So, you don't really necessarily have to fill out a speaker card for a public hearing? No, that's not required. Anybody can speak. So, this time, we're up to the Florida public comment. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
So, my name's David Duncan. I'm here with three hats. I sit up there on the planning and zoning board that kind of helped get us to this public hearing because of adjustment that came in, you know, somebody asking for a variance. Also, here is a citizen. I live on St. George Island. My business is in East Point, own properties in the county, been here my whole life. And then, you know, also, I'm a builder. So, I see the struggles that the homeowners have. So, I get it all, and I understand where you're coming from. So, I just want to be, I want to speak it, because we don't get the opportunity, a lot of people don't realize this, but as a planning and zoning member, we don't get the opportunity to share why it got passed onto y'all. So, as a public here, and then people can hear why, because we don't stand outside on the sidewalk and talk about it. So, that's why we're here for today, is a public meeting. So, I think this one particular case is probably what brought us here, because it would be the first time ever that an ATU was approved for a variance to be closer within the guideline and setbacks. Correct? I mean, that would be fair, I think. Mr. Schuler said that they had never heard of one that been passed. But as a planning and zoning and a board member on the adjustment board, we're not there to evaluate the policy. We're there to see if it meets the policy, and they're asking for the variance. So, when it comes across to us, we have the ability to either pass it to you guys to evaluate that, whether they get the variance, or deny it. But me personally, as a homeowner, a taxpayer, would not want to be denied use of my property. So, then in turn, that's why I look at, hey, we need to look at this situation further. We need to take it to the county commissioners. Then we end up having public hearings, which is a good thing. I've heard what you said. People just automatically assume there's this big change that's going to happen, but really, that's not the case, that I've heard any of y'all say, nor the Board of Adjustment. It's more or less to get it out there, because this is coming, guys. I've spoke that in the Board of Adjustment meeting, that the great properties across this county that had plenty of room on them are gone. So, we're going to start seeing this more often. I'm going to see it on the Board of Adjustment. You guys are going to see it up here in the county commissioners. So, I'm just telling you here today is, I think the advancement of changing the footprint to 1,000 square foot was huge. It helped a lot. You kept from condemning, so I commend y'all for that, because you took a step forward to take that piece of property to where it could not be used anymore, and said if you decrease the property, the house size, you can do it. But although that same rule, they're still trying to push the home or the whatever structure is closer to their setback lines to stay with that distance that is required. So, what I tell you here today is this, sometimes, the structure may need to actually be closer to the wetlands to get the ATU further away. So, you're battling two things. So, I just urge you here today, it's not to necessarily make a change, but to hear each individual case independently, because they're not all the same. I mean, I was just, I was telling somebody in the back, I personally have three properties that are affected by this same rule that is quite some distance from the bay, because people automatically assume that wetlands is always, you know, Nick's Hole, all these different places, just an example, that's close to the bay. But sometimes, it may be up there where you live, Commissioner. It may be out in the middle of one of these subdivisions. So, then again, we might necessarily not need to change to their rule, but we do need to be open to each individual person's needs, because these people that come before us as a board member at Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustments and to y'all are taxpayers as well, and they're paying taxes on that property. So, it puts us in a tough position, and I'll say that for the public that hears well, to put y'all in a tough position, because they also own their property and want to do something on it as well. So, I just, I say today that we're not, I'm not here necessarily saying change it, but I am saying be open that times are changing, and those great properties are gone, and you're going to start seeing this more often. Just be aware of that. It's not going to be a one-time deal.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Rebecca Chatan, 3126 Camulia Wood, Tallahassee. I was born and raised in Carabelle, right down the street from Commissioner Sanders. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Appalachia Cola Riverkeeper, and I worked as the Planning Manager here when Franklin County was designated an area of critical state concern. I'm here to ask you to oppose the ordinance and give you some additional background. Before I begin, thank you for your service in making these difficult decisions. You've adopted a comprehensive plan that's very protective of water quality and the fishery. It received an award from the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association. In 1985, in response to frequent closures of the bay to oyster harvesting due to water quality concerns, the legislature adopted a work plan in Chapter 380-55, Florida statutes. The work plan required Franklin County to establish pollution-sensitive segments of the shoreline and no longer grant permits for on-site wastewater systems in pollution-sensitive segments of the critical shoreline, except for systems that would not degrade water quality to the bay. The Critical Shoreline District does three things. It protects the vegetation in the first 50 feet next to wetlands or surface water, and that's where your stormwater attenuation is supposed to occur. It requires a 75-foot setback from mean-high water or wetlands greater than 10 acres. This is the pollution-sensitive zone. It requires aerobic systems instead of conventional septic systems. An aerobic system introduces oxygen into the tank and increases bacterial activity, which provides additional treatment for nutrients that are in the wastewater. Aerobic systems, as you just heard, are monitored twice annually, and they're designed for inadequate soil conditions, where the water table is high or the home is close to surface water, and where you have an area that's sensitive to contamination by nutrients, which are found in wastewater effluent. Conventional systems provide little reduction of nitrogen, phosphorus, or other chemicals in human waste, like pharmaceuticals. When water flows through a drain field, it joins groundwater and flows to nearby wetland streams, the river, and the bay. The groundwater table here is about seven inches below the surface of the earth, and nutrients in the bay can lead to algal blooms, and blue-green algae can devastate a water body. The Franklin County Board made a decision in 1997 that they didn't want to provide central sewer. Instead, they would let the municipalities provide it in the unincorporated areas, and they established a one-acre lot size. they established a one-acre lot size. An acre of land contains 43,560 square feet. If an applicant can't set back 75 feet from wetlands, they've bought a wetland. Rescinding the ordinance will not eliminate your problem with this regulation. I'm almost through.
Hold on, excuse me. I know, but please respect other people's time. We're not here for all that. Please proceed.
All right. Rescinding this ordinance doesn't eliminate this issue. The comprehensive plan in three different elements, the future land use, coastal, and your public facility sewer element, all contain this requirement. So if you want to eliminate it, you have to amend your comprehensive plan. The State Land Planning Agency is going to read Chapter 380-055, Florida statutes, and they may raise an objection to relaxation of the protection of the bay. And as you heard earlier, St. George Island Development of Regional Impact Development Order already requires aerobic systems, so you'd have to amend that as well.
Mr. Duncan, excuse me. How many more pages do you have to read?
I have one more sentence.
Good, because there's a bunch of people wanting to comment today.
I understand. I'm sorry to take so long. Rescinding this ordinance means decreased protection of the Apalachicola Bay. I know that's not your intent. Please oppose this ordinance. Focus should be on developing alternatives to wetland setbacks, such as variances from the front road setback, and using alternative septic systems that may be able to go closer to the wetlands. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, sir. You have three minutes.
Pete Whitesole, 112 Avenue D, Apalachicola. I've heard for many years now that almost everyone in this county wants to bring back oystering, including some of you on this county commission. I've also heard a lot about bringing back the bay to its former glorious of fishing, oystering, and shrimping haven. In order to bring back the bay and bring back oystering, you are going to have to take concrete and real steps to protect the bay from the chemical pollution that kills oysters, shrimp, and fish. One of those pollutes is nitrogen, and a lot of nitrogen comes from septic tanks, as well as fertilize oyster, shrimp, and fish. You have a very clear choice here. You either say no to moving septic tanks closer to the wetlands in the bay, or you say no to saving oyster, shrimp, and fish. It's one or the other. In fact, you, if you really wanted to save the bay for fishing and oystering, you'd increase the distance of septic systems from the bay to 150 feet or more. Now that would do something real and concrete to save the bay.
Please state your name for the record.
Dan Tonsmire. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all this morning. Commissioner Jones, you had asked me to try to give you some insight and documentation on why the buffers were what they were and how they came to be more stringent in the state, and importantly, why the county has to enforce those laws. And somewhere between my desk and the truck, that stack of documents lies, and that's just the state of things these days. So among those documents were several things, and I'm going to skip a couple of these because of what Rebecca has said. I did sit through the number, with a number of people, the comprehensive planning process, the area critical state concern designation, as some of you did, and so I'm aware of the details that went into the discussions to try to come up with what those buffers were. There was a 1990s stormwater study, as Rebecca mentioned, that showed that the pollution coming out of East Point, Carabel, Apalachicola, St. George Island, Alligator Point was a problem. And so that instituted the creation of financing for stormwater and wastewater facilities all across the county, and we see a lot of that that occurred then. So the, the studies that I had didn't give you 75 feet is enough or 150 feet is enough, but it generally agrees that 50 feet is not enough, and that's what happens all over Florida. So y'all understand that. So we just had to negotiate, as is said by these studies, that it's a political decision what those buffers are, and it's what you can get away with and not get sued by all the property owners. So just be cautious that if you ever rescind those buffers, that you won't get them back, and it will certainly follow with additional requests to, to reduce other buffers. I'll ask you just to remind you that the federal and state government are fickle, and sometimes they're here to help and sometimes they're not. The Critical Shoreline Ordinance not only helps protect water quality, sedimentation of the bay, wildlife habitat, but importantly, community character. So we're living in a time where a huge reset button has been hit in Franklin County. As you said, used to be 30 oyster houses in East Point. But, but a lot is going on that's going to help us get back to where we are. Most people think the lawsuit was a waste of time, but I can tell you that hundreds of millions of dollars are being spent in Georgia right now because of it to reduce the water consumption of agriculture. Tens of millions of dollars are being spent to restore the floodplain to Apalachicola River connection lost due to the Corps of Engineers dredging. The bay is recovering to producing oysters, but you're going to have to push the state to improve the management. I would like to just end with some words from a 80-year-old Franklin County resident. It's a good friend of mine, some words of encouragement that, that he offered. Now, Michael, would you mind just handing that to him, please? You can just look at the last sentence, but read the whole thing. He's a philosopher, and you don't want to spend time with that this morning, but it really is up to you, the commission here in Franklin County, to do what needs to be done to protect the bay, and I know y'all know that. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Next.
Hi, I'm Lynn Wilder, and I'm a resident of Apalachicola. I just want to quote or paraphrase, I guess, a, one of the commissioners of Miami County who has frequent red tide, algal, they're dying, dying waters around them. It says, "Without a clean bay, without a clean rivers and surface water, we don't have tourism, and we don't have health." So I'd just like to say that our groundwater is shallow, and the nutrients that have been mentioned, nitrogen and phosphorus, and harmful bacteria and viruses, will get out into wetlands and into our bay and rivers. The human health isn't harmed at the contaminant levels that cause damage to our environment. So our health-based levels that we set to shut a beach down are higher than what gets out and actually does damage to our ecosystem. They act as, these nutrients actually act as a fertilizer, so they're nutrients for our lawns, but they're not nutrients when they get into the water. And that can, as has been mentioned, lead to algal blooms, reduce water quality, kill aquatic animals and plants, form toxins. They are a food force, food source for red tides, so when that does come in, it stays around longer, doesn't go back out and dissipate. We can see this in our areas like Tampa, other places in Florida. They have a lot of nutrients going out, and their red tide stays a long time, and we've seen that, what that does to their tourism. The closer septic tanks are to water, and the more developed our area becomes, the worse contamination gets, the more damage is done. For example, instead of one septic system on a 30-acre lot, 31-acre lots and 30 septic tanks raises the likelihood of damage to wildlife, habitat, and biodiversity. Keep in mind, for people who don't, I'm not a very good measurer of what 50 feet means. It's only about the length of an 18-wheeler's trailer, so it's not a lot of room between a septic tank and a wetland. Please don't loosen the restrictions in our county's septic tank ordinance. Reducing the distance to wetlands will further degrade our bay and river. Septic system contents will reach the wetlands. Impacts include further degradation of water quality, which damages plant and animal life. And we are trying to get oysters back, so let's, let's have a, a vision of keeping this area the way it is, which is why all of us are staying here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Allison Goodson, and I am a concerned property owner and mother of, of three. I've got one of them here today, and they are very blessed to be growing up, enjoying the shores of Franklin County that you and your predecessors, going back 34 years since 89-8 was adopted, have, have done a fine job of protecting, and I thank you for that. I also happen to be a government regulatory attorney who practices in this field. Ordinance 89-8 starts off with a clear statement of its purpose, which is to protect Franklin County waters from septic tank pollution in order to safeguard specifically its seafood and aquatic recreation industries and the jobs that depend on those things. We are all benefiting from those protections here today, which have been hard fought by your past commissioners, and again, I hope that you will remain true to those values. The existing ordinance also aligns with the 40-plus-year history and charter mission of the East Point Water and Sewer District, which I know is near and dear to Chairman Jones's heart, and as he's aware, the goal and the mission of that organization is to, quote, "restrain and prevent pollution of Apalachicola Bay and St. George Sound." Commissioner Jones, I appreciate your service on that commission and your comments here today that you're here to defend it and its goals consistent with your appointment by the governor.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the governor, he too has been a, a great and aggressive champion for water quality in Florida. He has repeatedly said that water quality is one of his, quote, "top priorities" and that, quote, "Florida's economy runs on its waterways." He has poured hundreds of millions of dollars into shoreline restoration and water quality initiatives, including specifically initiatives to remediate damage caused by septic tanks, to remove tens of thousands of septic tanks along vulnerable coastlines, and a vote to move forward with the proposal before you today, I would submit flies in the face of both the local leadership that you all have been loyal to and the state leadership that, that our governor is, is demonstrating. But to the extent that there is any question in your minds whether a yes vote is the appropriate next step on the proposal to amend and repeal 89.8 and the setback requirements within it, I would point out a few things. First, as you've heard here today, talk of a 50-foot setback requirement at the state level is frankly misinformation. The state system is vastly more complicated than that, and the expense to Franklin County property owners and the time and delays that will be associated with their efforts to navigate that system from a legal standpoint in order to identify what setback specifically applies to what plot of land, based on when it was platted, is going to be a tremendous burden. Two, well, to that extent, I'm curious, from the commissioner's standpoint, what your understanding has been of that regulatory scheme, and I appreciate Chairman's comments acknowledging that it's, it's not as simple as perhaps we all, we all thought when we walked down this path initially. Number two, once we buy into the state system, it could and likely will change at any time without our input or counter to our input. That should be especially concerning to folks who are hoping for looser restrictions on septic tank systems, given how aggressively our state leadership has, has pushed for reforms and tighter restrictions on water quality, tighter restrictions on septic tanks specifically. And so to the extent that there are constituents of yours who are still pushing for this proposal, a worthy response to them would be, to do this would be to give up Franklin County control of these issues to folks who we know are likely interested in, in restricting us further. And I'd also like to point out that the State Variance Committee, before whom any permit variances would go, is made up of people from Okeechobee, Tallahassee, Crestview, Cape Coral, Jacksonville, and the Orlando area. So many inland areas of the state and none as uniquely situated as coastal Franklin County would be charged with making the decisions about what is best for our waters. Third, I'd be curious what conversations the commission has had with FWC, DEP, DOH, and other state leaders to determine how this might affect the opening of the bay. Obviously, that has been a tremendously emotional and hot-button issue for this area of the world, and this proposal to amend the setback requirements was not part of the conversation when FWC handed down this decision that our bay should be closed until 2025. So I think it would be remiss of this commission to move forward with this effort without understanding from FWC's standpoint, is this going to cause you to delay that even further? And finally, it sounds like there's been essentially consensus, among the room here today at least, that this proposal should fail, but if there are those voices that we're not hearing perhaps today urging you to go a different direction, I would remind you and the Planning and Zoning Board members that you are subject to the Code of Ethics for Public Employees under Chapter 12 of the Florida statutes, which makes it a violation of the law for you to vote or to use your public position to secure a benefit for yourselves, your spouses, your relatives, your business associates, or others. And the penalties for violating those provisions are stiff. So to the extent that there are people trying to put you in that position, I would urge you to remind them of what exactly they're asking of you. Chairman Jones, Commissioners, I hope that in considering the comments before you today, you'll make the right decision for this unique and special place and vote no on the proposal to amend ordinance 89.8. And if you would, my daughter Vivian has very brief comments that she would like to make. She did submit a speaker card.
Make sure we can hear them with the microphone down, please.
Good morning. My name is Vivian Moweni. I'm eight years old and second grade, and sea turtles are my favorite animal. They are important part of the ecosystem. Franklin County is a vital nesting ground for sea turtles. They need clean, safe water to survive. In order to protect sea turtles and their clean water, I'm asking you to vote no on changing the septic tank rules. Please accept my speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing us to be here today. My name is Ty Jackson. I have property on St. George. That was my wife that you just heard from. Her family's been here for 25 years. Her father lives on the island. We love this place. We're excited to be down here. I won't echo everything that everyone else has said, other than to say that I support those comments. I would urge you, I also happen to be an attorney, a regulatory attorney. I'm board certified in state and federal government practice. This is what I do, reading these statutes and rules. I would caution you, the state regulatory scheme is very complicated, and I, I think you've had information here today from the folks at DOH in this chart. One thing I would caution you on, for example, it says lots platted after 1-1, 1972. What the statute actually says is if it's before 1972, it's one set of rules. If it's between 1972 and 19, January 1, 1983, it's a second set of rules. After 1983, it's whatever rule was in effect when your property was platted. I looked this morning, that rule's been amended at least 10 times since 1983. So you could have two lots right next to one another, one subject to one set of rules, one subject to a completely different set of rules. But I think the most important takeaways are no setback from wetlands, and two, Chairman Jones, you said this morning in an earlier comment, we want our people taking care of our people. We want our people, we want you all deciding what's best for our people. The State Variance Committee has ultimate control to do away with every rule and let them put it in the bay if they want to. And as you heard earlier, Okeechobee, Ocala, Orlando, Jacksonville, the closest we have is someone in Crestview in Oakliss County. Grew up in Oakliss County, think it's a great place. It's not Franklin County. So we would like, I think it's best for our folks to have control over what happens in Franklin County, and I would urge you to do that. I'd also point out, our neighbors, Gulf, Bay, Wakulla, Walton, you look up and down this, this portion of the coast, they all have their own regulations that say what the setbacks are because the state's requirements are not stringent enough. So I would urge you to keep what you have, and, and if you want to talk about, you know, Mr. Duncan. Duncan said, "Look, look at different situations. Different situations are unique. We have a variance process." I would caution you, the one that brought us here today wants to put their septic system forty feet from the bay. They need a thirty-foot variance on their drawing. They want to go thirty feet into the seventy-five-foot setback. That doesn't even meet a fifty-foot. Now, that's from the wetlands, not the surface waters. But yes, look at them on a case-by-case basis. You have that ability today to do that. You don't need to get rid of this system, and the gentleman, I can't recall his name, that spoke earlier, once you get rid of this and you go to the state standard, trying to get it back, you're going to get sued over and over and over again. This has been here for a long time for a reason. I would urge you to keep it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. Jonathan Goodson, I live on St. George Island. I have a set of papers I'd like to give to the Board of Commissioners if I could. I'm a biochemist by training, so I'm a bit of a science geek, and I wanted to talk about a little bit briefly this morning about what we're talking about at kind of a molecular level, if you will. The first page of this thing is basically just pulling out information from the county website. And the intent, we were talking about wetlands, setbacks, and things like that, the intent, and it was stated by the county Commissioners in the past, "Good water quality is essential to maintaining viable seafood and aquatic recreational resources." That's clear. The county Commissioners have stated that in the past, and it's documented. The Critical Shoreline District includes pollution-sensitive segment and critical habitat zones, which are basically wetlands, and wetlands sooner or later are going to connect to the bay. You can argue all you want, but stuff that goes into the water table is going to end up in the bay. And when you put a septic system that close, you might as well just run a pipe into the bay because it's so close that everything coming out of that, even though it's an aerobic system, is going to end up in the bay. So that brings us to what I want to talk about, and that's fixed law. On page number three, "Fixed Law of Diffusion" is a law that explains the diffusion process of molecules in a solution. Picture a drop of red dye in a bucket of water. You'll notice that when you drop it in, it's bright red, but over time, it spreads out and it's pink. That's because it diffuses. Molecules move from a system of a higher concentration to a lower concentration, and that's exactly how material moving out of a sewage system is going to advance its way toward the bay. Diffusion is a spontaneous movement of atoms, molecules, from the higher concentration to a lower concentration. That's a natural law described by Adolf Fitt in eighteen-fifty-five. Natural laws are things like gravity. If you drop your pencil, it's going to go to the floor. That's a law. That's not open for discussion. Fixed law is the same way. Molecules diffuse to a lesser concentration. So it shows us clearly, if you look at the next page, page four, there's kind of a layout of what's going to happen. Here's a sewage treatment system, and the wetlands at fifty feet, the concentration of material moving from that sewage system is much higher than it is at seventy-five feet. Because if you look at the last page, it shows you circles that are in exact proportion to each other, and you can measure them if you don't believe me. But that shows you the area that a seventy-five-foot setback compared to a fifty-foot setback is going to have. And as a result of putting a septic system so close to the bay, it's going to diffuse very quickly into the bay water. The seventy-five-foot setback, it provides a lot more area for the sewage material to diffuse out and be absorbed by plants, et cetera, before it gets into the water system, which it eventually will. So please, don't change the current setback. The bay is on life support, as you all well know, and it defines Franklin County, and we've got to protect it. And setting variances or reducing setbacks of sewage systems toward the bay, towards the wetlands, whatever you want to call them, all wetlands, sooner or later, even if they're in the middle of St. George Island, are going to be connected to the bay. That water moves that way due to fixed law. Thank you very much, and I encourage you strongly to reject this change in the ordinance.
Thank you. Next. As this young lady is coming, go ahead, ma'am. As this young lady is coming, by show of hands, how many more people want to speak publicly on this matter? Okay, if y'all could, please come to the front and be prepared to go. Go ahead, ma'am. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Diane Alex, and I'm a resident of Carabel. I have an educational and professional background in wetland ecology and wildlife conservation, and I would like to echo some of the previous comments asking you to oppose changing this setback rule. As it's been stated previously, more septic systems closer to wetlands will increase the likelihood of wastewater seeping into them, and even properly working systems will still discharge nutrients, bacteria, and viruses into our groundwater. Sandy soils like we have in Franklin County allow water and contaminants to move faster, which doesn't leave as much time for nutrients and pathogens to settle out. We've already had speakers acknowledge some of the negative environmental effects from this, including increased algal growth, which leads to red tide and fish kills, impacts to forested wetland and aquatic vegetation, and potentially contaminated seafood, including our filter feeders like oysters and scallops. Coastal waters are already known to be more sensitive to this type of pollution from septic systems and wastewater. In addition, I'd ask you to consider that building closer to wetlands will disrupt wildlife corridors in our county, which will bring more citizens in closer contact with animals that previously would have had more space to stay further from us and more cover to hide in. Decreasing these buffers will increase our likelihood of human and wildlife interactions that could be potentially harmful to both parties. With this in mind, and the many other reasons presented by our neighbors, please do not relax the setback distance. This will lead to negative consequences for many of the wild and incredibly unique aspects of Franklin County. Although our rule is stricter than the state's, please keep in mind that we still have what most of Florida has already lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. I'm Georgia Ackerman, eighteen oh four, East Gulf Beach Drive, and I'll be brief because I believe what needs to be said has been said this morning, but let me also thank you for your service and your leadership to our county. I'm Riverkeeper at Apalachicola Riverkeeper, and you know, we're an independent nonprofit group, and we work to protect and restore this incredible river and bay system that I know each of you greatly cares about. Again, thank you for your service. I'm encouraged by Chairman Jones's comments. I think we have a tremendous opportunity as a community to learn about how septics work, talk to countywide, and have a discussion on how do we continue to provide the level of protection that the county has done to date. So thank you for that. I've contacted Commissioners independently. We've expressed Apalachicola Riverkeepers' opposition to the proposed change and urge each of you to vote to oppose this ordinance and keep the current ordinance intact, and let's continue the conversation on how we'll work together to protect our waters. As you know, the productivity of the river and the bay and the eastern Gulf of Mexico depend on our watershed, which also protects our economy and our way of life, and thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Elva Peppers, Florida Environmental and Land Services, and I, you know, I agree with what the bulk of these folks are saying, and as Chairman Jones had said, this was, the rescinding of the ordinance was never the intent or discussion that we understood was happening. This came from somewhere else. I don't know.
Ms. Peppers, I can help you with that. As I was looking over that specific application, no, it was not in response to what you guys were doing. Looking over that application, I found something that didn't make sense to me. So I asked the Board to move to a public hearing so we could have this public discussion.
Okay.
It was not about one project, I assure you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't something we were proposing to rescind the, completely rescind the setback. It was in response to variance requests, of course. I do think that the county needs to look a little bit more about the methods and the rules and the, as, I'm not going to go over what we had discussed, how we got to the point we did, and, you know, we had gotten a variance and...
Ms. Peppers, please keep it to what we're talking about today.
Yes.
Do you have an application that's been tabled, so?
Yes. But I just wanted to put it into some context, but, so, let's see what my other comment was. This has been a discussion, as you know, that's been going on for quite a long time about the septics and conditions, and of course, the bay and all that. So I would, and I don't know the gamut of studies that have been done and the proposals that have been brought up, but I would just encourage the community and the commission to continue that because this issue isn't going away.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Gail Riegelmeier, St. George Island. I want to thank this Board for two things to start off with. Number one, thank you for having this public hearing. It's just been so important to hear from the public, to support what this Board has been doing as a property owner for twenty-three years, over twenty-three years. I have seen this Board, over the years, protect and preserve our natural resources, and that's why Franklin County is unique, and I know you have it in your hearts to want to continue down that same path. I've sent you an email on the comments that I'm going to say, but I wanted to read my comments so that they are in the record for this public hearing. I also had sent attendant documents of studies done on St. George Island and other communities relative to how septic systems affected them, and so, and that information, by the way, I like to give credit where credit is due, by Tom Dolan. He's a homeowner on St. George Island and a biologist. So here's my letter that was sent to you. I implore you to either not change the current ordinance related to the septic system setbacks, or if a change is made, that the setbacks be made more stringent. In my email, I attached scientific information about the effects of septic systems on St. George Island, in addition to general information about septic systems on the environment and other areas. One of the documents was a study on St. George Island that was done in two thousand and one, and already at that time, there were negative impacts from septic systems. That was twenty-two years ago. So with the added development since then, I have no doubt that if a study were done today, the results would be even worse than two thousand and one. I was at the Board of Adjustments and P&amp;Z meeting where this property owner asked for the variance, and I won't go into all of that since it's already been said. But the bottom line is, this was a problem that was erroneous information given to the property owner. It wasn't of the making of this Board, and so it's not the Board's responsibility to have it fixed. Also on St. George Island, as was said earlier, many rental homeowners are violating their septic system's capacity by packing more beds into bedrooms to further line their pockets and get a greater return on their investment. Some rental management companies are actually encouraging this. More and more mega homes are being built on the order of small hotels. The stress on our environment due to failing septic systems from the extreme occupancy levels has got to stop. And Commissioner Jones, I can't tell you, my heart went pitter-patter when I heard you say, when the Health Department made their presentation, that you would like to see the county, because I have been fighting this battle for a while now, as you know, and it's between the county and the Health Department. So if the county and the Health Department, and I'm happy to volunteer my time to work with you all on this, but thank you for your comment earlier. The proposed ordinance for Franklin County to follow the state setbacks, I suggest that the state needs to follow Franklin County setbacks. Florida's setbacks are obviously not working. Governor DeSantis is now budgeting three and a half billion dollars for Everglades cleanup and restoration, and there's a press release I sent you about that. So again, I guess needless to say, I believe that it is this Board, you have the ability and you have the responsibility to effectively manage all of this development. We can't fight the development and the growth of Franklin County, but this Board can manage that growth and not let everybody do whatever they want at the expense of our natural resource and our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Please proceed. So since nobody knows who you are, please make sure you state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Got to lighten the room up somehow, Dan.
That's right. That's right. Dan Garlick, I am a Franklin County resident. I want to say that way back when there were dragons, I guess you'd say, in Franklin County, I was working on this ordinance. It was passed in nineteen eighty-nine. It was with Mike's father. It was with, actually, after a triple-bipless drink with Ralph Kendry.
Yep.
And others. So it was very interesting during that time, there were, I'd say, almost unanimous from the commission and anybody I talked to, that this was a rule that had to be put into effect. At that point, there was all about oysters, but then when people started realizing how many areas there were of shellfish harvesting areas in Franklin County, it was almost the entire tidal area, and I have sent a note to y'all on that effect. The, over the years, I've never had to get a wastewater system variance, and it's because there's always some way of making that work, or I've told my clients, which I've been working with over thirty years or whatever it is anymore, don't buy land. And there's going to be those positions sooner or later, that's going to come up, and it should be handled at that point as it should. I mean, I never tell people, "You can't build your land." A judge can only do that. And at that point, there may be issues with adverse condemnation, other things that are out of my wheelhouse. You talk to legal people about that. But basically, you need to understand, I think, and I think you already do, is that this torch has been passed down from nineteen eighty-nine to here, so it's your job now to take care of it in that regard. And I can tell you, whether you believe in climate change or not, the water's rising. When the water rises, we have storms, we have erosion. You take it from a shoreline, that land's not going to be any fifty feet anymore. It's going to be substantially less than that. But I've also found that, you know, there's a lot of flexibility with rules and regulations. I've been looking at them over the years, and there are some ways that you can do alternatives, you can use alternatives for just using wastewater system and not protecting that setback. There are some areas that, not all wetlands are created equal. Some areas, there are marginal wetlands. DEP will issue it to keep that buffer. That buffer sometimes is more important than that marginal wetland. There's also these advanced wastewater treatment systems that are available. There are even more, as we talked before, performance-based systems. They're there. You can use them. And it just comes down to it, though, is that there may be one of those things that are one of those times that you just can't grant a variance because there's no land there or whatever, but this ordinance change is going to affect the entire Franklin County, not just areas on St. George Island. So that's all I got to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Is anybody attending by Zoom, sir?
Let me stop sharing here. Apologize for that, Commissioner. Any attendees would like to speak? I'm sorry, those attending by Zoom, virtually? No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Turn to the left.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the public comments section of the public hearing. At this time, it's appropriate for the Board to deliberate amongst yourselves, and you are in a procedural position to make a decision. After that discussion, if there is no discussion, then you're still in a position to make a motion.
Okay. So anyone have any questions?
No, I just have a comment.
Yes.
I'm going to vote no. I'm going to make a motion, vote no. I want to keep it the same, but I do want to make a comment. And it's more of a disclaimer to anybody that potentially wants to purchase property in our county. They get this lot or this piece of property and X amount of dollars, and they want to purchase that lot. I would say do your due diligence so that we're not into this predicament again, or something along those lines, because, and not against realtors, but call our P&amp;Z office. That's what their job is. They'll tell you what percentage is wetlands, what's this, what's that. Reach out to some individual that knows about the piece of property, such as Mr. Garlick and what his business does, to ascertain if it's worth you purchasing and spending that money on that property so that you're not having to come before the Board and ask for a variance, you're not having to come before the Board and ask for, you know, whatever you need. Again, I know that we do live in an area where eventually, after so many storms, we are going to have erosion, and I get that, but again, I just say buyer beware, but I'm going to make a comment. and, but I'm going to make a motion to keep the ordinance 89-8 the same.
Okay, so the motion would be to deny the proposed amendment to the ordinance?
Yes, I want to keep it the same as what it is.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Amos. Any more discussion, commissioners?
Yeah, I want to say one thing. You know, these ordinance, we have, we have them in place for purpose. Land and zone, all the, all the adjustment, all these are the purpose. And when it boil down to it, they want to make us look like the bad guy. For some need to be took off the book completely. If you've got a wetland lot, don't let them realtors get out there and sell it. Take it off the book. That's the best thing to do. And there to be, we wouldn't have these problems. Take, take them things off the book, so they, everybody looking for a deal. But usually, when you get a deal, you getting a little worse coming with it. I don't want to say what it is, but, you know, let's get rid of them. Just take it off. This land is not buildable. And get it on the wood.
Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, Chris.
Um, when we first, when this all first came about, um, as y'all know, I'm the, the bay guy. But, you know, in, I've reached out to Department of Agriculture, got some water quality samples, or would like areas, dense-wise, density-wise, not, uh, went comparing Crestview or any of that, I was comparing apples to apples, so to speak, because our biggest enemy with the bay, in my opinion, and a lot of others, is going to be density. Uh, fecal colic, not so much. And I'm not going to, I mean, before anybody, you know, comes up here with a pitchfork, I'm just, just bear with me a moment, and I'll explain why. The bay, traditionally, and I know a lot of y'all may not understand this, but our bay don't close in Apalachicola Bay, in the past. Our bay closed where? Bluntstown. That was our safe buffers on. Uh, Dan, I think he's already left, but he can probably vouch for this, but, and, and I learned this, you know, 14, 15 years ago, but the bay closed in Bluntstown. What was coming down that river that was tested at Bluntstown was what closed the bay. And that was runoff pollution, chemicals, it wouldn't always fecal colic. People have this impression that fecal colic is what condemns our bay, it's not, you know? Um, so going into this, I was trying to do this with as open a mind as possible, so I reached out, DAX, whatnot. Now, back up just a second, when we opened, we tested here, okay? Uh, but going, I, I reached out, got some water quality, uh, comparisons, and they don't have any, you know, now this is dense, this is all density areas, we're, like I said, apples to apples. There wasn't any water quality issues. Yeah? So I'm sitting there thinking, well, we can simplify this, we can adapt the states, you know, whatnot. So then I reached out to some other people. And so I, I went to the one group of people I figured would be like, yeah, let's change it. I went to the realtors, because, you know, I figured they wanted to make a buck. Surprisingly, and believe it or not, everyone, I was like, no, don't, don't do that. And so I got introduced to a scientific study called Google Earth. And, uh, so I have one particular person that showed me some homes on the plantation that was built 40 years ago, 30 years ago, and then, uh, she showed me today. And I believe Mr. Garlick's the only one that touched on this, was sea level is rising. The comparison I seen from those wetlands, now granted, back then, you know, the wetlands was here, and now, 40 years later, the wetlands is at the back door of those homes. So we do have sea level rising. Um, I'm not going to get into discussion about what's doing it, or any of that, I drive a diesel. But, uh, but I'm going to tell you this, it's a fact that it is rising. So if we pass something now, what's going to happen 30 years from now when that septic tank's sitting there in grass? And that's been, that was kind of where I was, I was like, well, we definitely got to, you know, get this out there and let people understand this. And I'm definitely a no, if you hadn't picked up on that yet, but, um, just, just sharing that, um, especially the part with the bay. I know people want to run out there and start talking about the fish and oysters and all that, and I appreciate it, because I'm an advocate, just like everybody else, about getting this working waterfront going again. But in the future, our biggest enemy is going to be density. And, uh, so keep that in mind, because we might all be back in here before you know it. Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners, before we vote?
How about me?
Yes, ma'am.
I want, I'm just going to sit here and just listen to everybody. This is the reason why I came back on this board, this right here, is to make sure that we still lead the way we're supposed to lead. You know, it's just like Mr. Noah Lockley said just what, just a few minutes ago. We need to tell them, let them know that everything ain't buildable in Franklin County, and that's right. You know, we have to understand, and the people coming in here is, you know, you want to buy a piece of land, that's fine, but some of the land in Franklin County is not buildable. And we need to understand that and maintain that, because that is that land that helps filter our bay out there. All, if you want a reason to keep this ordinance in effect, all you've got to do is run the coastline all the way through Franklin County and look to the south, because you can honestly see water there. If we allow everything to be built up, don't have no ordinances, don't have no restrictions, we're going to be just like Bay County everywhere else. You're not even going to be able to see the water. You know, one of the most disappointing things that I ever saw in my life was to go to Daytona Beach, and about 10 later, 10 years later, I went down there, couldn't even see the water down there, around the Hilton down there, on the oceanfront drive. But I have been handed a torch. I was handed a torch 25, almost 25 years ago, to start out. God blessed me, gave me four years off to be with my husband. Now I'm coming back, and one of the things is, I'm on a mission. I have a vision for Franklin County, and this is one of my visions. And I completely support the chairman and the rest of the board on this.
Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend you take another five-minute break. A lot of room to clear from the one, this one public hearing.
Okay. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going to go to our next scheduled public hearing, which is Serenity Seaside Resort PUD Amendment. Attorney Sheldon?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Mr. Carrington is presenting this morning's public hearing on this matter, as he's been the staff member most qualified to work with the developer on this issue.
All right, please proceed, sir.
Okay, this is a proposal by the developers to amend the ordinance 2019-06, which established the Serenity Seaside PUD. Basically, what they've asked for is no change in what is going on inside the development. There will still be a hundred-unit hotel and forty-four residential units. They've asked for some rearranging of how it's done inside the development, which I don't think is a big change. The main change is relocating the, one of the entrances from Island Drive to South Bayshore Drive is, in my opinion, the main change. And I believe the developers are here to make a presentation.
Okay, all right. But before we proceed there, I did want to ask Mr. Carrington, in some of the other revisions, from what I've seen, it seems like there's actually more public space, more green space, more, more property set aside for drainage, and some of the water quality issues we've been talking about this morning, correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, basically, what, before, the hotel had like a, I think it was forty-unit hotel, and then sixty units arranged around the lake. Basically, they are proposing to consolidate all of those units into one building and then spread out the residential, before it was located all in the northwestern corner, to take some of those units and put them around the lake.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carrington before we proceed? Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Craig Dermody. I'm representing Serenity Seaside Resort on, in East Point, Florida. I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to present in a public hearing. Request for an amendment, which is what it is, the amendment. We've already been approved for the development. So, in the amendment, we, the way this started, and I, and hopefully, I can, I'll be able to address some of the misrepresentations that have been called on, and some misconceptions, and I'm here to answer some other questions that you may have. But when we went forward with the development, we went in front of the Flor, Flor Department of Transportation, and they denied us access to the original entrance that was on Island Drive. And this quick PowerPoint will go through those reasons. And again, this was not our decision. I know it's going around. I've, I've had phone calls that we're just making this up to move it. It was not our decision to do this. We liked Island Drive address. We liked Island Drive entrance, but we can't have that. And the reason for that was basically for safety issues. So, the issues that Flor Department of Transportation came up with was, one, we're in too close of a proximity to the crosswalk. That's, that's, and I literally drove by there this morning, and it is pretty close. And honestly, I guess in the last since it was put in, I hadn't even noticed it. But that was a big issue that they had. The other issue that they had, there's a Y intersection on Island Drive that connects to South Bayshore Drive. We are in too close proximity to that Y intersection. You have to be, according to FDOT, you have to be at least four hundred and forty feet away from that. We're not. The third thing was, well, there's actually several, but these are the big ones. We're also in too close a proximity to the adjacent neighbors to the north of us. Again, you have to have four hundred and forty-foot spacing for the adjacent driveways to the north that are commercial. So, given those concerns, we, FDOT on the call, and they went on Google Earth, and they came, I believe they came down here personally, but they recognized that we have the right to have access to our property. It's got to be reasonable and safe and in compliance. So, what they suggested is that we move it a few hundred yards away around the corner on the South Bayshore Drive. And that's what we looked at it, we studied it, we spent a lot of time on it, and we came up with, I think, something that is feasible for us and for the community, and I'll go through it with you. So, this is a letter from FDOT, so people can know we didn't make this up. What it suggests is that we use South Bayshore Drive and Begonia as the two ingress, ingresses that we have to have regulatory-wise. So, I've been hearing a lot of things about, and I'll, I'll address these issues that, that came up, I guess, in the last time we were in front of this, this commit, this commission. And one is South Bayshore Drive, these are the facts, it's County Road 65. It's posted thirty-five miles an hour. It's not a neighborhood that's posted twenty miles an hour. The, for us to try to deny access to that for anybody, we can't do it. We don't have the authority to do it. I don't even know if legally we could, if anybody can do that. The largest impact down South Bayshore Drive is St. George Island. If, these links that you'll see next, leaving this courthouse to any address on St. George Island will bring you down South Bayshore Drive. That's where it's going to bring you. On ways from this courthouse to any address on, on St. George Island, it's going to bring you down, it's going to direct you down South Bayshore Drive. So, the issues with South Bayshore Drive traffic is more dependent on St. George Island than our development. That's, that's a fact. So, South Bayshore Drive, when we started looking into it, its existing zoning is commercial to R1 and R2. And I think the county attorney can tell you, according to state, it says, "One zoning designation does not have precedence over another." There already exists a precedence with commercial access on South Bayshore Drive today. There's two accesses on the north side of South Bayshore Drive that connect, I'm, yes, that connect onto South Bayshore Drive. I believe it's, one has a, has a crosswalk and a stop sign, the other one, I don't believe it does. But we have pictures of that as well. The safety concerns also, just so you know, speaking of crosswalks, there's not one crosswalk that goes from the south side, the water side, to the north side. There is none. There's no sidewalk either, but there's no crosswalks. So, these are the maps. If you plug in, you can do it on your phone now, any address on St. George Island, whether Google or Waze, it's going to bring you down South Bayshore Drive. This is the zoning of, what this is, is County Road 65 from 98 to State 300, which is Island Drive. So, that, County Road 65, again, is South Bayshore Drive. Again, it's thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, which ironically is the same speed limit as Highway 98 in East Point. So, then I was hearing about, we're a scenic byway. And you are. So, the road and highway presented must meet two criterias, two intrinsic criterias to be a scenic byway. It has to have historical, cultural, archaeological, or recreational characteristics of it. Interesting about this one, too, one of the characteristics in the intrinsic value, it has to be a destination in and to itself, meaning travelers will be, will be accepted to go there for a primary reason of their trip, to go down a scenic byway. So, being in a scenic byway ironically is not mitigating traffic, it's encouraging traffic. There is no, I think it's the next one here that's highlighted. "Being a scenic driveway," and this is in the, in the documents, "does not deter, but encourages tourists thereby increasing traffic due to their designation. The corridor limits of being a Big Ben scenic byway does not change public right-of-way or create any inherent land use protections, nor limit in any way private property rights within the limits of the corridor." It's a nice designation, but it really doesn't have any effects legally. So, I propose entrance. So, the new entrance is a short distance around the corner from the originally approved entrance. Across the street from us is, oh, by the way, we're on all city water and sewer, or something. But across the street from us is government-protected wetlands. There's never going to be anything built across from us. So, we're talking about, what's the best place to put it that has less of an impact on our neighbors? This is actually the best place to put it. Our closest neighbor is five hundred feet from the proposed, from the new proposed entrance. This entrance is also over five hundred feet from the Y intersection. And that's important because FDOT has a minimum of four hundred and forty feet. So, we're in excess of that. And we're also as far east as we can be on our property line. So, it's virtually in the middle of our thirteen hundred feet of frontage on South Bayshore Drive. So, this proposed entrance is in compliance with, with FDOT and is, and in compliance with the distance to the crosswalks and any intersection that's adjacent to the property. This is a picture where it would be. It's virtually in the middle between the Y intersection and the far western side of our property line. The other thing we're going to do, in the original, well, this, that's, but in the original PUD, we had, I'm going to go back, on that far-left western corner, we had an access road for emergencies. We're going to eliminate that, we won't need that. So, we're actually further away from our closest neighbor to the west. Again, we, we did all this with our neighbors in mind to be good neighbors. So, this is the reason why FDOT didn't like it. You can see we're too close to the Y intersection, we're too close to the crosswalk, and we're too close to our neighbors to the north. In the new proposed entrance, we are, I think it's five hundred and forty feet from the Y intersection. That was a hundred feet beyond their minimums. And we're over five hundred feet to our closest neighbor. So, we thought about that. We just picked this out of the blue. We actually thought about this very diligently and spent a lot of time on it. So, the thing with, with FDOT and with us is safety is paramount. So, what we're going to have in our, in our entrance, bless you, we're going to have a crosswalk in compliance crossing the entrance and exit. We're going to have a stop sign when you exit the development on the South Begon, on the South Bayshore. It should have been South Bayshore. There's some developments now on South Bayshore that don't have a stop sign, and they should, when they're leaving their, their development. We're going, we're going to have lighting that's in compliance with FDOT, and they're, they're giving us some of these, these guidelines. So, again, this proposal that we're putting in is in compliance. These are some of the streets and crosswalks that are there now. The one with the stop sign and the one with, that is an existing commercial exit on South Bayshore. So, again, there's precedence, precedence to have exits commercial on the South Bayshore Drive. So, the traffic flow, we're going to, the other thing we're going to do, which is, I think, going to be pleasing to the homeowners of South Bayshore Drive, we're going to have a nice landscape, beautiful entrance. It'll be an asset to South Bayshore Drive. As I said, we're going to agree to eliminate the emergency road that's on the left, on the western corner. The other thing we're going to do to keep traffic down and mitigate some of the issues that are there, we're going to restrict the construction to Begonia Street. So, there will be no construction trucks going up and down South Bayshore Drive. It'll be on Begonia Street. The other thing we're going to do is, once it's up and running, we're going to restrict all service vehicles to Begonia. So, Begonia will be the service at, you know, viability access to the property, not the main entrance. And somebody asked me, well, hi, we don't have a guarantee for that. I said, well, it's pretty simple. If you had a house, had a beautiful front yard, front entrance, and you just be lucky enough to have a back or side entrance, and you're putting in a addition to your home, where are you going to have the contractors go? We're going to go in the back. We want them to go in the back. We wouldn't want to have our patrons have to deal with construction trucks going in and out the main entrance. And then lastly, and I think this is very important, if we maintain our Island Drive address, and then through signage, we can direct them around the corner, which is really all we're doing, then you go in the ways or Google, it'll direct you down 98 to Island Drive. I'm not saying it's going to eliminate the traffic, but it should mitigate a lot of the traffic concerns from our property going down South Bayshore Drive by doing that. So, it was also brought up, and I'm just addressing these things that you might hear later, why don't we just use Begonia as a main entrance? Begonia is not fit, it's not a viable alternative for that as a main entrance. It's, honestly, it's inappropriate and unacceptable as a main entrance. We only have twenty-seven feet, let's call it less than thirty feet on Begonia for that. Our biggest touch point to a public road is South Bayshore Drive. We have thirteen hundred feet on, we are by far and away the largest landowner on South Bayshore Drive. And all we're asking for is access to that property. And again, it is a thirty-five mile an hour commercial road now. So, if we use our Island Drive address, this is what the traffic flow would look like. It would take you down 98 down Island Drive, and then where the X is from the original entrance, through signage there, we'll just direct them about a hundred yards around the corner. Oh, the other part about the hotel, this is the interior portion. So, we've met with the tourist department, we've met with the Chamber of Commerce, we've met with hotel management companies, and we actually talked to tourists in the area that were visiting. And it seems to be that everybody was behind the idea of making it one building, one, one-hundred-room hotel building. So, we just didn't come up with this, just as an aside, it was something that was well thought out. It does provide more green space. It's, the other thing that it does, according to the chamber, when we first came up with this concept, there's a need, we're being told in this community, for a hotel that can actually host events and functions and conferences that we're turning down now, because there is no venue that can handle that. So, that's one of the reasons why we designed it the way we did, and we changed an internal portion this way. And on the first, first time we came here, when we got the original approval, that's some residents on Begonia said, why don't we just do one building instead of having all these other ones? So, actually, that's one thing that we are doing. Then lastly, this commission spent a lot of time and effort obtaining opportunity zone designation. Opportunity zone designation is to encourage development and investment in this area, because it's needed. And what we're going to do, we're going to provide employment, the management company says, between sixty and eighty people. A lot of that's going to be younger people. I've had parents come up and say, this is great, maybe I have an opportunity for my child to stay here instead of having to leave to go find opportunity. We can introduce him to a new career in the hospitality business, which is one of the largest industries in the state of Florida. I think last year was fifty-five billion dollars. So, we're trying to address the needs of the community and be good neighbors all at the same time. We will be one of the biggest taxpayers from the bed tax. And when we were here last meeting, I remember Williams Memorial Hospital was talking about the need for development, need for activity, more people coming in. This is going to be beneficial for the community as a whole, not just East Point, and certainly not just this particular area. It's going to impact the entire community, I think, in a positive way. That, that's it.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Dermody? Sir, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Public comment, Mr. Chairman, the board?
This time we'll call for public comment. Please go forward, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Mr. Moore?
Yes, my name is Rex Pinnikoff. And today, I'm not speaking for the East Points Civic Association, but I will mention a couple of things that the East Points Civic Association has been doing. This project was not brought to us, so I don't think our association's ready to weigh in one way or the other. I think there's people in the association that is for and against. But with that said, I think the major change that's going on is probably the entrance. As far as the footprint, I like the idea of one building. I think it's better I think it's better for the environment. And let's face it, all the way back to when Joseph was managing the world for Pharaoh, he was moving people to town and consolidating people. So it sort of just makes sense that we're on that same path. But now to get to the entrance, I've seen the letter. I think the big decision for y'all is whatever y'all come up with, with FDOT. With the slide slow, slideshow that was presented in slide 6 and 7, it's mentioned that the scenic byway, I think the scenic byway should not be a merit for either decision. I realize that a scenic byway is to channel people through the road. However, if you pull up even the Big Ben scenic byway or the FDOT, there are several different paths that the scenic byway takes. I think the original one actually is 98 to State Road 300. And I have a map here that shows that. I also have a description that tells you how to get to the island and then off. And, um, South Bay Shore is mentioned as a spur. So I don't think that there's continuity with the scenic byway to give merit to either way. So now to mention the one thing that I do ask that y'all to consider, which is with this proposal, but also outside of this proposal. One of the things the East Point Civic Association is currently working to try to get is to get the traffic pattern to travel through East Point on 98 to Island Drive and out. So with that said, it just makes sense that that's where the business corridor is. If the lighting situation and the turn lane was addressed at Island Drive and 98, it would be beneficial. It also would produce a product that the traffic flow would go by our businesses. The scenic byway doesn't give merit to any business, pull it up. It doesn't mention any local business in East Point or any local site other than the one state, the, in their building. So with that, I don't think that that is a proper proposal either way, for or against. I think that the biggest concern is mentioned in one of theirs is ways in Google. And if there's a way that the county could help address that, I think it would be probably the most beneficial. I don't know if there's a legal stance we could take or a designation that we could take. But if the county could get up with Google and ways and request that that traffic pattern be changed so that they do go to Island Drive and out, I think that would be the most beneficial process that the county could do. I also think it would guarantee that the most traffic would go that way. So if you pass it and accept it, one thing that I do think that you should do, with time as an essence, is to make sure, require if possible, or definitely encourage that they keep the Island Drive address, to channel as much traffic down that road as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Laverne Holman and I live on South Bay Shore Drive. Congratulations to the three new Commissioners. I regret that you were not here five and four years ago to hear us time and time again try to defend our neighborhood. And here we are again doing the same. Four years ago, the developer of Seaside Resort was granted a PUD after a road on the site plan had been removed connecting the resort to South Bay Shore. We were assured that there would not be any connection and even told right here where I stand that there were, would be 100 feet buffer landscaping, trees, and that you would not even be able to see the buildings from South Bay Shore. That has all changed now due to a conflict with Florida DOT. The homework should have been done before the developer came before the commissions to seek a PUD. Now they want to go back on their word and seek an amendment to place the entrance on Bay Shore Drive. This is wrong, outrageous, and unacceptable. It is time the property owners on South Bay Shore be given consideration. I will tell you that everyone I have spoken with about this proposal is opposed because everyone in the area already knows what a problematic road it is. It does not need more problem issues with this entrance to a commercial resort in a residential neighborhood. There has not even been a traffic study done. How can this amendment be put to a vote without a study? Let's talk about South Bay Shore Drive. It originated as a way to advance to St. George Island. It has no through truck signs at each end of the drive to be obeyed. We wished for a sidewalk for years and it is there now thanks to the county. However, it will be destroyed with an entrance to the resort. There will be more county road maintenance required, a lot more. Last month, the county filled in each side with soil because of the ditches caused by large motorhomes and trucks going off the road. This is not a commercial road, but a narrow county road to St. George Island. And it is part of the Florida scenic byway. This is not an official evacuation route either in case of a hurricane. Island Drive is. This road has become a racetrack even though the sheriff has tried to control the speed limit. It cannot absorb the additional traffic to and from this resort. It has been stated by the developer that Begonia will be for construction trucks and that is impossible to control. As no through truck signs are ignored now on South Bay Shore, any truck coming from the west turns right on South Bay Shore going to the island. It is quicker rather than going to Island Drive. The same will hold true if a resort entrance is on Bay Shore. Just why would you want to place an entrance to a large resort on a narrow county road in a residential neighborhood anyway? It would be cheaper and easier for the developer. It would be a disaster for all, even those visiting the resort and those traveling to and from St. George Island. It is not the place for it, so the developer needs to look elsewhere. There are other options to be explored. I have presented one to Commissioner Jones and Mr. Currenton. Has everyone forgotten that this is a historic neighborhood and it is not meant to be a railroad to a seaside resort? John Lennon wrote a song titled "Imagine." Let's just imagine all of the people that we're talking about here.
So you're almost done?
Yes.
Okay, you're already at five minutes.
All right, there will be 100-room hotel that equals 200 occupants. There will be 44 residential buildings that equal 88 occupants at a minimum and probably more. There will be employees. There will be restaurant occupants. There will be spa occupants. There will be delivery trucks and many more unknowns. Imagine that you could be looking at up to 400 entering and leaving the resort a day. Imagine all the construction trucks and delivery trucks for up to three years to build this resort. Imagine if this resort was in your neighborhood, bordering on your street and now the very, very last straw, attempting after four years to place the entrance of at least 24 feet wide on your street. Imagine the noise, increased traffic, illegal trucks, and just plain chaos. Just imagine. Please vote no to place this entrance on South Bay Shore Drive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Pete Whitesill, Appalachia Cola. One of the arguments for this development is that it will bring jobs to Franklin County. When it comes to developers, jobs are like workforce housing. There are lots of promises but no good results, really just a mirage. Denton Cove was workforce housing, now it's not. Palmer Point was workforce housing, now it's not. There are other examples too, still no workforce housing. The good jobs at this development will be just like workforce housing. A lot of promises but no good results. Let's look at some of them. There are carpenters, plumbers, electricians. These are all good jobs. Some even come with benefits. But for this project, those jobs for Franklin County workers will be short-lived if they come to pass at all. The developer may just bring in their own crews from their own county. Even if they did hire Franklin County workers for these trades, the jobs are only going to last for a year or two. Then they are gone. You can't make a career out of that. The jobs that will require long multi-year commitment are the house cleaning jobs at the hotel. These jobs will go to Franklin County residents for sure. They pay $7 an hour with no benefits at all. No healthcare benefits, no retirement benefits. Is that a good deal for workers of Franklin County? I say no, it's not. It's going to take hard work on the part of the county to attract employers that pay good wages with good benefits. It's never going to be as easy or as cheap or as fast as just approving a planned unit development. The results are going to be too much traffic, destroyed local neighborhoods, higher crime, and additional damaging stress on our already damaged bay and its ability to produce oyster shrimp and fish. After carefully looking at the truth of the jobs argu, the jobs argument is a mirage, just like workforce housing. Do not approve this change request. Just say no. Put a stop to this fantasy. There is a better way. Other counties, cities, and states do it every day and you can too.
Thank you. Next.
Morning Commissioners. Well, actually, good afternoon. My name is Tony Partington. My wife Christie and I live at 34 South Bay Shore Drive in East Point. South Bay Shore Drive is for both residents and visitors, many things. It's the quick way to St. George Island from Appalachia. It's also very unfortunately becoming a dangerous road for pedestrians, bikers, and even vehicles because of the excessive speeding you've already heard about. South Bay Shore Drive is other things though. It's our road when giving directions to loved ones or friends coming to visit for the first time. It's home when you're returning home from a long trip. It's also a collective road. It's a road that connects every homeowner to one another as human beings. Each one of you probably live on such a road. South Bay Shore Drive though, that's why we're here. So to the issue. I understand from my county commissioner that the Florida Department of Transportation has said the main entrance to Serenity Seaside Resort should be located on South Bay Shore Drive and not on Island Drive. I would respectfully ask that the official FDOT study and determination be made public. Please be included in the minutes of this meeting as it pertains to this issue at hand. Incidentally, I did some investigating. The FDOT has on their website a template and guideline for addressing this very sort of issue. Logical beneficial steps including traffic studies, infrastructure studies, environmental studies, feasibility studies, et cetera. I may be mistaken, but to my knowledge, as of this date, none of these steps have been officially undertaken, completed, and the results published and made available for public review. Finally, Commissioners, a great deal has been said today about your responsibilities and passing the torches. And interestingly, Commissioner Amison said just a few minutes ago that the greatest threat to Franklin County is density. So I would kindly ask you please, as our elected officials, as our neighbors, as our fellow county residents and as your constituents, to strive to do the right, the ethical, the moral, the honest, the fair, the equitable, the legal, and the human thing in your consideration of this issue.
Next.
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Diane Brewer. I'm a 10-year resident of Appalachia Cola and a 25-year property owner there. Most of you were, of Commissioners, were not on this board, were not in place when this PUD was approved. And for those in the public, and perhaps you may not know, that PUD stands for Planned Unit Development, which means that within its own boundaries, the property owners subsequently do not have to seek approval for anything they want to do. So the approval of the PUD may not have happened had you been on elected officials at the time this was originally presented in 2019. The original, the developer made concessions in the original application which called for 100-unit hotel, home sites, recreational facilities, amenities, and a big tower. And the entrance was on South Bay Shore Drive. At that time, 95 people wrote or appeared and spoke against the development. And concessions were made to gain PUD approval, which was granted. Now, regardless of why it came about, I am thrilled to have another opportunity presented to do something better. The original entrance was supposed to be on South Bay Shore Drive, to which there were many objections. The fact that the DOT has come back later and said, you can't put it on Island Drive either, gives us, gives you another opportunity to revisit this whole project. Perhaps it should now not be approved. It has originally been approved, so now you, the torch has been passed to you. The previous, you have heard in the previous issue on the public hearing today how many people are passionate about our wetlands, our environment, our natural resources. A PUD may make a permanent and irrevocable detrimental change to what we all revere about Franklin County. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Brett Jones and I am blessed and proud and honored to be an owner of a home on South Bay Shore Drive. I came to this area because I live in the remote mountains of North Georgia, also a very small town. And I like to say that this area is my elegy on the water. So I came here for the specific purpose of having the smallness and having the remoteness. And as Commissioner Sanders said earlier, that is what we hope to preserve. And not every piece of property here is buildable even for a residential home. Not every piece of property is buildable for a resort. That has already been decided, so here today I want to stay focused on the issue of relocating the entryway to our residential street. You can call it whatever you want to call it. You can say whatever you want to say about what the zoning is and what the speed limit is. But it is a residential street where our homes are located. Our children may not be safe with the, with the added increase in volume of the traffic that this will inevitably result in. Our animals may not be safe. People will speed. People will violate the signs that are there. And there is no guarantee that the construction vehicles will not go through our residential street and our neighborhood. They do have another option. They do have access off of Begonia. But as the developer himself said, that's not, they don't think that to be the best access. According to who? All of the things were said about what he's considered and what he's thinking and what he's doing for the benefit of us homeowners? Well, guess what? I've never yet received a phone call from you.
Ma'am, ma'am, please, you're talking to the board. Thank you.
I'm sorry. So again, take our considerations when we stand before you today as the homeowners, as the residents because none of this is in our benefit, no matter how aesthetically he's going to make the entryway. It is more dangerous. I keep hearing talk about how the FDOT has now made this recommendation, how they approve, how this is what the FDOT is saying and supporting. Again, none of us have been provided with any communication from the FDOT other than denying access from Island Drive. So I too would implore you all to produce that information, if it in fact exists, and not it just be hearsay from the developer for us to rely on this possibility that the FDOT has approved this. The original entryway was denied on Island Drive because of safety issues. Safety to the proximity of the Y. And in the developer's own words, they're moving it just around the corner, still at very close proximity to this Y, which is already a dangerous intersection. While it may be an additional 60 feet from the originally proposed entryway, that's 60 feet. That's not going to reduce or impair the safety issues that the FDOT originally had concerns about. concerns about when they said, "No, thank you" on Island Drive. Begonia Street is not a residential area. It's not as accessed as frequently or as much as South Bay Shore Drive. And in my opinion, there is no reason that that could not be, other than possibly it's not as aesthetically appealing as our beautiful South Bay Shore Drive. So I ask that you please consider the dangerous safety issues that this will pose to put this entryway on our residential street. One thing I did find in my research was a possible compromise. They had suggested if you do allow this entryway on South Bay Shore, their alleged compromise would be to only allow it as an entryway to their resort, not also an exit onto our drive to increase the traffic. While yes, it still would be coming down our street and allowing all this additional access into the resort, it would, in my opinion, help reduce the safety issues of also having the traffic come out onto our street and hopefully potentially reduce the amount of traffic on our street. So if you are inclined to approve this, which, again, please listen to our voices. Please listen to the people from Franklin County and hear our fears and our concerns about the safety of our residents. But again, if you are inclined to approve it, please at least put that restriction on it to help promote our safety.
Ms. Jones, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If I may. Are you a resident of Franklin County?
Not a full-time resident. I would hope to likely be able to be once I'm able to retire. That is my goal.
I just, you were making the plea for the resident, that's all the reason I ask. Thank you. Next.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Gleisman. I'm a homeowner and resident of the La Spreces subdivision on South Bay Shore Drive. I rise in opposition to the purported change to put the entryway on South Bay Shore Drive. In my capacity as a longtime manager of resort properties, I've had benefit of observing the behavioral patterns of the public, particularly when they're not familiar with the area and they're looking around for the driveways that they're looking for, whether it's a rental home or a commercial establishment. I don't care what Google and Waze says, the person's going to be looking for South Bay Shore Drive. So inherently, a large majority of the drivers are going to go right past Island Drive. They're going to see the intersection of US 98 and South Bay Shore Drive, and a large majority of the traffic, I can guarantee you, is going to dump down South Bay Shore Drive from the far end on West Highway 98. So it is going to dramatically increase the traffic there. If this proposal is adopted, I strongly encourage a reduction in the speed limit on South Bay Shore Drive to 25 miles per hour with increased enforcement. It is going to be a large challenge for this community. I recognize the potential benefits of the development as proposed, but I think not enough work has been done by the applicants to pursue an Island Drive frontage entryway for ingress and egress. Begonia Drive and Island Drive are clearly the commercial corridors which should accommodate such a development. And there are vacant parcels of land adjoining this parcel that perhaps should be investigated. Also this morning, in prior public hearings, I've heard about variances. Surely, the Florida Department of Transportation also has the ability to grant variances when justification is pursued. There are crosswalks at driveway intersections all over the place. I walk around many of them. So, I'm not buying the line that the crosswalk is the be-all and end-all to cause them to make this proposal. I think it's more a matter of convenience, and I would encourage that the board set aside any decision on this until further evidence is presented that all other avenues are exhausted on your main corridors, which in this case, the primary point of ingress and egress is logically Island Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other? Please proceed. State your name for the record.
My name is Cliff Butler. I became a Franklin County resident in 1977 when I moved to North Bay Shore Drive. When I moved to North Bay Shore Drive, it was a short road, which since then has been doubled in length with the addition of the Magnolia Bluff Extension. There has been Magnolia Ridge, a subdivision added which has residential roads. Magnolia Bay has been added. During that time, I've not seen any problem from additional traffic. I believe the traffic that causes the problem on South Bay Shore is the St. George Island traffic going through there. I see no reason to turn down this amendment to the PUD because some of the residents do not want additional traffic on their road. None of us do, but that's a fact of life. I don't know why we're spending and raising and taxing the rental property owners millions of dollars to bring more people here and then come here and turn down this plan because you don't want any more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sherry Jones. I'm a resident, full-time resident. I live in La Spreces. I'll give you a little historical background. We started, like many people, we are mobillions, and we kept coming down the coastline trying to find what our beaches used to be. And we found you. Fell in love, vacationed here a couple of weeks a year on the island, renting from the same person over and over again, and enjoying our time here. And when we retired, we knew where we were going, here. And we became residents of East Point, and we love our little community. The one thing I'm going to say is, I'm going to reiterate something that Commissioner Ward said earlier. Let the buyer beware. If I had known this was approved, I would never have purchased my home in La Spreces. We purchased the very first lot in La Spreces, the very first home. So we hear the traffic when we're on our back porch, when we're enjoying our yard. The traffic is unbelievable on South Bay Shore now. In fact, we just filed a complaint with our sheriff's office about we've asked for increased patrolling because the "no-through truck" signs do not work. Duke Energy flies down that road, they do 50 miles an hour in their big trucks. They're not doing 35. And I like to go walking. People run off the road. I mean, I'm surprised we haven't had more accidents. But my point is, let the buyer beware. Should my realtor have told me about this having been approved? Yes. Did she? No. But perhaps the developer should have also let the buyer beware and done in-depth studies to make sure he was going to be able to have access on Island Drive, which does make sense. That's all. Just wanted you to know, you have folks who move here because we love it the way it is. We love the environmental safety that we're trying to ensure for our future generations. And density is the issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak publicly? Now's your time. Anyone by Zoom chair?
Ms. Barbara Sanders had her hand up, but it's down, but I'm going to click on her to allow her to talk and see if she still wants to speak. If she goes unmute.
No, it was an accident. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
There you go. All right, sir. So before it goes back to the board, should the applicant be given the time to, I guess, address some of these concerns? What's correct? Do you tell me?
More discussion is allowed. I mean, that would be fine, Mr. Chairman.
So, as you're coming up, I would like to say a couple of things. Just to try to make sure that, as it's been brought up, not this board is different than it was when we approved this PUD.
It is different.
It is different. But I will assure you that that PUD passed with a 5-0 vote. Because some of the background that maybe all the residents that live on that road do not know, that we could not say during the public hearing process, was the county was trying to swap really horrible zoning for something that everybody could be okay with. Because all of that acreage was zoned for mobile homes before. They did not have to hook up to septic. Or to sewer, they could have put septic tanks in. This property owner, or the property owners before him, could have come to the county and said, "I want to put 55 trailers here and 55 septic tanks. I need my stuff now." And there would have been nothing that the county or anybody else speaking could have done about it. So, that's the reason we moved forward this PUD before. Not only did it address some things that we need in our community, but we were getting away from a really horrible zoning that was attached to South Bay Shore. I don't know if all the residents that live there are aware of that. Some of the other concerns are, I've heard people talk about the fact that it's a 100-room hotel. Well, the Buccaneer Inn's also almost a 100-room hotel. This is on the island for years, and that I know of, it hasn't presented a traffic problem to St. George Island. It has not. There's been some discussion with myself about that maybe there's other vacant land they should buy another piece of property to have their access. Well, if we're going to do that, we need to start doing that with every property owner in the county. So if you'd have access to your property that you own, you need to buy another one to get access to it. Yes, that's as ridiculous as it sounds. The PUD was approved. There is no such designation as county as a commercial road or a residential road. There are speed limits that identify those, but we don't have these roads are commercial and these roads are residential. They're all county roads. I would also add that the, you know, there's been some discussion back and forth with myself about commercial fishermen, protecting commercial fishermen. I grew up in that industry. That was the only thing my family did till they realized it was not viable and we all got out. So that is not something that's lost, to me or others on this commission. We know about commercial seafood. We were involved in it. We didn't discuss it from afar. We didn't use it as a mechanism to try to make others do what we wanted them to do. We were involved in that industry. I mean, so much so, I think for most of my high school years, I had perfect attendance. You know why? Because I know if I missed, I was going to be shoveling oysters. Because Daddy said, "Boy, you ain't staying in this house. You can come with me." But Daddy, I don't feel good bringing that motor with you, but you're not going to stay here at the house by yourself. So, you know, it's some of the things that have come up in all the different discussions I've answered over probably 60 or 70 emails for this issue. Also, in our comprehensive plan, East Point is designated as our urban service area. It is the area in the county that allows for density because of the availability of water and sewer from East Point Water and Sewer District. That's in the comprehensive plan. So for us to say there's a problem with density, or there's a problem with, you know, all these other things concerning that, that's been said not just today, but in emails, is actually against our comprehensive plan that we have adopted, that we've mentioned here. It's not something that, you know, somebody's trying to make up that being in our plan. It currently is in our plan. The PUD is held to a standard of what it can and can't do on its own property. It's called a commercial site plan, which this board will review and has approved. Today has some amendments to that. It's giving more green space, more public area, more common area, more protections to wetlands, more back from the corners. It is addressing those things, and it is addressed in that commercial site plan, in this amendment. So, just a note, I wanted to make sure, because it has been mentioned several times, more importantly, that this board is different than what it was when it was originally approved. Yes, it was. We also went through a worldwide pandemic. There wasn't anything going on. So some of those things have delayed what we're looking at today. And, you know, I don't know if the standards that FDOT have changed in the last four or five years. I can't answer that. But what I can answer is the fact that we, this board, have to give them access somewhere. We can't possibly say, "Well, you know, you can build what you want to, but I guess you got to put a helipad on the property." That's not possible. You cannot do that. That is an unreasonable request for us to have, and an unreasonable stance for us to make. Sir, if you want to address some of these things, you're good.
I think you've addressed them.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't, anyway, I wasn't trying to speak for you. I was trying to speak for myself in some of the emails I've answered. And I will say that, yes, I did talk with Ms. Holman about the possibility of changing the Y there. The issue is, somebody owns that property inside that Y. They're the people that pay for the billboard so they can make revenue off of it, and they've not been interested in selling it. Because there was discussion about just blocking the road off there with, you know, something to make it where it was a dead end right there on the Y. Well, as you come out, what wouldn't work, as you come out, you have this hard turn, and now you're going to have to try to go back to the island or back to East Point. It's just, it would not be feasible. We did have some lengthy discussion about it, just to address that fact. Not trying to steal anybody's thunder, but I've been thinking hard and heavy about this because I support it. I support the amendment. I have no issue with it whatsoever. It's a county road. They're asking for access to the property. I think it's as simple as that. Other Commissioners, any questions or special?
I've got something I want to say.
All right.
I wasn't here back in 2009, when this PUD amendment was done. Was there certain provisions by either the county or the developers to address the issues that these South Bay Shore people had brought up? Was there anything done or said that would make the South Bay Shore people think that they would not be affected by this PUD?
Well, at the time, there was a discussion about, like was said today, excluding anything from South Bay Shore. But that was not, that was a county discussion. That was not a DOT discussion.
Okay.
I have a question.
Is that it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not the one I wanted to hear.
Did the crosswalk exist before or after y'all approved the PUD back then?
Before.
So the crosswalk was there. Is this your first development, sir?
It's my first large one.
It is?
It is. Uh-uh.
And, and the, well, it is.
I mean, I don't, I've never developed nothing. I'm just asking a question, but don't you normally get approval?
It's just not me. This is a group, a team that we have.
Yeah, I understand.
It's not just myself. But whether or not that, and we were told that crosswalk was put in by grant money. I forgot who told me that, but.
Mr. Curran. I think Mr. Curran told me that.
It might have been. And we did come, so, I'm not saying the crosswalk is everything. That is just one of several issues that FDOT had with it.
Well, I know the Y was there, because I think it's been there since I was born.
It might have been. And, but, and honestly, I didn't notice it because I didn't think it was an issue. And we did talk to FDOT when we first came. But we are the largest landowner on South Bay Shore Drive by a large factor. There already is commercial on South Bay Shore Drive today, as we sit in here today. And we had, we just didn't pick this, we thought about this very diligently, about where to put this. And this seemed, it's in compliance with FDOT. It's as far away as we possibly can get from the nearest neighbor. There's nobody across the street from us, so we're not intruding on anybody to the best of our ability. I'm not saying we're not, but to the best of our ability. There is no other act, of the 55 acres, the biggest touch point to any public road is South Bay Shore Drive. We tried to do Island Drive. We liked the Island Drive address. We can't do it. There is no other option. So, so, so we will use, the lady that was up here, we will use Island Drive as our address. And that, and to the gentleman's point, that will, when they do put in Waze or Google Maps, it will bring you down, Island Drive. And I wanted to say one other point. If you look at the map that we have, we can bring that back up, in a practical matter, and I think we were talking about this last time we were here. When you're leaving the originally approved entrance, just say, anybody can use, you tell me. If you were leaving, you're exiting the development, and you're going to Appalachia Cola, chances are you're probably going to turn right on Island Drive and turn right on South Bay Shore Drive and come to Appalachia Cola. Same as where it is now. If you're going to St. George If you're going to St. George Island, instead of, you, you turn right on Island Drive and go to St. George Island. Now you turn left on South Bay Shore Drive and go to, the traffic pattern really hasn't changed that much. It's just the location of the entrances changed a few hundred yards. That's it. And, and like I said, of the thirteen hundred feet, um, on South Bay Shore Drive, that's far and away the largest touch point we have to a public road and have available access. What we have on Begonia is less than thirty feet. And we can direct and prohibit any service from going into the main entrance. Can I stand here and tell you I can patrol every truck going down there? I can't. But I can tell you, they can't get in on South Bay Shore Drive and they'll learn really quickly. The only way to get in is to go through Begonia. I can do everything in my power is what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Curran?
You, you had asked about the, the crosswalk and it was part of the sidewalk on South Bay Shore. It connects the end of that sidewalk with the path on the east side of Island Drive. The county put it in and it was completed in twenty eighteen.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I drove over there and looked at it. I see the proximity of it. Um, my, my question was, was did, you know, um, had, should have kind of been a little diligent with F D O T.
Well, the land was purchased before that.
I'm sorry?
The land was purchased.
I understand that, but was the PUD approved before that? That's the question.
The final approval was twenty nineteen, but now there was, hmm, it's probably about a year from beginning to end to get it approved the first time. So it could have happened during the process, is what I'm saying.
That, my other thing is I reached out to the Sheriff's Department, uh, and congratulations, South Bay Shore. I think y'all won, uh, the worst road in the county, traffic wise. I don't know if that's a good award or not, but, uh, just an example, in the off-season, four days, and this is October off-season, fifty, this is, uh, hmm, four days, yeah, four-day stretches, north and south, fifty-two-hundred-and-eleven passes. Uh, six days, same month, off-season, six, and this is weekend though. That other was a weekday, this is a weekend, sixty-seven-hundred, or sixty-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two. Now you go into spring break, on the weekend, you're talking eighty-three-hundred-and-forty-nine. I mean, it's, it's already an issue. What I'm getting at is, is, uh, according to Sheriff's Department, it's an issue. We got approval with some, uh, traffic lights, I believe. The county did that, it's pre-existing before I got there. So we know we go, we, what I'm getting at is, we know we got a road here that's already a, a, a pain in the neck, so to speak. Are we sure that we've exhausted everything with F D O T? Because it sounds to me like there are some more avenues to go back to F D O T and say, hey, is there variance here? Is there this, is there that? I would recommend that we exhaust everything before we sit here and, and make a decision on adding to a problem that we already have as far as South Bay Shore and the traffic and, and also the fact that we're the ones that's going to maintain that road, uh, in the future. And it's already a, not a, not a great road, um, you know? So I'm just wondering if there's, is, can we go back to F D O T or can y'all go back to F D O T? And, uh, let's exhaust all this before we make a decision on disrupting lives?
I think we have.
I'm sorry?
I think we have.
Is that a thing or do we know?
We, I'll let, I'll let Dan come in and, and speak. He was on the call with us as well. And we ran this by, um, P and Z as well.
Have y'all had a traffic study, like they, they said earlier, I mean, any of that stuff?
So we, so in the conversations with FDOT, there are very detailed exhaustive conversations with FDOT. So you know that roadway that looks like it's going in, that is not our property. That is a county property. We're, we're to the south of that.
That's actually the island's property, isn't it?
Yeah.
Island, Island Works on the county.
Right, is that the, yeah, so, I thought it was, anyway. So we're, we'd be south of that. It, there's just no way they're going to let, let us do it. That they, they were pretty, they were adamant about that. That's not going to happen.
I think the four-hundred-and-forty feet was the biggest problem.
I'm sorry, what?
Four-hundred-and-forty feet.
Yeah, that was.
That they wanted you to have.
Minimum. Minimum. And we have that on South Bay Shore Drive. We tried, I, I'm not, we, some of you commissioners know, we have tried exhaustively to try to keep that Island Drive. And we'll keep that address, it is our property. We can't keep that address, so they'll drive it around, but you're literally just coming around the corner. And again, I think the actual, in a practical manner, the traffic pattern, I mean, you just think about it, it's not going to change that, that much. No, from the original, from the original approval, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the figure you threw out, how many was it? Eight thousand?
Uh, on the weekend, spring break, March, yeah. It was eight thousand three-hundred-and-forty-nine up and down that road.
So let me talk.
As a matter of fact, it's the Sheriff's Department.
So, so in that, if everybody using those numbers would come, it's less than five percent. And it's not.
It's what?
If we use the numbers that Elaine, that Ms. Elaine used, we'd be less than five percent of that. And that's if everybody you went that pattern.
Well, the other thing I would like to say and make sure everybody's aware of, because we had them run a, uh, same thing, Sheriff's Department, run the thing, uh, a year or so ago. Uh, well, yeah, it was around Memorial Day, so it was a year ago, down Patton, because we were looking at trying to get Patton repaved, widened, all that kind of stuff. And it's currently in the process. And that was eight thousand. Anybody care to guess how many it was on Patton? You won't be even close.
Right there at the convenience store it goes left.
Where it goes behind by mikes out to the Y.
I imagine it's probably tripled.
Three days was twenty-six thousand. Twenty-six thousand.
Mr. Chairman, can we have Dan Garlick get up here and let's talk to him a little bit? Come on, Dan. Me and Dan goes way back, way back. Um, Dan, are you responsible for talking to, uh, F D O T? Did you talk to F D O T about this access?
I was on the call with the engineers that talked to the F D O T. So we, we actually had traffic engineers talking to F D O T about this whole layout. And that's what got this whole thing going is that they said.
Do you know anything about it other than what has been told here? Do you know anything else about it?
Sure, I know a bunch of things.
Yeah.
What I do know is that.
Did y'all talk to the main one though?
Yeah, Mar, his name is Marcellia Williams, he's been there for me.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about, I know who you're talking about.
Uh, the biggest issue with this is that, you know, we looked at only, you know, all these, we did this in the P U D in twenty nineteen. We looked at Begonia, uh, we looked at Island Drive. Uh, the Begonia is interesting for service, but to try to, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about using Begonia as, as a primary access. But all that that's going to do is if that, if it's a case of traffic, all we're doing is taking traffic from going down a public road in front of a bunch of residential units to put in front of another place where there's a whole bunch more residential units. It's all area back there, it's all section eight housing or whatever it is. There's a bunch of people living back in there. So you're going to plug that road up, probably worse, because I think there's more people living back in there.
Yeah.
And so you've got that going on. You got a major ditch on both sides that you have to basically realign that whole thing. So using it as a service drive is fine. And D O T talked about this, go to Begonia, and so we, we looked at that. I guess that's another county road, if I remember right.
It is.
Yeah. So Mark and I actually had a chat about the, uh, what the level of service is on Begonia or on South Bay Shore Drive. And I think we understood that this is not going to even touch it that much. It's basically going to be lower still than what the level of service would be. There's a lot of, a lot of space to stay below the county's level of service for South Bay Shore Drive. So when we got to that point there, when D O T said, you can't use this, there's another spot up there that we do have access to, but you gotta go through about four hundred feet of wetlands to build the road.
I, I, I get a feeling here. Now I'm going to, Michael Schuber's looking at me, he don't like me when I say I get a feeling. I get a feeling.
You're fine all the time.
And you know about that, you worked me a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
I get a feeling that something was just laid out there with something in the back of their minds that they were really going to do, but just giving it out to sell the project. And I mean, it just seems like to me that that would be the first thing you do is find out if you're going to have access or not. Dan, at any time, I'm going to ask Dan, cause he knows what I'm doing. At any time when y'all were looking at this, was South Bay Shore underneath your radar more than any, but anywhere else? The Begonia and the high, and the Island Drive?
Reason we never went for Bay Shore the first time is because there was opposition to it and we thought we had a way to get in there off of Island Drive. It's not there anymore, unfortunately.
You ain't going to lie to me.
Mr. Chairman, uh, are you? Mike, I'm not against this P U D. I was not on the board when this came about. I think it's a great idea. I'm not opposed to the changes that are being made today. However, I do have issue and concern with the ingress and egress that F D O T is asking. Number one, and I've reached out to Brian Pettis, who is the traffic officer or traffic safety officer for FDOT. And he's yet to call me back. So that's a concern. I also find it ironic that they are trying to make the ingress and egress on a county-owned road versus a state-owned road. So are they just trying to divert the influx of traffic so that they don't have to maintain the road? They don't have to make a turn lane? They don't have to put a red light? And, and furthermore, do they understand that, um, when they do a traffic study? I agree with Commissioner Amos, have we exhausted all of our resources? And it's not on you, Dan, or, or the developer, but did anybody do a traffic study? FDOT, the developers to determine? I know that we can't control traffic down South Bay Shore. I, every time I'm coming from the, the west, guess what? I'm going to go down South Bay Shore to access the island, just like if I'm coming from the east, I'm going to access Island Drive. There's no way to control the traffic. Obviously, we just got results that there's a lot of traffic down, that goes down that road. But my concern is, and, and I didn't know this, Chairman, I knew that that wooded area at that Y was privately owned. But my concern is if you look at the map, and I don't know if we can pull up the map where the, where the new ingress and egress is going to be, there's a curve coming off South Bay Shore there. And then with that Y there, I just see a potential safety issue and safety concern versus on Island Drive. And the four hundred feet, they said that they had to have between businesses or residences? You can't tell me that there's more than four hundred, there had, there's obviously four-hundred-and-forty feet between the businesses there on Island Drive where y'all were going for the original ingress and egress. So, so that's my concern. I, I, again, I, I don't think we need to.
So let me, let me say, there is not four-hundred-and-forty feet. From, from the, from the closest business to the original proposed entrance, there's not four-hundred-and-forty feet. And what they're talking about from the tip of the Y, not, not the base of the Y, from the tip of the Y, you have to be four-hundred-and-forty feet minimum away from that. And we are five hundred and, we're almost a hundred feet beyond that. And we're still five hun, over five hundred feet from the nearest driveway, which is an uninhabited lot. So we're, we're further away from the, from the actual first neighbor. But again, we're the largest owner on South Bay Shore Drive. Of the, of this property, the only access we have is the, the only, from the FDOT, the only access we have is on Begonia, which is thirty, less than thirty feet. And where we're, we're talking about on South Bay Shore Drive. There is no other alternative and we have to have two separate for fire, for police, for safety and for just practicality.
I, I agree that it's not fair to you as a developer to deny you access to your property, but I feel like there should be more things done to, I don't know if we could talk to F D O T. I'll be honest with you, how did Mr. Pettis, if any, if you are boots on the ground, looking at this with a bird's eye view, you could see, any common sense approach will tell you, that is a huge safety issue. Coming off of these curves, having the ingress and egress versus Island Drive, which is a straight shot. Businesses, crosswalk, whatever, I, I don't think having the crosswalk there has anything to do with anything either. Um, again, did Mr., and I don't want to speak for him, but I was going to call him and try to talk to him. I wanted his input, but he's yet to, again, return my call. Um, did they, is he at a computer typing in, I don't know, you can't answer for him, waypoints?
I know, his, his name's on here. He was CC'd on this, all the stuff we've been working on, Brian Pettis.
And again, had he called me, I might, could get this answered, but.
The same way we had to, it takes forever to work with D O T, as anybody knows. We call them D O O T, but that's beyond the point.
Point is, it's, you know, again, is he, did he actually come down and visit onsite? Or is he at a computer typing in points and, and numbers and, and all, and trying to figure out a way if it's safe or not with that?
They got incredible data. They're, they're definitely better than Google. But, uh, basically they've got enough information. The, one of the biggest problems with this thing here was if you've got a lot platted already on Island Drive, they can't, they got to give you access. If you don't, then you've got to make sure you're four hundred feet away from existing access. So what we have to do is think about the accesses we had. One was, do we buy the water tower? Do we buy Jameis, or, uh, uh, White, Jason White's place for access? If we buy the water tower, then we're dealing with Gene Brown, which would be a whole different story. Uh, and I don't know if we can share it, you know, I mean, that's one thing we looked at. But D O T said if you could share it, try that, but we got to buy it to do it. If we did something with Jason White up there, we've got about three, four-hundred-foot rock across of a wetland, which by the way, Franklin County still does not regulate isolated wetlands. I wanted to bring that up later. It's just something else you might want to think about down the road. Uh, but basically we'd have to cross this wetland area with a road and that would be really, really costly to do it. So that's our other access to go across this wetland area. And like I said, the only other one was Begonia. And is it fair to put a major road across some other residents or down here where you're taking away from a public road and putting it on another public road, but you've still got all these residents here that probably don't have the access or even know about this meeting, but still are residents of Franklin County? So you've got to think about them too.
And, and you guys, y'all didn't do a traffic study to ascertain?
Well, this, this is the thing I asked Mark about. I think we, there's only been one traffic study done in Franklin County and it wasn't even necessary. It was for, uh, the dollar store that kind of went down the tube. Uh, but the, the, again, we've got, I know the county has, uh, levels of service on their roads. And as I understand it, is that chances are we'd be way underneath this no matter what in that regard. So I mean, you know, if, you know, that's the issue. I mean, is this traffic study required or not is something we can talk about, I guess.
Um, if you like, I, I can answer. There's no requirement in the, in the county regulations that someone do a traffic study. I recommended to them, um, when they first came in to discuss this, they do a traffic study on South Bay Shore to show what the impact would be. Um, they chose not to do one. The county has adopted a level of service D on all county roads. What I don't have is the, the numbers and figures to say what the impact this development would have on the level of service on South Bay Shore right now.
I think the whole idea for us is to, again, direct our traffic, deal with our traffic and basically put a cattle grade up and tell them, this is the way you got to go. And how do we do that? We got mechanisms to do it. It's just a matter of as long as to implement it to do it. Uh, we can't, just like Craig said, there, there's no reason we can't tell everybody to go from St. George Island and not use that road. I use it all the time. I do abide by the speed limit, by the way. Uh, but basically that's, that's really where, where we're at with it at this point in time. But we, we did go through D O T. I guess we could apply and then they would turn us down if that would be something that would give you more credibility and that we just can't use those.
I just want to make sure we've exhausted all of our resources to determine if this is the only way.
Yeah.
I don't think it is personally, but.
I don't either.
I mean, that's just me, that's my thought.
One other thing, I want. I believe we, we have. Um, the other thing about Begonia, just so you know, that is a twenty-five mile an hour road. It's more of a neighborhood road than thirty-five mile an hour county road. And again, there are, there is a precedence already. There is commercial already on South Bay Shore Drive.
Talking about up there by ninety-eight?
Yes, on by the end.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, it's tip.
Same thing that is.
Tip to tip.
Yeah.
Uh, so Commissioner Ward, to help us see it, I asked Mr. Merone, kind of, that is the actual layout of the property, the boundaries. If you'll notice where the tip of that Y is, I mean, they don't own all the property that's going up the side of Island Drive. They don't own that property.
And we can't block off that Y curve there at all? Cause that's a county road, isn't it?
Yeah, if you, we're going to make more one-way county roads? I mean, we're having residents fighting to get their roads done that aren't county roads. And we're going to take a good one and block it off? If that's what y'all want to do.
I just think it's a dangerous situation.
You're talking about blocking off where it goes back up into?
Well, no, there, there was a discussion I had about blocking off the northern part of that Y.
Okay.
To make it where the Y kind of goes. To make it where the Y kinda goes into the property. But then you're gonna have, you're still gonna have people going down to go to the island. But then what you're doing is limiting where they have to go out that way. But then if they try to go to the island, they're gonna go to that sharp turn and have to turn back around to go to the island. We don't own the property in the middle. It belongs to somebody else.
How many people actually use that? I mean, who's gonna drive down North, South Bay Shore to go back into East Point?
I can answer that.
I mean, they're, be attracted, but I don't know what the answer is as far as that goes. But I'm just still, you know, I'd rather FDOT be the final call that officially, not a, "I heard FDOT, and I was on this conversation," or this or that. You know, I mean, I would, I would rather hear from a state official with FDOT.
We have the letter.
Yeah, I see that. I think that letter said, "We recommend," or, I mean, can we get the letter back up there?
Well, they said they recommend because they said they have no jurisdiction over the county. So that's why they said, "I recommend."
They get forces to do it, is what he's saying.
They can't force you to do it. What they're saying is, they're suggesting that as being, there is, there is no other.
You mean to tell me, and I, that this whole coast, I mean, I know that, I mean, we live in a beautiful area. There's many walkways. And I've been from here to Navarre, Pensacola, and I've seen walkways, and I've seen businesses. And I believe you're from, what, Walton County, correct? I mean, there's numerous business entrances and walkways.
Again, again, it's not just the walkway. Don't get fixated on just the way, it's a walkway, it's a Y intersection, it's proximity to the businesses north of us. It also has to do with Pat, Pat, Patent Drive on another place that we tried something there.
I've seen, I mean, I would just like to, I would, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's been exhausted. And that's all I'm getting at. I know that, I mean, I would like to, I'd like DOT to reach out to us. And, let me see.
Make a motion on that.
Look here.
We've gave Noah, we put him over here to the side. Go ahead.
Everybody else is talking. Look, he said, I was in his process.
Yes, sir.
From the beginning. Every time it come up, the people come in here, they both, they told us what was going on. The group that stayed there, they didn't want it, but they don't want nobody by their house. They were saying, that's the bottom line. They don't want nobody, they don't want the burden in that area. They wanna look at it. I've been looking at it a hundred years since I bought my house and all that. Those people bought this property to develop. And it's going back to the same thing that they, they get a chance to come back in here. They still don't want it. It's just a start over process of what we approved. We didn't, when we approved it. I mean, what, you got to get access to a property whether it's front, back, behind, or something. You got to give people access to the property. What is there a big fuss about? They want it here, or they want it there. They got to have access to the property.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You, you were on the board, obviously, whenever y'all refused it the first time, or turned the putt down because the access was on South Bay Shore? Is that...
We turned it down because everyone did RVs.
Oh, okay. I was under the impression that it was going to happen.
We turned it down because everyone did RVs.
Right. Uh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I was just asking. I'm trying to catch up.
And they were, they come in and, you know, we hadn't been acting with y'all. They said they gonna provide y'all. They didn't say they gonna provide, you know. I know it don't provide high-stakes y'all, but it provide some y'all. It starts somewhere. Y'all, y'all, whether everybody ain't gonna make a hundred thousand miles a year. And from the way the minimum wage is, I guess they supposed to pay the 15, if they on the low end. Or the new thing. They got up there and said 70, or 10, I don't know. Somebody said that. But them people done everything they pulled it up. Everything they asked. Everything was during the process. It was running back and forth, running back and forth. At the end, we approved them. And now it's coming back to an asset, and they wanna start all over. I heard somebody got, they throw the whole thing out. That would be right. Change gonna come. It's just, you gotta start somewhere.
Just one last thing. It is gonna be a beautiful entrance, and we are letting people that are gonna, it's a community development. People are gonna come. I had, I had dinner at the chef's sampler the other night. And just coincidentally, we sat next to a couple on South Bay Shore Drive. They started telling them, we told them what, they said, "Where do you live?" We told them, and they said, "Oh, you're the ones." By the time we went through and explained everything to them, they went, "Well, that's not what we were told." I said, "Oh, I'm sure that's the case, and that's why I appreciate the opportunity to come up here." But the reality of it, they said, "Well, can we walk over and walk around the lake?" I said, "Absolutely. Can we walk over and have dinners?" Absolutely. It's, that's our business. So it'll be something that'll be enjoyed by, I'd look at it differently. I would look at it as an asset on South Bay Shore Drive that you'll be able to use and enjoy. Not only you, but people from the island and around. Right now, you got a dead sidewalk that just walks along a bunch of woods. And you talk about safety. I've walked back there. I've seen tents back there. I had to chase people out. So I think it'd be safer to have a nice development in the area. And we have, I've spent an inordinate amount of time over the last four years, and some of you know that, working on this thing. So when I say, have we exhausted, I've exhausted everything. I really have, financially and emotionally, and, and dealing with FDOT. I tried everything to get it on Island Drive. We wanted it on Island Drive. There's just not enough space there to do it. Most of our property, as I said, of the 55 acres, is on South Bay Shore Drive. So we're property owners on South Bay Shore Drive, and we're just asking, can we have access to our property on South Bay Shore Drive? Which is a public commercial road.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we can hash this out all day. I do not want to approve this. I do not want to deny this. I feel like FDOT owes us a little bit more information into what they, why they determined this. It's not your fault, Mr. Dermody, that they are putting this on you in terms of having you change your ingress and egress. It's not your fault. You shouldn't be punished for that. But me, right now, and I'm one of five, cannot, my good conscience, approve this until we have further information from them. That's my opinion.
Can we, well, this is such a timely process. And, and it's very costly. So if we could get an approval subject to you getting a conversation with them, would that, is that something you would consider?
I can't, we can't do that. I don't think we can do that. And we can't approve, one, because there's two, two things, right? It's all, it's all or nothing. We can't approve the PUD, his request for the change, and table the ingress and egress.
I wouldn't recommend that. If you want the table for more information, then table for more information. If you want to approve, then you approve as requested. I haven't heard any, frankly, any testimony here that would lead me to recommend that you should approve part, but not all. So, no. I, because if you approve with, with conditions, that just, I don't think that's gonna work out very well.
Okay. I'm one of five, but I'm gonna make a motion to table this and see if we can get Pettis or some representative from FDOT to talk to this board if they'll return my phone call, so that we can make sure we exhausted all of our, our resources with this.
I second that motion.
So a motion to table from Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Sanders. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the board has got two procedures that you can choose to follow at this point. You can table to a date, time, and place certain for a continuation of this public hearing, which case I don't think you would need to advertise, although I think the Fourth District Court of Appeal just issued an opinion that disagrees with me on that. But, or you could just table and then re-advertise.
I, I don't wanna, Mr. Dermody has already spent enough time. I think that it's all pending on FDOT contacting us back. So table to a...
Next month.
Yeah. I'd do it the quickest way.
Next month, so we don't have to advertise, and so we don't have to waste any more time.
The first, first or second meeting.
I would, so, the thing is, what you, I wanna be clear. What you're asking me to do is have a FDOT representative standing at that podium in front of you to answer questions.
Well, I've already, I've already been told FDOT don't come to meetings, but, you know, we deserve some kind of...
Or something in running to a minimum.
Something, yes. They said it's recommended. It wasn't set in stone.
Okay, if that's the case, I would recommend the 21st of March, which is a month away from today, roughly. February's a short month. That's our second meeting in March at 10:00 a.m. That's my recommendation to the board.
Of course. Just for the record, what you're suggesting, Mr. Moron, is to reschedule this public hearing until March 21st at 10:00 a.m. To be conducted at 34 Fourth Street in the courthouse annex.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I'll make that my table till then.
Your second reflect, ma'am?
My second.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, what, what we team, I mean, what you doing? Get this foot up.
DOT, give DOT time to get guilty.
But this is for the drive interest.
Yep, that's it.
Has nothing to do with the project inside the PUD, Mr. Noah. You know, as I do, that we need to make sure that we've exhausted everything to make sure that we give every bit of, of, I won't call it immunity, for the South Bay Shore people. But I want, I do not believe FT, FDOT has really looked at the ingress, egress on Island Drive. I really don't think.
They may have on Google Maps, but not...
Yeah.
So just so I'm clear.
Yes, sir.
What, what you wanna know is that letter is a valid letter, and they stand behind that letter. Is that basically...
I'm not questioning the validity of the letter. My question is, I wanna talk to this Pettis, the Traffic Operations Services Manager, and ascertain why he's thinking that the ingress and egress that he's proposing is safer than where it was originally on Island Drive. That's, that's my question.
It's the distance. It's basically it.
Okay, and that's fine, but I want him to call me back and return my phone call, and let's talk about options. Because again, I think it's ironic, as I said before, that they are trying to divert a road that is state-owned, which they would have to maintain, to a county road, which is what we would have to maintain. So again, there's, there's some issues there about why, what's their intention? Would they have to put a turn lane in on Island Drive? That's, those are questions that I want to ask FDOT. It has nothing to do with you, has nothing to do with your PUD. I'm not opposed to that. I'm opposed to, we need to exhaust and make sure that we, as elected officials, provide the safety and security to the people in our county. And there were safety concerns brought up. I see safety concerns. I'm a common sense approach kind of person, and that, that's it. That's, that's it.
Right. I just wanna make sure that, you know, my time is crucial. And I just wanna make sure, there's a time-sensitive thing that, well, I've been working on this for a long time, as y'all know.
And this is nothing against you or your, your developers, or your partners, or any of that. I just have to underst, me, us, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the board. I just wanna make sure that we've exhausted all of our resources, talk to FDOT if there's any other options to make it more safer for the community that we serve. That's it. I'm not against your PUD. I think it's a great idea. I think it's gonna be a big asset. I just, and, and that's why I tabled it to next month, because I don't want to delay you anymore. But I'm hoping in that month, we can get the information and answers and questions that we have.
We're gonna do our best to get them to call you.
Thank you. And I don't know if that number's accurate either, because I left a voicemail, and it was saying me something else, but anyway.
Ms. Aaron, so I know the county's about to be given the end of Island Drive. They're only talking about the section on the island, correct? Or is it the all?
That's correct, and it would actually only be the right-of-way areas.
Right, okay. I'm gonna make sure, okay.
So we are not receiving Franklin Boulevard.
For another project working on the island with the stormwater, the FDOT has given us the right-of-ways on St. George Island, where there's retention ponds. They're transferring them to the county instead of the state. I just wanted to make sure it did involve that run, that's why I asked. All right, any more discussion before we vote?
Who go through the contact?
Well, apparently, I tried calling. It wasn't good enough for him to call me back, so...
Mr. Carrington?
You know, Mark is, we're not gonna, I mean, let's be honest, Mark and FDOT, he has a longstanding relationship with them. So I'll, if not, you know, we'll just jump in the county car and go up there and just start knocking.
I'll do that. I've thought about doing that before.
Can I ask Mark a question? Is Philip Gainer still the secretary for the district?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Because that's where my next call is. They don't, they might call me back.
All right.
I'm serious. I mean, you know, I'm trying to call and make decisions based on the county, and you can't even get a phone call back as to answer your questions. It's ridiculous, and it's unacceptable. And I mean, all I'm asking is just for information. The guy can't even call me back. Now granted, the number may not be accurate. I called the number that was in the letter. Is it accurate? Did he change it? I don't know. I don't know how, I guess that letter, I didn't know what, when that letter was dated, but nonetheless. If we can't get a hold to Mr. Pettis, my next call would be to Mr. Gainer.
Okay, we ready to vote?
Yes.
Because it's, you know, anyway, they may or may not return the calls. I promise you, we're gonna have a conversation later about the core, and it will be good. All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, so we had four to one. It passed. We're tabled until next month. We need to go back to Ms. Griffin.
Sure.
I don't wanna pause for anything, sir. I wanna go home sometime today.
Day and turn it.
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
I still have four, one, and two, and three to. Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
All right, Commissioners, this is opening the public hearing that was scheduled for the five-year capital improvement schedule. Attached is the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Attached is the five-year capital improvement schedule to the board. The schedule is a list of capital improvements that the county plans to make over the next five years, subject to funding. The benefit of the schedule is that the county receives points on some grants for having the proposed projects on the capital improvement schedule. This county plan is updated once a year, sometime after budget adoption, and can be amended from time to time, should new projects arise. Chairman Jones will call for public comments before Commissioner comments and a vote requesting board action to approve and adopt the ordinance amending the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan to adopt a new five-year schedule of capital improvements. And some improvements that are actually on this schedule are already in progress, but they do show up until they are actually completed. And then also, we have added some, some new items this year as well. And one has been in result of, you know, those who have actually shown up to commission meetings and actually lobbied for stormwater mitigation projects. So we did actually add Kentucky Avenue, which is a Landarch Beach subdivision, stormwater mitigation drainage improvements. Also, La Spreces, stormwater mitigation drainage improvements. Sawyer Street, stormwater mitigation drainage improvements. And Bluff Road, stormwater mitigation drainage improvements. And that was just from citizens actually coming to the board. So right now, you know, those projects are unfunded, but we are, you know, seeking stormwater mitigation funds for those areas as well. In addition to that, you'll see the East Point Dredge Project on there, the Restore Projects, the new Emergency Operations Center, Communication System Upgrade, broadband improvements. It's really, you know, the county's path moving forward. So if there's anything that Commissioners would like to add to this list at this time, or something that we have missed, or, I mean, of course, we can amend it later on, but if you wanna include it now, just please go ahead and mention some projects.
Commissioners, do y'all have anything that needs to be added?
Not at the moment, no.
I think it's a pretty comprehensive list. So can we call for public, public comment? Anyone in the room wanting to comment about this publicly before we take a possible action today? Seeing none, is there anybody zooming, sir? That's what it is, brother.
That's what we do. That's what we do.
So anyone online that would like to comment on this, please do so by indicating by raising your hand on your device. I'd like to comment on this particular item.
I'd like to comment on this particular item. It's a public hearing. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure to the board.
Now, I want, I want to let y'all know, I asked Erin to add the Alligator Point Road.
Yep, yep, CR 370, Alligator Drive resurfacing. This would be a multi-phase project, because it's about seven miles.
We need to finish it up like we did, like we're going to 67. You need a motion?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else? Mr. Quentin Eastburg, you have been so patient to wait on us through all this stuff. He is the, what is your title now at the Regional Planning Council?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you, thank you. I've got a very contentious item on the agenda for y'all today. No, basically, I just have a request for the board, from the Regional Planning Council. We've been doing a lot of, obviously, we view ourselves an extension of county staff and so forth, and one of those big things that's coming up is broadband. We attended the, I attended the Florida Association of County Access 67 Summit a couple of weeks ago. Rumor is somewhere in the $2.2 billion-ish over the next several years in broadband infrastructure dollars coming down from the feds and so forth. So in a better way to kind of help align and then get us, leverage ourselves to get some more funding, we've been working with your local LTPT, which is head by Ms. Pat O'Connell, and then Courtney, I think is the county's representative in the planning office. So we've been working with those folks, trying to be as active as we can in getting some information. And there's actually a grant opportunity that's open through Department of Economic Opportunity called the RIF Grant Rural Infrastructure Fund. They've got several pots of money, one of which is planning projects, not to exceed $300,000 limit. Regional Planning Council's not an eligible applicant, so that's kind of why I'm here, to see if the board is willing or interested to go after some of that funding. And we're more than happy to work with Courtney and her team at the county to be the applicant for that project, but wanted to come before the board for your approval before we move forward. Items contained, as far as the deliverables, are pretty wide open for, for planning. It can include feasibility studies, can include implementation plans, you know, RFPs processes for, which you all would end up having to do. But, you know, constructing an RFP for what the county wants to see moving forward for their broadband application. And then if you have those, you know, kind of in place, that'll help leverage over some of the other, the NTIA middle mile funding, the broadband opportunity grant funding, which had 400 million, $400 million, and less than half got allocated this past cycle. So I assume there'll be a phase two for that, and then obviously the BEAD program. So, really in a nutshell, just looking for, you know, the, the green light from the board, you know, to, to work with county staff and put in a planning project. You know, we'd be working, like I said, with the local technology planning team as well to make sure we come up with a list of deliverables that suit what the county wants to see moving forward. And that would be, if awarded, there'd be a two-year, you know, not to exceed two years to complete the deliverables in that, in that program. Bright side, there is no match for planning dollars. Subsequently down the line, there are always opportunities to go after infrastructure funds for that as well, which does require a little bit of a match. But we've been looking at a couple of different ways to be innovative with, can we use an, can we use an ISP to kind of match some of that money? Does the county have to match that? How does that work? But in the initial, the planning process, there's no cost to the county.
So, basically, Mr. Eastburg, if the board approves it today by motion and vote, you're going to allow the Regional Planning Council to get together with the county to submit for this planning grant so we can start planning what our broad, what our, what, what our broadband needs are, not just our needs, but how we can meet those needs.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just make sure I understood.
Yeah, and then there's a couple of steps in that. So with the approval, I'll probably look to Courtney. And, you know, we have to, their application process, you have to request the specific, you know, link, you know, which they'll send you the application. So, to, to start that process, applications are due 13th of March. So we've got a couple of weeks, a couple, few weeks to get, get an application together.
Yeah, you think it's going to be enough time?
I think so, yeah. Their application's pretty straightforward.
And I will say, just to make sure the rest of the board is aware, because some of us remember, the Regional Planning Council, I don't know how it's been in the past, but they've become more and more an extension of county staff where we lack. Bless you. Where we lack capacity and our expertise in an issue, they come alongside us and been, been able to help us pursue things that we otherwise would not be able to pursue. So, just, just to make sure, kind of that's the involvement or the relationship we have with them.
Right.
Pleasure to the board. Any questions?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous for us.
Thank you very much.
While you're here.
Yep.
Mr. Morone, do you, do you need the board to actually have a discussion to allow you to engage with ARPC about some of the other stuff? Or where to take care of that?
Well, no, there's some ARPC stuff in my report. I'm not sure if it's Quentin's necessarily.
No, it's not, but he is now the deputy director. He wears a bigger hat, so he's the second.
Just additional hats, yeah, it's additional hats, right.
He's over everybody but Chris.
Okay, hold on, let me.
He's the one that's got to keep Chris dry.
There you go.
Not Commissioner Sanders. That's a big job. Let me see, environmental, item six is the airport board, airport appraisals, not them.
They've that one.
Yes, it is. Okay, so to the bottom, item eight is one to one. So, a review of our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and I'll be quick. I won't even read verbatim. So basically, in the past, Mark had said to us, we need to review our comp plan. It needs to be updated. There were things that we've changed since then. Language has changed. There's, there's references to outdated state agencies that's in there. And then in talking, Courtney heard, she said, well, the zoning ordinance also, there's been a bunch of changes we've made with the zoning ordinance. What, and Mark thinks this is an excellent idea. What we're asking is that we allow ARPC to review both documents. Our comp plan, our zoning ordinance, make suggested changes. Mark will review those changes, work with ARPC, and then we will have a final product, you know, hopefully by years and before Mark actually leaves.
Right.
So, the good thing about that advantage is ARPC now knows our comp plan. So they can aid us in some way if we have questions, we need, we need help, we need assistance with both documents. More person we can call for assistance, you know, if, if needed, because they, that's what they do, they're planners.
So do you need action on that?
Yeah, to request a scope of work, a proposal, you know, whatever they would do for us. I would like some, I'm just kind of wondering.
So you can bring it back to us for approval?
Yes, this is not approving the actual proposal. I just want you to allow me to, I'd like you to go request this proposal from ARPC.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion to approve.
All right, I have motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
I'll second with a question.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Please proceed.
Y'all okay with that, Quentin?
Yeah, I think we can handle that, for sure. And then, Commissioner, if I could take a second, just to your point, since it is, since we are an entity of the state, I guess that'd be an internal thing, if you guys want to give Mr. Morone that approval. Because then as far as like the statutory, whatever, you know, since it's state to state, we would be exempt from competitive procurement stuff. So, I think what you were alluding, if, if he's got that green light to be the, you know, I'm, I'm happy to work directly with Michael. We've got a good relationship.
Right, and that's what we were trying to do.
Yeah.
Because that way, if they bring back a proposal, you know, bring back a proposal for us, then we can, you know, kind of hash it out and go from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I found, I found the other item, the item three, that, that $175,000 we received from DEP, that Vulnerability Assessment Planning Grant, same thing. I reached out to ARPC. They said they'll be happy to work with us on this planning grant. Basically the same thing. I would like some kind of scope or some, whatever it'll take, that contest is going to cost us to work with us on this planning grant.
Which you can bring back to us.
That can bring back for your approval.
I have motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Quentin, like, can I find anything else to tag you with, like?
Well, you've got my phone number if you need me. I'm going to sneak out, because I'm going to go do the ride along with the TD, transportation disadvantaged folks, but yeah.
I did ask you a question for you. How much closer are we to our not regional transportation planning agency, but regional transportation planning agency?
So, we have a contract signed with DOT. We start March 6th.
Okay.
So that, so that'll be, so what we're working, so Ben's taking, kind of taking the lead on that. And the, the goal is then, and for, for the board, it's a pilot project that the Emerald Coast Regional Council did with District Three the last couple of years, so they want to extend that through the rest of the district. And that's working with the non-MPO counties, so obviously the, you know, the metropolitan in Tallahassee and their surrounding counties. But in those counties that aren't covered by an MPO, it's a pilot project to bring those counties together for regional transportation issues. And this way, everyone has a seat at the table, so we're, you know, we can go back to, we, the collective we, five counties, will be able to develop kind of like a scope and a work plan that each of the counties sign off on. Obviously, there's a, you know, when you put your projects to DOT, you're in competition amongst every other county in the state or the, the district where they rank them. But if we're able to do that as a region and identify that, you know, really, we need to, none of this has been talked about. Well, let's just say we want a six-lane I-10, or we want a four-lane 71, or put an interchange on 65, because that's an evacuation route out of Franklin County. Whatever it is, you know, we want an eight-lane 98. Whatever that is would give us an opportunity to, to do that as a regional group and then give that information to DOT. So there's going to be some community meetings, stakeholder engagement and so forth coming up. But like I said, we'll get the green light. I think it's March 6th is the official start date for that contract. Yes, sir.
As part of the package, and I'm, I know you're wanting to go, you've been here a long time.
No, 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 you're fine.
As part of the package that we're going to do in that entity, because this is what I said, I want to make sure I'm right. Isn't there part of the scope of work going to be for our, our five counties when we make up this group? That there's going to be some, I guess, surveying of what we have to see what roads are, where the roads are? Isn't that involved in part of it?
I think so. I think there's like an inventory, right? And Ben's, Ben's worked more closely with it than I could, so I would have to probably converse back with Ben, or I can get you the, the scope itself.
If we could, because I have presented to this board that's what's going to happen. I just want to make sure I'm telling.
Yeah, I think there's a fair amount of mapping and GIS and stuff related with it as well.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Quentin?
Thanks for being patient.
It was a pleasure seeing all y'all. You guys are, you guys are way more patient than me, so. We'll see y'all later.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Courtney.
Good afternoon. I just have a couple of things for you guys. I have the critical shoreline application for 348 Patton Street. They're requesting to construct a six, 760 square foot single-family dock that consists of an eight-by-20 cover terminus, a 150-by-four walkway, and a 15-by-15 10K boat lift. I, I did go through debt with the board during this discussion, because everyone was worried about, you know, what the rules are with canals. So I pulled up the property appraisal site and measured out the width with repairing lines with the measurement tool. And they're not even, they can't max out 25%, and they're nowhere near that. So they've met all of the regulations far as the state, we're just waiting for their state and federal permits. The board did approve contingent upon their state and federal permits.
Did the P and Z and A board, how'd they weigh in?
Say it again?
How did the P, Z and A board weigh in?
They all were in favor. They did approve, continued upon state and federal permits or exemptions.
Pleasure, the board?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon state and federal permits.
I'd like to comment before you do that.
Sure.
We've actually got the DEP permit.
Oh, perfect. It'll still be contingent upon, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, we've already got that.
Just send those to me.
I will. I'll make sure.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next, we had a consideration of a request for public hearing to change the zone and land use of an 8.3 acre parcel of land located in from R1A to R1. So I'm not sure if you guys remember, R1A is basically one dwelling per 14,000 square feet, and R1 is one dwelling per acre. So, they had met with Mark and I on this property. It used to be part of this subdivision here, and they branched off. They're not looking to put more houses in for that, but they don't have to go through the subdivision stuff with it, with it being R1A. So they're just trying to go from R1A to R1.
What you mean that I have to go through the subdivision stuff?
With R1A, Single Family Residential Subdivision District.
One per three acre.
Yeah, they've got.
Or three for one acre.
They've got a lot more paperwork and stuff to file when they're doing subdivisions, as opposed to, you know, just one house per one acre.
But that's still in the subdivision, though, isn't it?
No, it's not part of it anymore.
Okay. I misunderstood. Okay. So basically, they're asking for less density?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is to, this is just to take it to a public hearing?
Correct. And the board did approve for public hearing. They did motion to approve for public hearing.
So move for a motion to approve a public hearing.
All right, we have motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next, I had a final plat. You guys have already reviewed this one. This was, you've seen it for a preliminary plat for the Boondocks by the Bay. So now they're just coming for their final plat, and the board did approve their final plat.
Hey, Thurman.
Hey, Courtney. I'm just here to answer any questions y'all might have.
And it was approved, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Courtney, by the P and Z BOA board?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you already go through the SGI improvements?
The last one was under the zoning administrative's report for SGI multi-use path improvements, which was brought to the board by Erin Griffiths, so I'll let her touch on that.
Yes, Commissioners, and that was actually a part of my points finding mission for the Florida Department of Environmental Protections Recreational Trails Program. It is a competitive grant award. It's also mentioned on my report, and I can actually go ahead and cover that item of my report if that's not procedurally incorrect. There have been two unsuccessful applications through the FDOT Transportation Alternatives Program for the resurfacing of the oldest late 1990s two-mile section of the SGI multi-use path on St. George Island. The Transportation Alternatives Program's primary focus is the construction of new paths and will not provide funding for the renovation or restoration of existing paths, even when a path is at the end of useful life and the project scope entails substantial capital improvements. The Department of Environmental Protections Recreational Trails Program is a competitive points-based program with a much smaller project size maximum of $500,000, but does provide funding assistance for the renovation and restoration of existing trails. This program does require a minimum of 20% cash match for the program to be funded. The proposed Phase 1 project scope has been reduced to a .56 mile section encompassing the busiest and most congested commercial area of St. George Island from Third Street East to Third Street West to fit within the project size limitations of the program. And in addition to the reclamation and resurfacing, which in itself is a much-needed safety and ADA accessibility improvement, the project will also include drainage improvements, corrections to swales and slopes in the area along the path, ADA and safety enhancements at intersections, with the addition of surface tactile warning strips at seven intersections, the remarking of crosswalks, and the removal of excess visual distractions. And will include resting benches, shade, and bicycle repair stations at the end of the commercial corridor at an estimated project cost of $428,000. The county has also submitted a legislative line item funding request for this as well, but we have not received a decision at this time and won't know for, you know, quite a while on that. Board action to approve the submission of the SGI Multi-Use Path Recreational Trails Program grant application. And as part of that, we had to, actually have, I had to mention, the project had a community presentation. I also had to do a presentation to a community advisory boards, which was Board of Adjustment. And then the third meeting would be an advertised public hearing to get the maximum amount of points for the application.
So you're asking for it to go to a public hearing?
I'm actually, board action to approve the submission of the SGI Multi-Use Path Recreational Trails Program grant. grant application, because the applications are due March first.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, and that's going to do from third to third, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Second by Commissioner Sanders.
Hopefully.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Things are not as cheap as they used to be. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else? All right, Ms. Griffiths, please proceed.
Okay. All right, first item on my report, Commissioners, the Florida Department of Transportation has sent a supplemental agreement for the CR-three-seventy Alligator Drive multi-use path project to reduce the scope of work on this newest phase, the multi-use path from East Harbor Circle to the S curve. There has been no change in the dollar value of the agreement, only the formal reduction in scope to align the agreement with the available funding and notice of award issued to Robertson Roberts at the January seventeenth meeting. I have two actions. Action A, board action to approve the supplemental agreement and adopt the resolution authorizing the chairman's signature on the agreement. And action item B, board action to authorize the chairman to sign the attached construction contract with Robertson Roberts.
Can it be one motion?
It can.
Okay.
I may.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, next item is item number two. Mark Currenton and I met with architect Doug Shuler, EMS director Richard Lewis, and Parks director Fonda Davis onsite at the old Carabel Annex on Friday. The county has a long-term lease with the state of Florida for this location, and as part of that long-term lease, the county is responsible for maintenance of the facility. The state's property management division has notified Franklin County that if the facility is not kept in good condition, then the location will revert back to the state of Florida. The building is in desperate need of a new roof, and the county had considered this location as a possible satellite location for the ambulance service. After visiting the site, it was determined that it would not be the best location for the ambulance service as the age of the building, necessary safety and ADA upgrades in addition to the needed repairs and other requirements would cost around two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. This location also proved to be unsuitable as a location for a critical government facility as the site is in a VE, high-velocity flood zone. As stated in FEMA's fact sheet on critical facilities and higher standards, if at all possible, critical facilities should be located outside all high-risk flood hazard areas, including zones V and A. As the county must make repairs to the existing facility, Director Davis agrees that the location will continue to be useful to the Parks and Recreation Department and would like to utilize the building should it be repaired to store Parks and Recreation equipment. There are also several pole barn structures with roof structures which are in such poor condition that they have become unsafe. The county will need approval from the state of Florida before the roof structures could be demolished. The architect has estimated that it would cost around forty thousand dollars for the county to request a task order from architect Doug Shuler to draft bid specs to get the building to safe, usable condition, and the cost of the repairs could be paid by the American Rescue Plan. I also have kind of a multi-part action here as well. Action item number A, board action to move forward with the concept to rehabilitate the old Carabel Annex location in Carabel for use by the Parks and Recreation Department and for staff to request a task order from the architect for the necessary repairs. And B, board action to request approval from the state of Florida to demolish the collapsed roof structures on the pole barns at the site.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes.
And are we for sure, Erin, that the American Rescue Plan Act funds would cover this?
We are, actually. The American Rescue Plans with the funds that the county received, we were under the ten-million-dollar threshold, so it was treated as revenue replacement. So so long as we actually amend our spending plan, you know, so long as we're kind of in the general, you know, greater good type activities, we are good to use those funds.
Okay. Is, can we do this in one motion, or do we need? So I'll make a motion to approve both.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion?
I just want to ask a question. You're just saying that y'all want to be able to take the roofs off, but you're going to put some back on?
Yes.
Well, we would like to put some back on, but it may be a little while before, you know, unless we want to spend more or see if that's a change order that Doug Shuler can actually spec out and we can bid it separately.
I know they park, some of the stuff they park up underneath it.
Yeah.
I think it really helps.
No, not in the current condition. It's probably a little dangerous as well.
I was just making sure.
Any more discussion for the? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item, item number three. As mentioned above, the old Carabel Annex location was not a good fit for the ambulance service, and the cost was such that a new building would seem to be a better long-term solution to service that area of the county. County staff and EMS then visited the one-half acre open space area on the west side of the county-owned parcel shared by the Landarch-St. James Fire Department. This area may warrant additional evaluation as it appears to have good access and is not located in a flood zone. And also, right now with where the ambulance service is located in Carabel, it is actually on the eastern side of the Carabel, or, sorry, not eastern, western side of the Carabel Bridge, and the county does make rental payments on that location. Actually, Weems Hospital directly does. Board action to request preliminary review of the site for suitability from county engineers Duberian Associates.
I make that motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
You said it was on the west side of the Carabel Bridge?
It is, actually. It's, it's still right there before.
Yeah, where those, before where Hogwild's at.
NAC.
That's where they're at right now.
Yes.
Yeah, we're talking.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
My bad. I think I coughed too hard.
You have to east to west going that way, huh?
No, I had that right. I thought you were talking about moving it further away.
No, 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 no.
Just a second. We're good, I'm sorry, you got me straight.
You're good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next items, number four. At the last meeting, the board approved sending the Restore Program Amendment, which included the construction activities for the three restored projects. All permits and design work are now in place to proceed with a construction grant application for the countywide dune restoration project. The county's Restore Program consultants, Langton and Associates, have submitted a task order to bill for actual time at the stipulated hourly rates at a cost estimate to not exceed thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars for development of the construction grant application to the U.S. Treasury. I had hoped to have an approved draft of the SGI Stormwater Project Right-Away Agreement from FDOT to present at this meeting, but at this time, the agreement is still on hold until a resolution can be reached regarding FDOT's stipulated requirement for guaranteed treatment capacity versus total pond capacity. As it will not be possible to finalize the design or permitting documents until an agreement is approved, the county will need to request an additional no-cost time extension, extension to date twelve-thirty-one-twenty-three, although the engineers anticipate full completion by ten-thirty-one-twenty-three pending approval of the right-of-way agreement within the next few months from the U.S. Treasury for the design grant. Langton and Associates have submitted a task order to bill for actual time at the stipulated hourly rate at a cost estimate to not exceed one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the preparation and assembly of documentation to submit the no-cost time extension to Treasury. The application for the landfill transfer station construction application can be submitted after the completion of the feasibility study. Engineers have received all requested information to develop viable operating cost estimates and construction cost estimates for that. The feasibility study should be completed in the next few months, and the construction grant application can be completed at that time. I also have two action items here. Board action, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with Langton and Associates to move forward with the countywide restoration project construction grant application. And B, board action, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with Langton and Associates to move forward with the attached task order with, to, oh, sorry, I said that twice, for the no-cost time extension for the St. George Island Stormwater Design Grant.
We agree to that in one motion if the board so desires.
So agree.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by two.
Oh, whatever.
Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Sanders. There's no third, so we will go and say, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Yep, and I have already brought up the item number five, recreational trails grant application. And item number six is miscellaneous project updates. Just if you all have any general questions for anything that we have going on right now.
Did we need to vote about what was sent to the legislature?
Oh, yes. That was a late add. Sorry, starting to have a Snickers moment.
I have you for a reason, Erin.
We all need a Snickers moment.
For real. We're all angry.
Oh, my goodness. Boys play it down, doesn't it?
Um, I.
I've got it right here if you need to help.
Oh, okay, here we go. Okay, as discussed previously, the county has requested legislative line item appropriation request for the following. We have Weems Memorial Hospital, Franklin County Emergency Operations Center, a Landarch-St. James Volunteer Fire Department fire truck, St. George Island multi-use path, and Franklin County jail windows. I do want to compliment the board on the way that they tie the St. George Island multi-use path and our inability for funding accessibility for our tourist development sales tax proceeds and the lobbying efforts on that. And just board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attestation forms for the requests which were sent to the county last week by legislative staff.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
I do have a question for Erin, Mr. Chairman. The project's site, website, that's going to be posted on our website, do we have any idea when that's going to be going live onto the website?
Actually, we just cleared a hurdle, actually, just yesterday.
It looks really nice. It's a technical thing. We think with yesterday, Chris was here, we fixed it. I would say next week. Unless there's something, other hangup.
Yep, and we'll continue to add more and more to the portal soon.
You're really going to like that. It's really, it's really cool. Took a while to get there, but it's cool.
Well, I think that that's going to help us when we get past some of our immediate things we have going on to try to really formalize a strategic plan. Because that's part of what's included. All right, Mr. Morong?
All right, Commissioners, item number one, this is some old business at the last meeting. I explained the need for the board to authorize a new admin support position for Ms. Griffith. A couple of Commissioners wanted to talk to her about it some more, make sure they get a better understanding. She told me they did, and so I'd like board action to authorize the creation of a new admin support position for Mrs. Griffith.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Because lord knows what she just read.
And that was a short one. Imagine, that was one of her shorter reports, Commissioners, so, yeah.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Sanders, did you say?
She did.
I'll just make sure I heard right.
Yes, sir.
And we have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, your last meeting, here's a mix, a mix of old and new business. You authorized the creation of RFQ for code enforcement services. Since then, it's been brought to my attention that the building department did not receive any applications for the building inspector advertisement. I think that ended on Friday. Yes, ended on Friday, so they didn't receive any. I talked to Steve Patterson about this, Commissioners. He's good with it. What I'm recommending is that we amend RFQ and include both services. A lot of companies out there, ECPI, different, they actually offer both services. They, they'll provide an inspector and do code enforcement. I'd like you guys just, give us a try. Let, let Steve and I come up with a RFQ, bring it to you. We kind of go over it, do that's what you like, what you don't like about it, and then we run an ad. That's, I, I just don't see us getting an inspector based on the salary we're offering. And I'd like to tie the two together. It allows us to use some, some billing department money to help that situation. That's the best I have for you guys right now. Hopefully, we can kill two birds with one stone. Steve feels that with adequate and, and guardrails and the way we set up the billing, that we'll be able to make sure they bill us one way, well, they have to. Bill us one way for code enforcement, because we cannot pay code enforcement out of billing department money. You guys know that. But then also bill us, he said maybe per inspection, he'll work with whoever it is. But I'm just asking you guys to let's work on RFQ and bring it to you. If not the next meeting, the one afterwards.
Okay.
Unless you guys have a better idea that you could think of at the moment.
Thoughts, questions, concerns?
It's always concerns.
All right, so we do need a motion to do that, then, correct?
Yes, I'm asking for a motion. Just to create a RFQ. We're not going to advertise until the board approves it.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item four, we did item three, item four, Commissioner Sanders, I know you're very well aware of the situation. No wait zone signage, the, the, Akalakne. He'd like to share. The sheriff said he got a lot of complaints. We had run an ad, we couldn't find a contractor. I told the sheriff that. He found a contract in Tallahassee that says he's willing to do it. Spring is coming again, and, you know, all the boating activities picks up. All I want to do it for is Akalakne right now. At one point, we tried for both two-mile site, but that, we have the dredge. Let's not even discuss that right now. There's just.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Quite a few years ago, we tried to do that, we did do it. We put no wait, uh, uh, sign. The only thing is that FWC only enforces the state rules of the state law.
Yes.
Not a local. So if it's local, if it's a local ordinance, local law, local rule, they are not.
Okay.
Going to abide that, remember that?
On the same river, as I recall.
On the same river, at the same place.
So do we have to petition FWC for them to put no wait signs?
Yeah, that's what I was, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I asked for my question. I thought all the waterways, that was FWC's responsibility. Why are we having to pay seven, eight hundred dollars to put signs up that we have no jurisdiction over?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
The last time, they wouldn't pay for them either.
No.
But you go ahead and make, they may have changed things.
Okay.
But let's go ahead and table this item right here.
Let me talk to FWC.
And you talk to FWC and see if they'll, they'll do that, and let's.
That's a lot of money.
I would think it would be.
I was always thinking it was the Coast Guard.
I would think it would be better for them if there was no wait sign. They might be Coast Guard.
It's an abiding channel, I think, I mean.
But still, if it's Coast Guard, they should be putting the signs up.
It's a river that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we tried.
Not be waterways.
Look, look, right there at the bridge, at that, right here. I mean, that's a no wait.
Yeah, who put that sign up?
Oh, that's.
Coast Guard.
Yeah. Okay, I'd reach out and just, please ask. I mean, I could be wrong, but.
Let's see if, let's see if Fish and Wildlife has got a different viewpoint on it.
It's like FWC.
Okay, I'll put it to you this way. Is there pylons in the channel, Mark?
I think in Akalakne, the pylons are gone, but I believe Mark says we have the information where they were.
Where they were, though?
Yeah.
Well, that, that, I think the Coast Guard is the ones that, that puts those.
Okay.
Channel markers there. I'm pretty sure, again.
Are you saying it's the mile markers they have out in the bay? That's Coast Guard.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'll contact both, FWC and the Coast Guard, find out. Okay.
Okay, so just one, one more thing.
And they may have-
What was that again?
Akalakne.
I just want my-
No, you want me to say it? No, that's Akalakne, yeah, no.
I could, I could help.
Yeah, I know.
And it, isn't it, Akalakne, a lot of it is in-
Well-
Waukulla, Waukulla County, isn't Akalakne a lot in, uh, Waukulla County?
Uh, one side.
Between the two.
One side, about the bridge.
County lines in the middle of the room.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Always in the middle.
We're just gonna check on the pylons that's on our side.
We should have state waterways.
We don't wanna give a limit to county none of our signs.
Franklin County used to be dry while Waukulla was not, so folks would have crossed the bridge to Waukulla. We ain't paying nothing for Waukulla.
That explains a lot.
That restaurant right up through the bridge.
Yeah, they do.
Explains a lot.
We're past the speakers, let's go.
Oh, sorry. Um, so we did, okay, four is tabled, five is, uh...
Do we need to vote on the table?
Do we need to table it, or just?
Uh, just-
Just take it out?
Yeah, he's not listening, that's just-
I'm marking his table, but there's been no motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion to table, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amoson, as we're waiting for Mr. Morong to get back to us some answer from the Coast Guard and FWC.
Okay, cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Been a long day, huh?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Mr. John Collins, AFCON informs staff that FAA is requesting a wetlands and wildlife environmental assessment of the airport obstruction removal project area. He wanted to know if any wetlands there, any bald eagles, anything that would affect it, so I asked Mr. Collins-
Deer carcasses?
Yeah, yeah, well, I asked Mr. Collins to go ahead, the, the agency he worked with, he requested to receive a proposal from Environmental Resources Solution for this assessment. The total cost is forty-five hundred, however, this amount was included as part of the grant application and will be reimbursed to the county once the grant is issued in July of twenty-twenty-three. And the FAA is asking for this.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Amoson. Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I, I got one, like, there, uh, Ted may be able to answer this, but there, I seen, um, there was a group of people out there that were checking something out. I mean, what were they inspecting out there?
Yesterday?
No, it was, uh, two days ago. There, it was up where we, where we cleared, where we had the runway cleared. They were over there in the wood line looking. Uh, is there something going on that we're not aware of?
Was that Saturday?
No, it was, uh-
We did process the final pay application.
I said yesterday, or two days.
I think that's what it was. Erin said that the company, they sent in their final pay applications. They could've been there making sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that may have been.
It was the day that, that, that John was here, Mr. Collins was here, cause me and him rode out, and, uh, that was the day that y'all did the apron. Uh, I'm sorry, I got sick right after that, everything was blurry, but, uh, but i- i- anyway, I just seen that group out there. I was gonna ask what was going on, because, uh, John wasn't really sure what was going on.
I don't know either, sir.
Yeah.
The only thing I do know about is the, uh, Duke Energy people are doing, um, soil, bore drilling out there.
That company for Duke Energy, that's right.
Site readiness?
Terracotta.
Terracotta, thank you. That's right, that's right, Ted. They do that too.
It's part of the site readiness stuff. Thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, item sixteen on the airport, the, uh, the board, uh, your new airport operation economic development board. I've sent you guys a list of the names of the ones that sent me emails. I have a list of questions here. You know, are, are there any, is there anyone that didn't send me, uh, cause some people act surprised when I, when they called me about it, well, where was this? I'm like, it's been in the paper twice, been on the website forever. Is there anyone to reach out to you guys that you wanna add to the list?
Yes.
I mean, t- tell me about, how are we gonna do though? Are we ready to talk more in depth today about this and, and?
I'm, I'm fine with talking about it. Here's, here's kind of the issue I see happening there. We've never, this board hasn't set up any bylaws. We haven't set up if it's gonna be a five-person board, or a nine-person board, or what it's gonna be. And if you get, let's just say, I don't even know, but if you get fourteen applicants, are we gonna schoolyard pick and pick five, or how's this? You know what I'm saying? It's kinda, I think it has potential to, to do as much damage as it does good, as Molly was saying. I'm, I'm good with it, I wouldn't move forward with it. But I think that, that some people that I know that, that wanna apply, didn't apply cause they, they didn't see a clear direction. Other than the conversation we've had, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
About like, what, what's the board actually gonna be doing?
So would you like, uh, where'd he go? Oh, dude, would you like Ted, Ms. Amoson, uh, Commissioner Amoson, myself, to kinda sit down and, and kinda-
I mean, I would, cause I, I've had a couple people that said they wanted to apply, but they did not, cause they didn't actually know what, what it was gonna be doing.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
And we don't wanna go in the direction that we were going, that, that's when we rescinded the committee.
Right, right.
And done away with it. We don't wanna go there.
What, what direction was that, just for my?
Well, there, there was a lot of people, apparently there was a lot of people that were going in all, all the different directions, and they didn't have a clear-
Oh, you mean, there were personality conflicts, Commissioner, if I can be honest about it, on the last board.
Personality conflicts, and there were a lot of discussions being had with federal or state agencies and saying that they were on our board, so they, you know what I mean? It, it caused some issues with the county.
Mr. Chairman, that is important, you know, whatever, we talk about these bylaws, we need to make a stipulation there where, you know, uh, they, may, um, what do they call a, uh, organizational chart? Who's in charge? Airport manager, who, how it transcends from there? So that like, we, we don't have the same issue before, where you've got a lot of strong-minded people calling FDOT, or calling FAA, and trying to, uh, again, like I said, or like Chairman Jones said, assume responsibility that they don't have, and power that they don't have. If that makes sense.
So, okay, so, then it's getting late. So basically, uh, the commissioner, myself, Ted, we're gonna sit down and come up, answer these questions, come up with bylaws, regulations, present it at the next meeting, and we go from there. What, what about the, uh, can we also decide how many people are gonna be on the board?
I don't have a problem with that.
I'd just say five with two, uh, two alternates. Is that why we have a-
I think that's fine.
Okay.
But I, but you're having people, and this is the two that talked to me that wanted to apply, but didn't.
Throw some names out there, I'm just-
I got some names for you. It might shock you. Uh, but the, there was, they didn't know how many board members are gonna be. It was just too kind of vague, you know what I'm saying?
That's vague.
So, so, you know, uh, but, this, none of this is an attempt to thwart anything at the airport. Like I told some people that I've talked to, other people, uh, I said, look, in, instead of just saying, no, you guys can't talk to FAA or whatever, what, what I would like to see is a board member is us have, uh, how do I do it, the Regional Planning Council, when they have their meetings, they have somebody there one meeting-
Much aviation, or not aviation, but pilot, strictly pilot, you know?
What about if they do both?
They was? No, that's fine. I've seen one that does.
One, one did do both.
One did, yeah.
You're, you're right.
And, and that's fine, but I'm just saying, you know, I, I, I was expecting more, uh-
More business people.
Yeah, I, I did, I, I did, to be honest with you. Now, there was one, uh, uh, former commissioner, uh, uh, Muskelman's had mentioned that he was interested in. And he didn't officially turn anything in. Um, I mean, i- i- if, if we get a little clearer or whatnot, you may have, uh, more people from that sector reach out. So yeah, I'm fine. We can meet, me and Michael, or me, me and you and Ted, could get together, we could-
Hammer this out, and then we'll bring it back.
Well, you need to look at advisory board, and, and that's the way we've always set out, up our boards, is by advisory, advisory, and advisory capacity. And that's, you know, you got to look at that, because, uh, what we say, we're the ultimate say-so.
Well, yes you are. Whether you like it or not, you, you-
I think everybody's, that is that by now, but we need to-
Okay.
We need a clear direction. I'm, I'm agreeing with the commissioner.
We'll meet and we'll bring something back to you guys for that. Okay, item seven, if I may, one more airport item I need today. So, as Duke Energy Site Readiness Team and county staff, we continue to meet and progress towards this industrial economic development project. There's an FAA requirement, and Ted, stand here and help me, that whatever lease we come up with has to be fair market value. I know some people think we should ask, we should ask for forgiveness rather than permission, but nevertheless, uh, uh, so, to get to that number, commissioners, I need an appraisal of the airport, of that property that we're looking at for the industrial park. I think, and Ted and I had a conversation yesterday, I believe, that it would also help with what we discussed at the last meeting, getting some new leases with some of the hanger, uh, operators, that we're all on the same page, with this fair market value, and, you know, how much a lease should be based on the worth of our, our airport property. Um, so that's what I'm kinda asking for. Um, could we get Attorney Schuler to, to proceed with, uh, an appraisal of that area? And can we, are we gonna limit it to that area? Are we going to-
Which area you referring to?
I'm sorry, the area, the, the, the area, uh-
In between the-
Off of Paul Rivers Road and the fence, you know, that we've been looking at, when he's done all the, the work.
You're talking about the entire three hundred plus acres?
Yeah.
Okay.
Attorney Schuler, no?
Yeah.
You're talking about the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since I've been invoked.
Yes.
Um, practical question comes to mind. Do we have a tenant? My concern is we're gonna spend a bunch of money on trying to get a professional opinion on what the fair market rental should be, but by the time we find a tenant, it's all out of date, and we have to start over again.
Well-
So is there something that I'm missing?
The issue that, another issue, Attorney Schuler, that's coming up is, so as we try to continue to be partner with Duke, cause they're really trying to help push economic development in our county, they really are. They're trying to be a very good partner.
Excellent.
Uh, we've had conversations with Triumph about being able to use Triumph dollars for the infrastructure to put in place. But we keep every time we have, we feel like, uh, that's the question that keeps coming up in every conversation. What is the fair market value you're talking about? Duke can't really help us pitch the property, as it were, that's all I know to say it, for your development. If they don't, they can't tell those people they're trying to, to get there, what kind of money they're looking at having to spend to be there.
So-
So that, it's kind of the, it's a catch twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the cart before the horse, but you can't do one without the other, you know what I mean?
So Commissioner Amoson had a, had, had, had somebody he was talking to. Let's take for an example, uh, someone wants to perhaps, perhaps expand their, their business from their home, where they have a garage, where they work in cars, to actually having a true garage in that area to put cars. The problem we're having here is, okay, how can we work out a deal with them not knowing what we're gonna have to charge them for?
Yes.
Let, let me reverse that. Let, before I know how much we're going to have to collect or pay the airport for the use of that property. Now, we might have to subsidize that person, because it, it might not work out where fair mar- market value is worth them coming there to set up shop. But we won't know that until I know what the fair market value is. I need to know that number. Now, if there's a nu- if there's another way we can get that number without an appraisal, I'm good for it. But I, for us to move forward, we're kind of to the point here where we're spinning wheels, I, I need to know, how do we move forward to talk to perhaps the, the gentleman that, that Commissioner Amoson talked to and say, hey, we got a deal here for you. You know, we got this property, Triumph is going to help with some of the infrastructure, but here's how I'm gonna have to pay to stay there and to operate there. That's where I'm stuck, and if I'm missing, hell, from anybody would help me. I mean, we agree.
Yeah, like, and with an industrial park, you try to incentivize businesses, so that would kind of be our hook for getting them out there, would be, you know, the county actually provides the infrastructure, you know, perhaps they do the capital investment of, you know, construction of a large warehouse, or something of that nature. But then if, if our hands are tied and we're not able to actually incentivize them by offering them a reduced rental rate for the property itself, that actually diminishes the likelihood of us ever being able to get anyone out there.
Be able to do incentives for-
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Does that make sense?
That's a good idea.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, Attorney Schuler, now, if you could, if you need some time to think about it, you, you come up with something else.
Let me talk with Mike, this, this is sort of
Cool.
new to me, if that's okay with the board, and I'll work with Mike, and hopefully we can report back at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll motion to table.
Because I'm, I'm thinking, you're thinking, well, if we appraise it as vacant land with no infrastructure, it's got one value, as opposed to one value-
I was putting up, up building on it, yeah.
There, there's so many variables that need to be considered, and I hate to, uh-
You would have to be site read.
So we have a motion to table by Commissioner Amoson.
I'll second.
I'll second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? You're learning fast, Otis. All in favor?
I'm sure if I heard, okay.
Alright, that passes. I told you he was learning fast.
Oh.
He didn't ask a question, he started making a motion to table.
I know where that's going.
We, we discussed-
I think we've had enough phone conversations.
Services this morning, um, Weems got notification from, uh, USDA about the two paramedic trucks. The grinders approved, they got the paperwork, we're moving on that. And I don't know if I should talk about this last item, Leslie Street. So, the city says they got word from FDOT that, that Leslie Street, um, will start designing construction. They get the money in July of twenty-twenty-three. I could feel his eyes just beaming.
Twenty-three?
Yeah, that is quick.
This is here, yes.
Compared to the thing else.
Five-year workplace?
Yeah.
That's not, what about our projects?
Tell me about it, twenty-twenty-seven, sister.
I can't even get a return of phone call, so, I mean, what am I supposed to do?
Oh, we're not letting that go today.
Is that it, Mr. Morong?
That's it for me.
Okay.
I have something I need to tell you.
The, the one that I added to the agenda, in, in speaking to
Oh.
our local representative from DOT, they're about to start doing between the bridges, uh-
The causeways.
The causeways, and they're also gonna do in the East Point to Taylor's, and then I think they're supposed to do three hundred at the same time. They're supposed to repave in that, year of next, five or six months. What I have come to understand from talking with our DOT representative, not that they'll do it, but if there's any time to ask, this is it. I think we need to ask DOT to do away with those
Rides.
rope rail systems and give us true guardrails. The only caveat was, in talking with them, they said that they would have to be an agreement from the county to allow DOT to gate off everything, so they could have access under the bridge, but nobody else could.
Yes, so, right now-
And it would be on both sides.
Yes. So, right now, you see how people drive behind the, the, the thing to go ca- cast net or fishing, whatever, whatever they do sometimes. DOT is saying, okay, if we do this for you, we're gonna shut it off, and only FDOT will be able to get back there, nobody else. So-
And Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I thought that, cause I spoke, talked to FDOT about the, that rail system, cause I was thinking guardrails would be a better solution. And I was under the impression, their response to me was, I think it was Ms. Hatcher, said that they won't do that, because we are a scenic byway.
However, from talking to them,
Oh, yeah.
they said that there's nothing to stop, as long as it's board action, we can ask. We can individually ask as commissioners, but if it's board action, that's at least something they'll consider. There's no guarantee they would do any of it.
Yeah.
But this is the time to ask, cause they're about to be working in that area.
Okay.
I, I think commissioners-
This is gonna get rid of the wire.
They really want to lock, basically lock away access to get behind there, so I think this is their kind of trade-off to, you see what, cause, you know-
You don't get something for nothing.
Yeah, nobody liked those, those, that all happened because of somebody in South Florida knew somebody, and that somebody got in an accident, so the whole state had to put up those, that ugly-
And one thing after hurricane Michael, it actually trapped debris and eroded the road worse.
It did too, that's true.
It, it, there was more erosion after Hurricane Michael.
You got a lot of people that-
From actually debris getting caught in the wave.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that was something that had not happened previously, where usually it would just go underwater and behind.
When they're putting the guardrail to move it further back?
Yeah, that's, that, I was just mentioning to them, uh, if, if, if we do that, we need to talk with DOT about moving it closer to the seawall itself.
Okay.
That way it gives us more of a, a shoulder, because we have a lot of people that frequent that seawall, cast netting. I mean, if we cut them off, um, you know, I don't wanna create a hazard to begin with, because they're gonna go, and then they, you know, that's just something we might need to do.
So we might could move them further back away from the road, give more right-of-way through.
So they can park on the side.
So they can park on the shoulder.
Go over across the guardrail with cast net.
So we're gonna get a motion to set, send a letter requesting all this? That, that work?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve that letter from Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amoson. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
That's all I got for you.
That it?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Morong?
I've got one thing.
I was gonna say, please don't-
Can you give me an update on what's going on with Lanark Fire Department?
I talked to Robert, uh, Amen yesterday. Yes, a few things here, what's going on? Number one, they have a company coming in to check the trucks. The trucks are in bad shape. They have a company come in to do an inventory, tell us what's wrong with the trucks, and what we need to spend to fix the trucks. Uh, that's number one. Number two, they are, so he- here's the thing, he's trying to find a way to make sure that they get everyone as firefighter one trained. What he doesn't wanna do is scare away the ones that are really working hard now, because sometimes if you say, well, you gotta take a test or exam, everybody kind of panics. So, he's trying, but we shouldn't say this publicly, but he's trying to lead them along, do all the training, so that it's, 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 when it's time to get certified, it, it doesn't create like, oh, no, I don't wanna take a test.
Does he have some kind of timeline?
He will, he will have a timeline for me. He said they meet again, uh, in a couple of weeks, and he'll have a timeline after that I can present to you.
And, and at that time, I'm gonna bring it up again, so you all will know that I'm still happy for Kada. I'm gonna go out for a contract for Lanark, and make sure that they've got some oversight.
And hopefully, I'll have the, the, the repairs that need to be done to that, that truck, too.
We're not, we're not there yet. Remember, I, I told Mr. Schuler, when we were there, I let y'all know, because I, I think that would be very important, since we're gonna have a lot of new people dealing with stuff like that. There's not many of the old people left that in the fire department. So we need to make sure that we've got some oversight on them, so we don't recreate what happened again.
But that's what I got for you from Robert.
Mr. Chairman, real, real quick, Michael, I don't know, uh, update on the Tower up sixty-five for cellphone service?
That I don't have, I, I'll find it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, I mean, it's been that way for how many years now? What's another couple of weeks?
Hey, we approved it.
Yeah, yeah.
Five or six years ago. It's a long time ago.
Definitely needs to happen.
We're not to hold up. Uh,
No.
before we proceed to Attorney Schuler, this is kind of in between both of you, so I'll just mention it now. I've still been in communication with Senator Rubio's office about the Corps of Engineers. The last time I talked to them, which was last Friday,
Uh-huh.
they told me that they still have not heard back from the Corps. Just, just to put things kind of in perspective, to where we are.
Got some-
I told you, like the National Marine Fisheries.
They, they have not heard, the Senator's office has not heard back from the Corps yet, just to make sure everybody's aware.
That's what I was trying to tell you. You thought you had some rags, didn't you?
Oh, I know I have no rags. I grouped, I grouped the Corps, IRS, and the Marine Fisheries all together.
And FDOT.
I mean, they, they, they don't answer to nobody.
But, just so, just so the board is aware, I have been still trying to have conversations with first issue, because, anyway, it's just that. I do wanna clarify with you, Attorney Schuler.
Yes, sir.
I tried to send you three emails last night. Did you get them?
Uh, yes, sir, I did.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. Okay.[1752.14]
You're a night owl, sir.
I am, sir.
'Cause I was awake at two o'clock and I saw your midnight emails.
Yep, yep.
Oh, goodness. All right.
We're good with your thought?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Wait, sir.
Action item number one was the public hearing, which we completed. Action item number two is a presentation on behalf of Franklin County Tax Collector, who is unavailable to be here today. Um, I have cut and pasted, uh, to my report, uh, the information that he sent to me about this. He probably separately emailed each one of you about it as well. Uh, he's essentially got a request for the board to terminate the GSA software contract and for the board to accept a refund of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you'll remember, it's been a couple of years ago, he partnered with, uh, the property appraiser so that they could both update their software with the same company. I think the property appraiser was able to do so successfully, but for various technical, uh, reasons, the tax collector was unable to do so. Um, so there would be of a total contract price of two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. There is a proposed, uh, settlement agreement between the tax collector and GSA uh, to refund a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars to the county. Um, the tax collector has also, uh, informed me that, uh, he needs to, or is requesting that the board reallocate sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents of that refund to purchase additional hardware for the tax collections office and then to approve that the balance of the funds be deposited back to the Franklin County General Revenue Account. There is a, like, a lengthy, page-long discussion that I will not read line for line. As, I'm, I'm listening to what the chairman told the first presenter this morning, don't read it to us line by line. However, if the board wants me to, I will go through line by line. But there are no requests, no questions, and the board action requested is for the board, board action to accept the termination of the contract between Franklin County Tax Collector and GSA or Government Software Assurance Corporation, uh, to, 'cause the tax collector, although he could sign it as an independent constitutional officer, he wants to, to work hand in glove with this board and make sure that it's okay with y'all before he does so. Uh, to accept and direct the hundred and eighty thousand dollar refund to be deposited into, into the general revenue fund and the discussion and possible action on the tax collectors' request to allocate, uh, sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for the purchase of new computer equipment and support. Uh, the, the supporting documentation of these requests is attached to my report.
So, question.
Yes, sir.
What's he doing about a software need?
Um, that's what the new program for the sixty-nine thousand dollars is, he plans on buying new equipment, software, that I believe he said he wants to.
Oh, software.
It says, it says.
I kept your word, equipment.
And support, so I'm assuming that means that he's going to have some software, either new software or support existing.
Somebody can call when it don't work right.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that's, that's equipment. What about the, if, if he had a need for software to begin with, what's he doing?
Okay, let me.
And we might not be an answer that today.
Uh, paragraph two, it, from the tax collector says, he was informed recently that the current computer hardware, which supports the processing and distribution of tax proof, tax payments will not be supported by IBM after May of twenty twenty-four. The hardware was purchased in two thousand and sixteen, end of support means hardware support will be limited and may result in prolonged outage due to parts availability. The cost of replacement of the hardware switch in printers is sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
I got what's going on. I know what it is. That, that, they, to use the software, he had to buy certain hardware.
Okay.
And now that he can't use the software, he needs different hardware.
Outdated.
That's exactly what's going on.
Well, I, I am, like, ten thumbs when it comes to technology.
I've had to be the, uh, chief cooking bottle washer now at the parts house I've been working at now for over twenty years. That's the gist of what's going on. He's gotta have new soft, uh, new hardware to be able to use the software he was using before.
Okay.
That's what it is.
That's the new Hansi scheme.
So move.
That's what it is. You gotta buy it all, you can't just buy the software.
That's the new trend.
So move.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
All right, the Commissioners, the, the, the add-on action item that I sent to you late yesterday afternoon involves the county's contract for the purchase and sale of property from Mr. J V Gander. Uh, that, that is the property that would be the little white house next to the old Napa in East Point, which abuts up to property that the county purchased recently that runs from ninety-eight to Patton. Um, the property that runs from Patton to ninety-eight was purchased with TDC funds and although the board hasn't made a final decision about the, the use of the property, the general discussion has been a nature museum or something of that nature. Um, I'm asking that the board, uh, agree to this addendum to extend the contract for thirty days because late last week it came to my attention that, um, Mr. Gander, although we thought he only owned a fifty-by-one forty-foot parcel fronting on ninety-eight, if you'll flip the page of the, the, the addendum to the second page, you'll see, uh, a printout that shows that fifty-by-one forty fronting on ninety-eight, but not running to Patton. When the survey came back late last week, uh, it shows that Mr. Gander, in fact, owns the property running from Highway ninety-eight to Patton Drive, which would, in my opinion, be worth the board's while to continue this for thirty days. Let's make sure all these facts turn out to be correct. The fact that Mr. Patton or Mr. Gander's property runs from ninety-eight to Patton. And during that thirty days, I, I will return back to the board with a proposed addendum to the contract for purchase and sale and then the board will make a decision whether you want to just proceed with the original purchase with a fifty-by-one forty, or amend the contract to purchase the property running from ninety-eight to Patton. The, if you'll flip over to the very last page, which is a printout of a, an excerpt from the appraisal, you will see that the appraised price of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was just for the fifty-by-one forty fronting on Highway ninety-eight. So, um, if there is a new contract entered into to purchase the entire parcel running from ninety-eight to Patton, there would also have to be a new appraisal and the parties would also have to agree to a new price range, because.
We don't have another six months, sir.
Hmm?
We don't have another six months to wait for an appraisal.
I hope it won't take that long, but Chairman, that is completely outside of my control.
I understand.
But the way the addendum is written is, it extends the contract for a thirty-day period. Um, during that, that time, the parties can either reach a new agreement or just cancel and walk away. If a new agreement is reached and it will be structured the way the contracts have been, there will be a price range, there will be an appraisal. Uh, if the appraisal comes in outside the price range, then either party's gonna walk away. The county, of course, would be on the hook for the, the cost of the updated appraisal, if there is no closing. But so far, all these appraisals have been, have not exceeded a thousand dollars. So, I can't predict the future, but so far they, they, there hasn't been a tremendous expense. If we do successfully close, um, on an amended contract, then all the closing costs will be split fifty-fifty, including the cost of the appraisal. And I have talked to Mr. Gander and he has told me, as recently as this morning and, and yesterday afternoon, he is okay with amending this contract for thirty, or, an addendum that extends the contract for thirty days so the board and the parties can consider amending the contract.
Pleasure the board.
Pleasure the board.
I'll make a motion that we can, we, we, we're making a motion of whether or not we're gonna.
To extend it.
To extend it?
Yep.
Yes, all I'm asking right now is to extend the contract for thirty days and then a, a new deal will be brought back to the board for your consideration.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson. Have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So what you're trying to do is extend it because we didn't realize that the land that abuts his property that he owned. So we're trying to get the whole, according to this property appraiser's website, uh, picture, the whole, all of it?
Yes, if you flip to the third page, there, there's a survey that, that shows.
Okay, okay.
Property running from ninety-eight to Patton.
I got you.
The belief at the time the contract was entered into was that when Mr. Gander sold the Napa, he also sold the property that was.
Okay.
Between Patton and the little white house.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, when the title search and the survey came back last week, they contradicted that fact and showed that Mr. Gander still owned the property that's behind the white house, butting up on Patton. So, thought it worked well for the board and the parties, just take a thirty-day pause, reconsider, and then y'all either make a new agreement or you don't.
Thanks for the clarification.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I just wanna make sure I'm just.
Did we ever vote?
We do have to vote on that, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
Yeah, that is the end of the action items on my report, Commissioners.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have something for you, Mr. M, uh, Attorney Schuler.
Yes, sir.
As we were discussing Mesa Road, the question of a trailer being on the county right-of-way. We have determined that it is. Um, and I'm gonna have Mr. Howard, uh, uh, confirm that at the next meeting. So whenever he does that, we need to proceed with sending the owner of the trailer s- a notice or a letter saying that he is in the county's, on the county's property and to have the trailer moved.
Okay.
I will stand by for instructions.
Thank you.
Anything else for Attorney Schuler before we proceed? All right, we're at Commissioner Comnets. Does anybody itching to say anything?
Hallelujah.
Yeah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah Seahawks.
It's a long meeting, what, six hours?